Good afternoon, welcome to the Broadhurst Theater. And welcome to the second public hearing of the Caesar's Palace Times Square Community Advisory Committee. My name is Carl Wilson. I serve as Chair of this committee and I've been appointed by Eric Botcher, Council Member for District Three. By law, the committee consists of members appointed by specific elected officials who represent the proposed project site. I'm joined by my other committee members, Laura Smith, appointed by Mayor Eric Adams, Peter Hatch, appointed by Governor Kathy Hochul, Richard Godfrey, appointed by Senator Liz Krueger, Matthew Tye, appointed by Assembly Member Tony Simone, and Chris Carroll, appointed by Mark Levine, Manhattan Borough President. This committee is statutorily charged with reviewing the Caesar's Palace Times Square NYC application. To achieve this, each member of the committee has been reviewing the application and today we are receiving public comments regarding Caesar's Palace Times Square. The Gaming Facility Location Board established September 30th, 2025 as the date by which a vote must be conducted as to whether the project should be advanced to the Gaming Facilities Location Board. To get started, we are going to accept a 30-minute presentation from the Caesar's Palace Times Square applicant. And if we are ready, we can proceed with that portion.
Of SL Green, New York's number one real estate company and the only... Mike? Mike on, how's that?
There we go.
Better? I've never been, I've never been known not to, not to project my voice. Good afternoon, I'm Mark Holliday, CEO of SL Green, New York's number one real estate company and the only company exclusively committed to this city. First, I'd like to take a moment to commemorate the tragedy of 9/11 and those we lost. 24 years ago, I was in our offices in Midtown watching in horror as the attacks unfolded on television. On such a horrible day, I remember the feeling of unity as everyone gathered together after that crisis and came together. People had written New York off, but obviously that was premature. New York came back, here we are today and, you know, it's just a matter of circumstance that this hearing is on that day, but we, our thoughts and prayers are with those that deceased and those that continue to suffer. I want to thank you for having us here today to address the CAC one last time. I know this part of the process just started a few months ago, but for us, this has been a labor of love for five years. We have held hundreds and hundreds of meetings with every stakeholder we could. We've listened to the priorities and goals of this community and we put our best foot forward, sharing a vision that will make Times Square and the surrounding communities better. Soon it will be up to this body to make a decision of extraordinary importance. I know no one takes it lightly, but we're reaching that moment where you can create a monumental and lasting benefit for this community and for all of New York. We believe so strongly that this project has the singular ability to transform lives for the better. You hold the key to the future of Times Square and New York City for generations to come. The question before you is whether this proposal has local support? Does it fit in this location? Will it benefit this community? Approval is and should be a high bar and we believe that we have more than met the standard for approval. More than 300 organizations have signed on in support, representing hardworking Broadway actors and musicians, local residents, business labor, hotels, restaurants, bars, entertainment venues, and nonprofits. Thousands of people have expressed their support in writing and supporters of the project outnumbered opponents more than two to one in the last hearing. Our project has the least possible impact on the surrounding community. We will not disrupt the streetcape because the building already exists. We will not displace critical housing opportunities as 1515 Broadway is an office building. And we do not sit in an existing residential neighborhood or near schools. We are investing $80 million to make Times Square safer, not less safe. We will make it easier to travel through Times Square and more pleasant for pedestrians and drivers. The Caesar's Rewards Program will drive business from 65 million members to hundreds of local restaurants, bars, and hotels. Our $250 million community benefit plan includes the support from the LGBTQ+ community, improved emergency response times, public restrooms, and millions annually that the community can direct to its local priorities. And our bid is representative of the city as a whole with the most inclusive ownership model in gaming. For the first time, everyone has a seat at this table with Jay-Z at the head. This is a truly transformative and unprecedented proposal. It checks all the boxes. But I don't underestimate the importance of the task before you and the challenge you face. Because we all know the self-interested Broadway League has been running an underhanded smear campaign against this project.
Folks, 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 we have a long, we have a long day ahead of us. I understand everybody has passionate feelings on this, but we need to, we're not going to heckle during the presentation or during the speaking portion, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. This, this campaign was funded predominantly by a wealthy, multi-generational theater owner, protecting its own interests at the expense of the community. The league is pushing a series of lies. Anyone who has seen our proposal knows are false. Look at this flyer being distributed at Schubert Theaters. They claim our casino is designed to keep patrons on premises. Our plan is designed to do exactly the opposite. We have only a quarter of the hotel rooms, no net new theaters, no retail, only four restaurants. We couldn't keep everyone inside if we wanted and we don't want to. They claim Broadway attendance will drop. Wrong again. AKRF projects additional $125 million in annual ticket sales and Caesar's Palace Times Square will additionally purchase tens of millions of dollars of tickets because our guests want to go to the theater. There is a proven symmetrical relationship between live entertainment and gaming. It exists in London, it exists in Vegas, it will exist in New York City. They claim Broadway attendance will drop. They also claim that theater jobs will be lost. We're not going to lose jobs, we're going to add jobs. That's why Actors Equity and Local 802 support us. Listen to the theater workers, not the theater owners. They claim restaurants will suffer. Hundreds of restaurants and bars support our project because it will bring them more business, not less business, backed by the power of the Caesar's Rewards Program. These hundreds of local businesses know what's in their best interest and they have signed up in exclusive support for Caesar's Times Square. They claim crime will rise. Nothing could be further from the truth. Commissioner Bill Bratton is going to help make this the safest business district in the city and you'll hear from him shortly. They claim traffic will be worse. That's not what the MTA thinks, having gone through the secret process. The league is out of sync with what the community wants. The league wants people to drive to their theaters. The community wants Times Square to be a place for people, not vehicles. We agree and that's the goal we will achieve with this plan, but it's not just misinformation. We've heard so many stories of coercion and intimidation, stagehands pressured to sign petitions with falsified zip codes, producers told they'll never put on another show if they support our bid. Promoters threatened with expulsion from the league for even meeting with us. Even in this supposed neutral venue today, the marquee shouted in opposition moments ago. Despite it all, the unions representing actors and musicians have bravely stood with us because they know that this project is vital to the future of the theater industry and to Times Square. The committee must reject this type of intimidation and judge the proposal on its impressive and unrivaled merits. Now let's hear from Commissioner Bratton about how we can make Times Square the safest commercial district in the world.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right, let's keep going. Folks, we're going to keep going.
Thank all of you for being here today. The opportunity that this project presents... Okay. Good afternoon again. The opportunity that this project presents to change Times Square for the better is why I came here today. I just want to make three quick points. First, we need to recognize that the current approach isn't working. Two days ago, the headline in the New York Post read, "Times Square Rocked by Spur of Violence." I could pick almost any week this year and find a similar headline. Unfortunately, we're used to this by now, but I can't understand why anyone would fight to protect this status quo, which Mark showed you is exactly what the Broadway League is looking to do, as evidenced by their flyer. The Times Square Alliance does an excellent job, but they can't do it alone. I recognize that both in 1994 and 2014 when I was Police Commissioner, by adding 100 additional police officers to the Times Square area to work with the Times Square Alliance to try and make this area safer. This is a fixable problem, I know, because we've fixed it before. During my time as NYPD Commissioner, we reduced crime in Times Square with data-driven deployments and public-private partnership and more safety personnel. These tried and tested principles are built into the security plan that I've worked with SL Green and the others to develop for Caesar's Palace Times Square. Our plan doesn't just protect our property. It will make the entire Times Square District, the bowtie district and residential neighborhood to the west safer for everyone, safer everywhere for everyone. Our plan features a 24-hour day, seven-day-a-week security operation that deploys over 45 professional additional security personnel every day, including off-duty NYPD supervisors, covering Sixth to Tenth Avenues and from 35th to 53rd Streets. We will have 433 additional cameras, K-9 units, advanced weapons detection, and continuous patrols, setting a new benchmark for urban safety. This plan has been fully discussed with the NYPD over the last several years to get their input. This plan will be funded 365 days a year and $80 million, $80 million-plus investment on the part of the developers. It has been reviewed by our partners at the NYPD and will be incremental to their daily patrols. This is exactly the model of public-private partnership, leveraging state-of-the-art security operations that has made One Vanderbilt in the area surrounding Grand Central consistently outperform its neighborhood and safety. I know the CAC members have seen the One Vanderbilt transformation. Finally, the idea that a five-star gaming resort is going to attract crime and prostitution is not based in fact. It's a ridiculous idea. It has not happened, it will not happen, and I can guarantee it would not happen if this casino moves forward. Guaranteed, the people that come to these events, I like those that go to Disneyland, that go to Las Vegas, that go to many other venues like this. It is not crime and mayhem that will be coming. It will be more jobs, more profit, and more safety for everybody. This will have the opposite effect in terms of this investment, uplifting the entire area and addressing problems that we didn't create, but we can fix. Here's what I've learned in my decades of policing. When people feel safe, they spend more time in an area, visit more businesses, and return more frequently. Security and commerce work hand in hand. We want to bring that proven success to the whole area around Times Square. Not just preventing crime, but actively promoting commerce and community life. Our vision for security is ambitious, but it is achievable. Making Times Square the safest commercial district in the world, that's the standard we're committing to. 1990, nobody thought that the subways of New York City could be made safer. People were fleeing it in droves. We made those subways safer. In the mid-1990s, we made New York the safest-lived city in America. In 2014, during my second term, we improved on that record so that for 25 straight years, crime went down and disorder in the city. We know how to do this and we will do it here with this project once again.
Thank, thank you Commissioner.
Okay.
Thank you Commissioner. I very much appreciate, I know what this day means to you as it means to many of us and I appreciate your being here on 9/11. And, you know, if we can make Times Square safer, we know that we can create the kind of diverse entertainment district that will bring New Yorkers back. I'm now going to turn it over to my partner at Roc Nation, CEO Desiree Perez Des. Please take it away.
Good afternoon, everyone. Let's be clear, this project isn't just about gaming. It's about making Times Square pulse with life again on every single stage for every voice. And I really wish that you guys would just respect and we should all be treating each other with civility. I mean, we're just in a different time now and everyone should be able to listen to each other, even if we don't like what each is saying. It's just disrespectful in general. That's the kind of purpose that Roc Nation lives for. We're always striving to lift diverse voices, experiences, perspectives, and now here's a place to do it at scale. In the heart of the greatest city on earth, the crossroads of the world, Times Square. With this project, Roc Nation will bring a full suite of entertainment, the greatest artists around the world to come perform at Times Square and by Times Square. I don't mean a Caesar's Palace Times Square because we don't have the venue. We've already partnered with One Times Square, TSX, the Town Hall, Sony Hall, to bring our artists to those venues so that Times Square can have the greatest, most diverse entertainment options in the world. We've already started booking artists in Town Hall for later this year. We're activating venues and partnering with local artistic nonprofits to nurture new artists. Broadway is in the competition. We have artists who have shows on Broadway, like Alicia Keys telling her own story in The Story of Growing Up in Hell's Kitchen. Times Square should shine. The music of every genre, dance in every tradition, comedy from every corner of the world, and stories from every community. Together, we can use a diverse entertainment audience to support Broadway and to protect Times Square from the centuries to come. Thank you so much for your time.
Sorry. Thank you, Des. We're also joined today by Caroline, Caroline Hirsch, the owner of Caroline's on Broadway, who knows more than anyone about the challenges facing small businesses and entertainment venues in Times Square. Caroline, please, if you would, address everybody.
Hi, Caroline Hirsch, and I was the owner of Caroline's on Broadway. I'm here in support of Caesar's Palace Times Square. I came to Times Square in the very early 90s when I opened my club Caroline's in a bankrupt building on 49th Street and Broadway where it thrived for 30 years. Times Square fell apart after the pandemic and businesses have suffered. To say there's nothing wrong in Times Square today just isn't reality. I have the experience to credibly say that it's pretty apparent that the area needs a facelift and a rejuvenation. I am confident that Caesar's Palace Times Square is exactly what the area needs. It will create excitement and bring a new reason to come to Times Square for world-class, diverse entertainment options. With another 12 million people projected to come through Times Square each year, just think about the economic impact to local businesses and the district. And on top of that, just think about what the Caesar's Rewards Program can do for local, for the local economy. I'm a business person and I totally believe Caesar's Palace is what the area needs to be revitalized. It will bring excitement and bring the new meaning to the area. Times Square is a neighborhood filled with theaters, music halls, and countless other entertainment activities that rely on bigger audiences and new visitors. It is perfect for a gaming venue. And what I'm so impressed about is the investment that Caesar's has committed to make it private safely and security in the area, something that local government is not doing. It's good, it's a good talking point to say that the casino is designed to trap people. This is not what is being proposed here. Caesar's Times Square is going to help local businesses thrive, including live entertainment venues like the one I ran in Times Square for 30 years. This is a crucial moment of an opportunity for a neighborhood that I love. We cannot allow this to pass by us. I believe in Times Square.
Thank you, thank you Caroline. One final and very important speaker, the Reverend Al Sharpton is here with us today.
All right, let's keep going.
Rev Sharpton helped us shape an inclusive ownership structure. We've been working together on this for quite some time. We're deeply committed to it. I think it's deeply important for this bid, for this community and, you know, for everything we do here in New York City. With that, I would like to introduce Rev Sharpton.
Thank you. Let me say I don't have a speech to read. And at the other hearings, we sent people that represent us, but I wanted to come myself. I would hope, as Desiree said, we can hear and reason together, particularly what happened yesterday with Charlie Kirk tells us that we need to try to not deal with just emotions, but deal with what's rational. And even though I don't agree with anything Charlie Kirk stood for, I pray for his family because we need to have the ability to communicate. Now, having said that, if somebody want to boo, I've been booed by the best, so take your best shot. It won't bother me at all. When I sat down with the people at SL Green and Jay-Z, I had a lot of questions. Why? Because I have an office that I operate out of six days a week, seven blocks from here. I'm in Times Square. Right? My workers are here every day. We eat in the restaurants. And I remember as a young activist growing up, how we would come to Times Square and dream of days that not only we'd see more of us on the stage, but more of us in ownership. Let us be real clear that with all of the stuff that's gone out against this proposal, there is not one black or brown owner of a Broadway theater in 2025, not one. So as we deal with the question of diversity, equity, and inclusion with Trump, we don't have DEI right here on Broadway. So if this casino is established, it will be the first time we will have an institution on Broadway that has diversity at an ownership level. And you're not just given a token. Jay-Z is nobody's token. He's the token booth. And we support this because of that. I don't, I'm not a partner. I don't get a dime, probably won't even, I don't gamble, so I don't even know how they do the slot machine. I don't know none of that. But I know that it is too long these oligarchs have decided to run Broadway. And I'm asking you to vote against the oligarchy that shuts us out of not only we, oh, I get it, we can dance on stage, we can be ushers and other things, but we can't own even if we got the money? And then they're going to say, well, it's going to bring crime and you've got Police Commissioner Bratton talking about the crime. Police Commissioner Bratton and I have not agreed throughout our career. I don't even think we agreed today. It's Thursday. But we both agree, it's not going to bring crime. My office is here. I've been here 11 years. But it's, it's this whole basic bias of not in my neighborhood. It's all right for them to do it somewhere, not in my neighborhood. We've heard that all our lives. And I'm not against the people that are standing up for their jobs. I'm saying it won't take their jobs. It will increase jobs. So it comes down to whether Broadway is going to support the oligarchs or whether they're going to support expanding and let, who could bring better talent to Broadway than Jay-Z? Who's done it in the NFL? Who's done it in the NFL halftime? Who could bring more fairness? Let me say this in closing. There are going to be three casinos in this state. Let's not sit here and play with the people. The only one talking about doing it where there will be prime entertainment and inclusion of everybody, whites, blacks, in the ownership, is this proposal. That's the only one that's even addressing that. They're going to make a decision. So I'm saying, you see some in the audience saying yes, some saying no. I say yes to diversity. The owners are saying no to diversity. I say yes to expansion. The owners are saying no to expansion. I say yes to being owners. They saying no. Just be our ushers and our... It's time for, it's time for Times Square to join the 21st century and stop closing the door on diversity.
All right. Okay, all right. Okay.
Okay. Out of utmost respect, I've got nothing more to add to that. That is... You know, I'm not going to, I'm, I'm not going to do a long-winded closing here. I'm just going to say one, thank you Reverend Sharpton for those remarks. You know, we have a massive opportunity in front of us. Everybody here knows that. Everyone sees this for what it is. This is a massive, I don't know, generational. This is once in a century. This is never before in Manhattan. This is where this fits. It's the district that's number one for entertainment in the world, the crossroads of the world. We should land Caesar's Palace Times Square right where the world will want to come and game and eat and be entertained and stay and help in the continuing revival of Times Square. I want to thank the commission for your, you know, attention over these past three public hearings. A lot of work has gone into this. We're fully committed to it. No other bidder has the team we have. This is five years of work and we hope nothing more that later this month, we'll be able to move on to Albany and take this to the governor and the governor's gaming commission and people for approval. And in years to come, I hope we'll be at a ribbon cutting together, all of us, for Caesar's Palace Times Square.
Okay. All right, I think that concludes the presentation. If there's, unless there's any questions from the committee here, I think we can dismiss the applicant. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so are we ready to move into the public hearing? All right, so there are a few hearing rules, okay, that I'm going to go through. Before we begin, here are some of the ground rules, okay? The hearing is an opportunity for members of the community to offer comments on the Caesar's Palace Times Square and not a venue for the public to ask questions of either the committee members or the applicant. Individuals wishing to speak must sign up at the registration table, which is in the lobby. We will be taking speakers on a first-come, first-served basis. Speakers will be allowed two minutes to present their statement. And there, will the timer be, the timer will be visible? And a countdown timer is visible, so each speaker is aware of how much time they will have. In-person attendance will be capped when we're at capacity. Today's hearing is being livestreamed, recorded, and will be posted online soon after the event concludes. The recording will be closed, captioned for the hearing impaired. In addition to presenting comment today, there are additional ways to provide comment. The committee will also receive comment by electronic mail at caesarssqpubliccomment@nystec.com or by mail, which could be directed to Caesar's Palace Times Square Community Advisory Committee, care of NYSTEC, 540 Broadway, Third Floor, Albany, New York, 12207. All comments spoken, emailed, or written will be documented and given equal review and weight by the committee. While there is no deadline for submitting comments, please note that the committee must complete its work by September 30th, 2025, and those wishing to cement comments are advised to do so as quickly as possible. Finally, and this is very important, attendees must remain respectful and courteous. Disruptions will not be tolerated and anyone using offensive, threatening, or obscene language or behavior may be asked to leave at the discretion of the committee. I'm also going to ask, we have a lot of folks signed up to speak, which is great, and we're going to do our absolute best to get to everybody. The two-minute rule is going to be enforced. I'm going to ask that people not applaud or use the noise makers. We need to, that really stops us from moving things along. And we have a lot of folks, over 200 signed up to speak. And we have a lot of folks, over 200 signed up to speak, okay? So I appreciate if we can all work together to give that same courteous respect to each other, okay? All right. And also, one more thing, when you're speaking at the microphone, I would ask that you address the committee, not the audience. So please direct all comments to us. When we do the public comment, everybody got their number, right? That when you, when you signed up. We are gonna do, we're gonna form in a line of 10. But so to do that, you're gonna go up the aisles. Turn left, then come down the far aisle here on the left. And then you're gonna come through the seats here and then queue at the microphone. All right? We have ushers who, and staff that can help direct folks there. But you're gonna come up and around, do not come down this middle aisle to speak. And I think with that. Yes, of course, if there is a, a, a physical need that requires the aisle, we'll work with you to accommodate that. But generally speaking, please come around and use that side. I think we can get started. So I'm gonna call numbers one through 10 to come form the line. And there's, there's staff here who will show their numbers, right? All right. When you queue, if you can just give your number to Tiadora, who will be down here. And then we'll, we'll begin the timer. Just one second, we're gonna make sure that mic's turned on for you. Okay. Hello? Okay.
Yes, my name is Sue Marzak, and I live in Hell's Kitchen. And I was encouraged by what I heard the speakers say. And I hope for the people living in Hell's Kitchen. And people who are marginalized that what they're saying is true. Because, you know, human life is very important. It's very valuable. And we all have to help each other and respect each other. And I just, there's a lot of negativity in Hell's Kitchen now, a lot of crime. And a lot of things that are happening that aren't so wonderful. So I'm very concerned if they put a casino here, that it's just gonna make things worse. And it's gonna increase crime. And people are going to not be very well treated. So I, I, I really, you know, hope and pray to God and Jesus. That we can all stick together and help each other. And I was very, you know, Reverend Sharpton, what he said about everybody coming together and, and. You know, being one and, you know, diversity is true. And it was a very good comment. But I just hope that when, if this casino is built here, I just hope and pray. That that actually happens and people are treated with respect. And the crime rate doesn't go up here. And, uh. Cause, you know, I don't, I've never, I don't gamble and I haven't been to casinos. But I do know that it invites a lot of negativity and, and people who really don't have the best outlook.
You're at time. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Lorna Pruce, P R U C E. And I've spoken before about the casino and I say no. The one thing that got to me today is everybody who was on the dais left. Right? And when they were talking about, when Al Sharpton was talking about the diversity, absolutely correct. But we're talking about Times Square. We're not talking about Jay-Z buying a theater. Okay? We're talking about bringing a casino into Times Square, which I feel should be taken somewhere else. I love a casino and I've spoken to you about that before, but not in Times Square. Because I really truly feel that a casino in Times Square, right? Is akin to colonizers coming in. Coming in and destroying the culture. Coming in and, and leaving behind mayhem and disease and COVID, if you will. Right? And so I really, really feel that you need to take a listen to all of this. Trying to get here, how was it for you? Getting on the subway, walking through cars. Al Shop, Sharpton bought people here on a bus. And it stopped right in the middle of Forty Fourth Street and people couldn't get by. Is that what's gonna happen when all these buses are coming in? Right? Stopping traffic again, making it worse. And then there's this lady, she starts screaming. At the end of the day, please take a listen. We're the ones who work here. We're the ones who live here. All these other millionaires who are getting paid. They don't understand. Thank you, Lorna Pruce. Seven six four I A C, wardrobe union.
Thank you.
I'm Loretta and I live at one oh oh three six. I'm a voter and constituent and resident of this area. I'm a block away. Hell no, in Times Square, we don't wanna hail Caesar. We wanna hail a cab. Hell no. We don't want your trip to Times Square to be instead to Time Strip. Hell no. We don't want the Times Square community to become an obscenity. Hell no. The armor Caesar will wear bears too much baggage for Times Square. Hell no. We don't want the Great White Way in disarray. Tender fray. Allow mobsters to prey upon people who stay and our tourists who may be snapped in a trap while enjoying our city one day. Hell no. The Caesar columns won't fit, we must admit. Times Square is too precious and rare to be lost and abolished. Instead, it deserves to be enjoyed and polished. Hell no. The Latin Caesar speaks is robed in distrust. It seeks to show us a dazzle. Instead, it's darkness. It comes at too high a price. It provides an enormous slice of big apple pie that Caesar can pry from you and I. Hell no. Because danger and death lurk when Caesar can jerk the response times of our first alert. Emergency crew into timely delays, causing malaise and chaotic days. Alas. Hell yeah. This Caesar compendium must be sent to absentium.
I forgot to mention, but I, last speaker did it. If you could just give us the zip, your name and zip code, please, in New York. Or outside, I guess.
Good afternoon. Oh, can you hear me? Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Carol Boken. I am the theatrical business representative of Local Three O Six. I represent the front of the house, the ushers, the ticket takers, and the backstage door people. We really do not want. Hi. We really do not want this casino to come in here because we live here. This is our neighborhood. Everyone looks at it as Times Square. But let's look beyond Times Square. Let's look beyond until Tenth Avenue, Eleventh Avenue. We live down there. You're gonna have traffic down there. We have all kinds of, all kinds of things going on, gonna have crime, more crime than we have now. We have 10 to 12 schools in this immediate area on the west side. Never mind what you have in the immediate area on the east side. Okay? That's going to bring a lot of stress to families. When I was a kid, you're gonna, you're gonna set us back 50 years. I lived here all my life. When I was a kid, I couldn't go past Forty Sixth Street and Ninth Avenue because of time, because of Forty Second Street and crime. Okay? We were, you're gonna bring that back on children that, you know, and families. You're, you're boxing in families that they can no longer go and enjoy things. You come into Times Square. I have, you know, friends and family that come here every year to enjoy the Great White Way and everything else. And I want to mention one other thing. I mean, I know I've got some time. But my union is one of the most diversified unions in New York City. Okay? So I want everyone to know that. Okay? And we also have, um, we have families. We, um, light, and, and to me, it's dimming the light on Broadway by causing more crime. And there is gonna be prostitution. There is going to be, uh, crime. There's going to be all of this. We need to be able to protect our families and this will not afford us the opportunity. We're not even gonna be able to get to work. How are we gonna get across town? Like the lady said, they stopped the bus right in the middle, right in the middle of Forty Fourth Street. What are we gonna do?
Thank you. Right time.
Sorry. Good afternoon. My name is Suzanne Jacobson. And I am a proud New York native, a resident of the west side and from one hundred and twenty-three. A former Democratic district leader. And I belong to one of the clubs of, um. Jerry Nadler, who we all know, and I'm sure everybody up here knows. My husband, unlike me, was born in Europe. And this event would never have taken place in Europe. Because casinos is just there and everybody enjoys them. Who wants them? From the time I was a child, attending Broadway shows was a treat. And as an adult, part of my psyche. And today, I board the number seven bus and I ride to the theater district. I am so excited that Actors Equity and Musicians Union also supports this project. The possibility that two exciting and very different entertainment entities will be offered. Sorry. Will be offered to guests in this area is an opportunity and a perfect location. Which can never be replicated anywhere in the world. Times Square would truly be the entertainment capital of the world. This project will keep the lights on in Broadway. Restaurants will be booming and a new, and new stores will open. I can foresee a time when the area might be closed to vehicular traffic. In the capable hands of S.L. Green, Caesar's Palace, Jay-Z, and others, the casino and the area will soar. Thank you very much.
Hi, Karen Weiner. Zip code is one double oh one nine. I am here to say no to the casino. And with all due respect to the committee, to the C A C. It's interesting to me, they mentioned that we need to show respect for one another. And yet somehow, the pro casino lobby is allowed to present a 30-minute uninterrupted presentation. And the opposing side has to pick and choose a two-minute, two-minute rates. I also noticed that when I realized after my last time before you that. I'm talking to people who mostly have no recognition, no memory at all personally firsthand, with the exception of Assemblyman Gottfried. Of what this neighborhood has gone through over the past 40 years to transform itself into the magnet that it is now. I would like to say, most importantly, gambling aside. Broadway does, the Times Square area does not need a casino to revitalize it. The Times Square Casino proposal needs Broadway to revitalize it and its dying industry. They're looking like every other commercial brand in the world to put their footprint on Broadway. Where every, every New Year's, every time, every time you turn on the nightly news and they show Broadway. There they are, right there on camera. So I would like you to bear in mind when you go home tonight, that a lot of time and money has already gone into making this neighborhood better. And I would, I wish, I can't wait to see Bill Bratton eat his words about no prostitution and he will guarantee it. Thank you very much for your time.
Oh, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Angie Finn. My zip code is one oh oh two three right now. I work as a dresser in the Broadway Theater and have since nineteen seventy-seven, on Annie back then, if you're counting. I'm a member of Local Seven Six Four, which represents wardrobe workers and child actor guardians. I oppose the construction of a casino in Times Square and I vote. For a long time, I lived on Fifty First Street between Ninth and Tenth Avenues. This was very convenient when Annie moved to the Gershwin. And then when Annie closed and I dressed at Katz at the Winter Garden. I'm in Times Square almost daily. This summer alone, I've worked at the Gershwin, the Ambassador, the Friedman, formerly the Biltmore, and the Helen Hayes right across the street here. It's my neighborhood. When I finish my morning work call at Wicked, I can go outside and see people I know on their way to the matinee at Chicago. When I finish my show at night, I can walk up Eighth Avenue and see my friends who are working at other theaters. Times Square has come a long way since nineteen seventy-seven. It's a thriving, walkable, livable neighborhood full of restaurants, clubs, shops, and most importantly, theaters. A casino with its stated purpose of keeping its patrons inside as long as possible is antithetical to the vision we have of Times Square. It's our neighborhood. Our community does not want a casino. We need people on the street. We use the grocery store, the health food store, the shoe repair, the deli, the florist, the diner. We go to the midday concerts at Saint Malakie's on Forty Ninth Street. We meet our friends on the way to work and after work, we go out to supper or for drinks. During the day, we see families deciding where to eat, actors on their way to auditions, people from out of town who want to know where Studio Fifty Four is. There's a Broadway show playing there and a cabaret downstairs. Even during COVID, the sidewalk restaurants on Ninth Avenue were full of people. This is not where a casino should be built. A casino can go anywhere. It's not appropriate here. And I want to leave you with one more thought. Four years of construction in this neighborhood.
Thank you. We're at time. Thank you. Before we begin, I think numbers 11 through 20, if wanna make their way around to queue to speak, 11 through 20. Thanks.
My name is Bill Hubner. I am a proud union member of Local Seven Six Four. I've worked on Broadway for 30 years. I was born at the old Saint Vincent's down on Thirteenth Street. I had a statement that I wanted to make, but there were so many lies and misinformation coming from that table that it kind of threw me. But I'm just gonna get started. I worked Lion King, Mandalay Bay in Las Vegas. In order for Lion King to perform there, they had to cut 20 minutes off a Tony Award-winning Broadway show. To get people back out on the floor. Phantom of the Opera, they cut it in half, 90 minutes, no intermission, to get people back on the floor to gamble. They are not doing this out of the kindness of their heart. They're doing it to make a profit. So let's, let's understand that from the, from the get-go. They're here to make a profit. And just like she said, they're going to put their footprint in our world. This is a very special culture. People come to New York to do things that they can't do anywhere else. Eat food from around the world, see the Brooklyn Bridge, go down to the World Trade Center. If you want to gamble, you can stay at home because there's a casino in every State of the Union except for two. You can gamble on your phone, so there's no reason to come to New York to gamble. People don't come to New York to gamble, nor should they, because there's plenty of other things to do. It's, information says that when a casino opens in an urban area, it becomes cannibalistic. And it takes and it sucks from everything around it. So what we're talking about is you allowing a parasite to come into our community and take from it and take from it. Because that's what casinos are about. They're about making money. It's not about art. It's not about culture. It's not about community. And as a side note, I really am offended that he invoked nine 11 over there. Because I was here, as were many of us. And that's fucking bullshit. Also, I'd like you to notice, all of the people who left because they were bussed in.
Thank you. We're at time. Go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Teresa Cooper. Many people know me as Terry. I'm on the Executive Board of Local 306, which is front of the house, working members here on Broadway. I've been, my family, I've been on Broadway, working on Broadway for the last eight years, but my family history goes back 65 years, working on Broadway in this area. Times Square has had a renaissance, starting from the 90s. And a Times Square renaissance was to bring, turn Times Square into a family area. The surrounding neighborhoods everywhere here in Times Square, the intention was that it should be a family area with family entertainment, places that we can go with every single member of our family. The surrounding neighborhood will, uh, will have problems with, become less vibrant and will denigrate with the addition of all adult casino. We need businesses here that bring families here. The return of the, with the casino being built here in Times Square will bring us back to the degenerative times that we had to suffer through in the 70s and the 80s. The promises that are being made by them are not promises that can be kept very easily. Not to mention that we lose jobs because of the construction that will happen. Our members will suffer. Several hundred of our members will suffer for more than three to four years. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Abby Hyrens, and I oppose building a Times Square casino. I'm a member of IATW 764, and we're the union that represents wardrobe workers and child guardians. I worked in this neighborhood for 20 years, and it's very important to me and to my family. All you have to know about what a casino is, is to look up casino architecture. Eight expert tips for casino architecture. Retaining patrons. Number one, build windowless walls. Number two, devise maze-like layouts. Number three, keep patrons comfortable. You should incorporate dining areas and bars in your casino's design. These are generally indispensable experiences and play a key role in keeping patrons in the building. If you've ever been at casino, you know the idea is not to get out. They're insulting all of our intelligence challenges that's gonna be anything different. And when occupancy and visitors fall like they have been in Las Vegas, what's gonna happen here to all of us? It's falling there, it's gonna happen here. Thank you for your time.
Hello. Yep. My name is Kelly Solnik. I live in 11377. My husband can't be here today. He's at work. He's a member of a local IATSE, and he grew up in Harlem. I, I had something I wanted to say, but during the meeting, they talked about the surveillance. As a trans man, the idea that they are doing photographing and bringing more police presence into Times Square scares me. In America that we live in today, I'm already scared of the police and being misgendered and harassed, and the more safety that they're talking about doesn't feel more safe to me. It makes me worried about going to work. It makes me worried about, I can't move anywhere else. I can't drive. I can't live anywhere else in America. I want to live in a New York that is safe for the community first, and that presentation on it did not make me feel safe, it made me feel surveilled.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Michael Puckering. I work for Encore Community Services. My zip code is 10029, and I work with the older adults of this community. My fear is that it's gonna bring the, you know, um, harm to the vulnerable. Most of the adults that I deal with, they're low income. Most of the people that I see in this neighborhood are low income, and they're the ones that's gonna be preyed on. They're the ones that's gonna give up their last, hoping that they're gonna accomplish and gain something, and they're the ones that we're gonna have to service when they lose everything. We're dealing with a very vulnerable situation, and people think of Manhattan and only see the money, but they don't really see the people, the people that they step over, walk by, that are asking for handouts, that need help. Those are the ones that's gonna be directly affected by this casino. And for that, I have to say no. I vote against it.
My name is Rita Cabrera. I live around here between 55th and 52nd Street and 10th Avenue, and I feel there are one casinos in, um, Times Square. Just leave it to Las Vegas, okay? For Las Vegas, because I don't think it's a, it's a, it's a good idea. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Jeremy Kaplan. I work in Times Square as the Executive Director of Encore Community Services in 10036 and 10019. Research from the Journal of Clinical Psychology, the Journal of Gambling and Business Economics, and the AARP all show evidence that casinos introduced into communities prey on older adult vulnerabilities. Imagine just a few years from now, Eleanor, an 80-year-old widow who lives on 47th Street and 8th Avenue on a fixed income. She owns her apartment, which is her only significant asset. After the casino opens nearby, she begins visiting regularly, drawn by the excitement. What starts as a $20 entertainment budget quickly spirals. Over two years, she accrues thousands of dollars of debt and is eventually, uh, takes out a reverse mortgage to pay off gambling debts. She's now at risk of losing her home. Consider David, a 60-year-old recent widower. He feels immense loneliness and lack of purpose. The new casino offers an escape. However, as his gambling escalates and he loses money that he can't afford, he experiences intense feelings of shame and hopelessness. He stops seeing friends and family to hide his financial situation, and he stops attending activities at Encore, and all of this leads to a deeper social isolation. His pre-existing mild anxiety worsens into severe panic attacks, and he develops clinical depression, directly linking the stress and addictive cycle of gambling to a serious mental health decline. He can no longer afford his home. He can no longer take care of himself, and he risks homelessness and early admission to a nursing home. Both David and Eleanor could have been participating in socialization activities and receiving services from Encore's aging through Art Center at St. Malakis, but unfortunately, the center's funding was cut because its utilization significantly decreased due to the allure of the casino that was built and approved just a few blocks away. If this is what we want for Times Square, I, it's, it makes me so sad.
Can you hear me? Uh, my name is Catherine Gerard. And when I was a little girl, I lived in the Bronx. I succumbed to Times Square. I love the theater. But we had things here that were unmentionable, and you know how you cleaned it up. So now you're willing to bring that back? I say no. And the answer is hell no. And no, 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 no. Okay? To the point, you have seniors, you have families living here. I just moved here, lived in the community. I am a senior citizen, and I like to not walk around with an AK-47. Okay? I want to be safe in this community, and I want all the families and the children to be safe as well. And they have the right to go to school and do all the things that they need to do to achieve the goals that they want. And a casino is not the answer. Okay? It really isn't. I mean, like they say, you got the phone, they got one over there on Hudson, but you have casinos everywhere, but where is the affordable housing for the seniors and for people and families to live in? Okay? I mean, build that. Build a community. My last thought, a community works together for good is where humanity exists. And thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Okay. Can we have 21 to 30 make their way to, to line up, please? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Monica. I'm a lifelong resident of Hell's Kitchen, and I do not think a casino would do any good to this area. I went to school a block away from here, Holy Cross on 43rd between N8 and 9th, and as a kid, my parents and everybody, the community fought Port Authority with all the glorious promises that I hear, here, jobs, safety and all. It devastated the residential nature of the area, brought in homelessness, drugs and crime especially, and it persists to this day. Uh, the casino is supposed to be built on 40th Street. It's almost impossible to traverse that because it's the entrance to the Lincoln Tunnel. There is so much traffic there. It's very hard for ambulances or fire department or anybody to get through that street. It's also across the street from a Catholic church on 40th Street directly. It's down the block from a, um, shelter for troubled youth, and they do not need any more, uh, enticement to join the street. It'll bring prostitution, drugs, increase the crime, and it just, I, I don't know how to put it. It is, will destroy more this neighborhood. It'll destroy the residential nature, and yes, it might be good for some people, but it's not gonna be good for any of the residents who are here, and we have nowhere else to go. And I don't know how it's gonna bring, uh, jobs if casinos have their own entertainment, their own food, their own everything contained within them. They're gonna be taken away from Broadway, because if people go here, they're not gonna go there. So I think it's a bad idea all around. Thank you very much.
Charles Fisher, um, 116. Healthy NYC. It's the mayor's initiative, city council. I heard all the speakers today, so I'm not, I, I sympathize with, 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 with all the people talking about crime and all the noise and whatever, whatever, but I know for a fact, and I'm just saying strongly, I believe that when you have a, a former police commissioner here, and they're talking about, you know, crime, criminals don't like to go where there's a lot of noise and cameras and police. Criminals like to get you in a quiet place, so I don't think you should be much worried about the crime, because all that police presence is gonna make this neighborhood safer. Matter of fact, I know neighborhoods that want more police. So you're gonna get a lot of police with this project. If crime is your issue, don't worry about that. Believe me, they gonna have this place locked down so tight and with the cameras and with drones and all that, this is gonna be the safest neighborhood in New York City for my seniors that are worried about that. All right? Um, noise? If you live on 42nd Street, the home of Mickey Mouse, Donald Duck, the New Year's ball dropping, you're gonna get all that noise. My concern is young people getting addicted to gambling, getting addicted to gambling. And I'm hoping that Jay-Z's team works with me, whether he wins or not, because poverty is the root cause of gun and game violence. And I work with nights, I work with the schools, and we have to help these kids that are gambling now, get off the gambling, whether it's NFL, football, or whatever they're doing. But my concern is, what are we gonna do when these kids get hooked? They need help. And so the long term, I, I respect all the museums and all that, but I want the casino to help me address the gambling problem of young people, because if we can do that, then we can win. So I support this project.
Thank you.
Hi, Bill Cassidy. I'm a member of Local 1 IATSC. I'd like to talk about what I heard up here today. Misrepresentations galore, such as the conglomerate, the oligarchy running the theaters. Well, if anybody wants to look it up, you'll see that Caesar's made 11.2 billion last year. 50,000 employees. That's not some mom and pop stores, and we don't even know who the investors are, but we sort of know who the investors are here on Broadway. And when it comes to equal opportunities, a casino is not a panacea for equal opportunities. There may be, there may be not, but that's nonsense that they in and of themselves provide equal opportunities. I'm just saying equal opportunities, but I think you know what I mean. Uh, it's a collision course with Broadway entertainment. This is the pulse of the city. You go around the country, around the world, around the country, Broadway, New York City, around the world, that's what this is. The Broadway industry, the restaurants, the shows. If you bring a casino in, they will be in a collision course. The buses will stop where they have to stop to let the customers out. And what's going to happen to the people rushing in and out of theaters on a matinee, trying to get to dinner, trying to have a good day? It can't help. This is a, I say, we have a good thing. New York City has a good thing with the theater district. We're the best in the world. And, and I'd just like to say one other thing on the money.
Thank you. We're at time. We're at time.
Good afternoon. Uh, I'm Val from 10027. I was born in New York. I'll keep this short. We live in a period of economic instability, and the casino will bring much-needed jobs. Thank you.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Naishan, and, um, I live in Hell's Kitchen, and I work in a diamond district. And the same thing was presented with the diamond district, and it's very safe. It is very safe, and we have a lot of, it's a lot of police presence, and I feel like the casino is a goal. I really feel like it, for, for the, my peers and the younger group of people, this is something that New York needs. It's time for a change. We can't keep going with the old rules. We need change, and that's how I feel. Have a good one.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Eric, and I also live in Hell's Kitchen. Um, the lady, she said hell no, but I say hell yeah for a casino in Times Square. They say it's just for profit, but Broadway is for profit as well, but it's not as condemned because they bring jobs, they bring culture, they bring tourism. Casino could do that as well. They say traffic, right? Traffic is already out there. The casino could bring investment for better transit, traffic management, and safer streets. They say crime. Crime is already outside, but a casino is one of the most secure places around the world all the time because of security, staff, and the rules they have set in place, right? They say addiction, right? Um, that's a real thing, but with strong rules and responsible programs, that's handle, that's manageable, right? Um, but at the end of the day, Times Square is already an entertainment capital of the world, and hell yeah, a casino could only make it stronger for the people who live here, small businesses, and for the city as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nareda. I live in Hell's Kitchen as well. Um, I'm in favor of the casino because I think it'll open up a lot of jobs for people like me who struggled with work since the pandemic. I don't think it's just about gambling. I think it's more about steady paychecks, more opportunities, and giving local businesses a boost. After the writer's strike, a lot of people in creative work are still trying to get by, and Broadway actors don't always have steady income when they're not on stage. This could open up different kinds of jobs for them and also for regular New Yorkers who just need work, whether that's service jobs, security, hospitality, or management. I know people worry about traffic, but with plans in place for that, I feel like the jobs and opportunities it brings in really matters more than the negatives. That's it.
Good afternoon. My name is Justin Thomas. Um, this project isn't just about a casino. I believe it's about real investment in the community. Not only will it bring thousands of good jobs, but I think it'll also boost the local businesses throughout tourism and partnership that we already have. Um, it will also fund programs that support the arts and culture. Uh, right here in this neighborhood, uh, we're already suffering through a lot of traffic, uh, a lot of crime, and I think personally, the casino will help with that. The developers are committed to improving sanitation, safety, and overall infrastructure of Times Square as well, making it a lot cleaner and safer for the residents and tourists as well. This is about turning an iconic, iconic location into an engine of opportunity and community growth. That's it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jason Lax, zip code 10019. I'm the, I'm the president of the
I'm the president of the Broadway League. I have remarks, but I want to start by saying how angry and insulted I am. Uh, they came here to talk about being good neighbors and being honest and respectful. They took out a full page ad in the New York Post today and had people standing outside with signs smearing Broadway Cares Equity Fights AIDS. One of the most incredible charitable institutions we have, whether inside our community or out. They say they're here to support the community. They are not even here. They left as soon as they are done lying at the beginning of their presentation. They could not wait to listen to the community. They are promising three thousand construction jobs, which sounds like a lot. But out of eight casino bids, that's dead last, the lowest number of jobs being created. For permanent jobs, Caesar's comes in sixth out of the eight bids. That's their own proposal talking. Those are facts. The jobs we're hearing about today won't just all exist no matter where a casino goes. There will be more jobs if literally any other location is chosen. Asking theaters and theater workers who have built back New York City tourism, who have built back this entire industry to risk their livelihoods for a casino that comes in dead last in job creation is a slap in the face. We represent a hundred thousand New Yorkers who work in our industry. New York City can do better. The neighborhood deserves better. Please protect Broadway and its workers and vote down this casino. Thank you.
All right. We're going to keep going. So thirty-one to forty, if you want to make your way around, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Fiana and I live in Midtown West. I believe that the casino, oh, sorry. I believe the casino will be a positive impact on New York, especially with the economic crisis that we are currently facing. It'll have an increase in jobs and other opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon, my name is Kadia Archer and I live in zip code one zero one zero three. Um, in regards to whether or not I'm for or against the casino, I'm actually for it. I do understand that we have a lot of negative, you know, in reasoning as to why we shouldn't have it. But besides, um, my apologies. Um, I believe that it would be a powerful economic driver for the city. It wouldn't just generate like substantial revenue, but it would also create a wide range of job opportunities. As well as it making it easier for people to come to work so that way they don't have to worry about how they're going to get there and everything. And if they don't have a car and they're just trying to get on their feet, it makes it easier for them as well. Being that we have unemployment rates skyrocketing right now, this will be very beneficial for them. Um, as well as it would boost, oop, my apologies. It would boost as well, um, tourism, supporting local businesses and helping Times Square remain a global landmark. In short, I believe that this would be more than just a gambling space. It would be an engine for um, jobs, culture and substantial uh, revenue in the city. And I do believe that we could coexist together. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nighty, I'm a resident of one zero zero three six. Um, as a member of this community, it excites me to be informed of how beneficial it would be to open this casino in Times Square. Such as giving us the opportunity to invest in the casino, giving us New Yorkers the chance to own a piece of a major real estate project. Having an opportunity to have a share of its long-term profits. Also, the job market is horrible right now and this will give us the opportunity to have new union jobs. And lastly, but not least, bringing this casino also shows support and expanded mental health services to the homeless. And which wa- is one of the biggest issues we do deal with and see on a day-to-day basis, whether it's walking or riding public transportation. And that's it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Alina and I'm in support of the casino. Um, so basically what I've heard today was concerns about construction. This is New York City, there's always construction. I can guarantee you, you walk around the corner, they're building something right now. Um, a lot of people, once again, this is Times Square, we are one of the top tourist spots in the world. Um, but besides that, um, I believe it's going to be great for New York. Not only are they committing to put money back in the community through many partnerships. They're fully supporting local businesses and Broadway with debt assistance, rental assistance and assistance for daycare. Being a single working mom in a failing economy, I know how hard it is to find affordable daycare. It's not just about gambling profits and money, it's about family, arts and everything that is New York. Thank you.
Thank you.
I couldn't nail.
Are you sure?
It's really okay.
Hi, my name is Amir, um, I go by my middle name Moses. Um, I work all around New York City in nightlife. Um, and I just want to address the crime concerns. Um, so obviously we all know that there's crime going on, there's a bunch of people that live in Manhattan, so naturally that happens. Um, but a lot of the people here today who are against crime, they're not out in the streets past ten, eleven o'clock. I leave work at four AM. Um, and when I say that we need more protection on the streets for people like me, I work in gay clubs all around. Um, and I don't see much, you know, I guess, getting together to rally against the crime that already exists. So it's very interesting how we're here in the name of justice when nothing's being done outside of that. Um, eighty-three million dollars going to protect and um, you know, in- increased security in Hell's Kitchen, I think is greatly needed. When I'm leaving uh, work at four AM, the people in right here aren't on the streets and neither are enough cops. And I think it's time that we do something about it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Natalie, I'm born and raised from New York. I live eat and breathe New York City. Um, I used to love going to Forty Second Street, it was a place that I grew up in. And it's been a long time since I wanted to be back there, you know, back here, just because the homeless homelessness has gotten worse. It's dirty, it's already all the things that everyone is, you know, we're trying to make it better. And that's what the casino is going to come in and do. So it's like, why not, well, we want that, we already have things going on, whether it's traffic, whether it's, you know, the homeless problem. And I think this is going to come in and take care of that. I want to be able to come back and feel like we're doing something about the problems that already exist in Times Square. I travel back and forth every day and it's like a huge issue that I see, even family that come from other countries that come in and see our family that travel all the time to come visit me and they're like, this is what we're coming to see. And I just think that it's time to clean it up. And if there's a plan in place for that, then I'm down for it and supportive of it.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone, happy Thursday, my name is Lindsay, I live on Ninth Avenue at Forty Street. I feel like this bringing the casino would help the city more. What's going on, people talking about buses and construction and what you call it, Mr. Sharp been having buses stop? Living in Forty Street, there's six hotels there, there's going to be traffic regardless in New York. Even if they bring this in, this is New York, the bike lanes have brought out a congestion. On another part regarding is creating jobs, it's getting opportunities. You guys are all in, in uh, unions, it's going to do union jobs for people in construction. It's going to bring revitalized New York, we need, we need more police presence. I was just attacked yesterday.
Address here.
Sorry, I was just attacked yesterday, so I'm just saying, more police presence will help. So thank you, I think it's a great idea.
Uh, how are you doing? Personally, I feel like the casino is going to bring, as the people say, a lot of jobs. Uh, it's going to put back into the community for the kids, for the homeless. Uh, a lot of people bringing up things that already happened in crime. Homeless, uh, it's already here. Uh, let's get rid of it by putting something new. Let's get, let's get out of the old, let's transform to something better. I don't like going to eight Atlantic City or Los Vegas to go to a casino when I could have one in my own home. Why I gotta do that, spend money to go travel instead of staying in my own home?
My name is Mitchell and I was always for the project. But my original reasons were maybe selfish or completely generic until I looked at what the uh, two hundred and fifty million to the community was actually allocated to. I work in shelters and there were two different charitable uh, promises made for the homeless and mental health. So with them allocating somewhere around nine million dollars specifically to homelessness and mental health. We live in a city where everything is moving, moving, moving. Mental health gets overlooked a lot. So if you have a project that's going to generate jobs, generate entertainment and make a world tourist capital even better, while also taking care of the community, I really don't see a problem with that. Especially when they doing a drop-in center. People who don't know the difference between a homeless shelter and a drop-in center, drop-in centers are really, really important to homeless people who are a little bit more on the mental health side. And they're not just as easy as, okay, I lost what I have, I'm trying to get a new apartment with a little bit of help. Though drop-in centers are really, really important. So when I seen that, it really changed my mind from anything selfish to this is needed.
Thank you. Can forty-one through fifty make their way to the line, please?
Joseph Sibley, uh, I'm not only a member of the Broadway community, uh, I A T C local seven six four, the wardrobe and uh, child guardian local. Uh, but I'm also a member of the Hell's Kitchen community and I oppose the casino. Uh, I find it funny that we were being lectured at about the oligarchs of Broadway when we're literally discussing a billionaire owner and a billionaire company coming into the Broadway community. Time and again, these large corporations come in making large promises and enticing deals. And time and time again, they prove that they refuse to follow through. Underproducing, underfunding and reneging on deal after deal. When will we stand up and hold strong that pro-business doesn't need to be anti-community? Thank you, please vote no.
Good afternoon, my name is Jennifer Halpern. You need my zip one zero zero three three. My livelihood first as a theatrical costume professional and now as an I A T C representative has relied on this thriving theater scene for almost thirty years. And I am against, against a casino in Times Square. The gentleman from S L Green started his presentation off with a lie. Everyone who is agai- here who is against this is a worker, not a theater owner, a theater worker. Stagehands, ushers, ticket takers, box office workers, wardrobe workers, makeup artists, hairstylists and stagehands. And none of them have taken a dime to be here today. Let's stop calling this a gaming venue. It's about gambling. We're talking about gambling, okay? The people who want this casino claim that it will boast, that it will boost business, local theaters and business, maybe. But that's not a sure thing, casinos don't actually drive new tourism and their economic benefits dwindle over time. Especially when they're in dense cities. A casino will threaten thousands of jobs at Broadway theaters and local businesses. Don't take the risk. Broadway has been a boon to this neighborhood for decades and decades. Not just making it vibrant, but making it economically productive. Vote for the people, vote no, vote for the workers, vote no.
Hi, my name is Arziki Oleenka Fenyo, my zip code is a hundred zero seven. What I want to really emphasize is that this is really the city's project, our project, the public's project. Dozens, if not hundreds, of residents such as myself have been really integral in this process, instrumental. Uh, the Caesar's Palace, S L Green Team, Rock Nation have been asking uh, residents like me, those across the city and have really been actively integrating our perspectives, our ideas. I was at the last hearing and I said, you know, so many people come here, you make it here, you make it anywhere. A lot of times they do it without us, but this time, this is our project, they are making it with us. This is, and there are so many spillover effects with this project, uh, with, with Broadway, with theater, with local small businesses, with vendors. Everybody's really going to benefit from this, there are so many tie-ins that are being planned for local businesses. This is really going to be the city's project, this is really going to be our project. And with the mental health dimension with services, I personally have told them about how we have to make sure that we have monthly seminars, services that really ensure that people don't get locked into the negatives of this. With anti-gambling addiction programs, anti-substance abuse programs, mental health is really at the cornerstone of this. And as somebody who's involved in education with mental health, that's why I was even so much in support of this project uh, from the beginning. So I ask all of you on this esteemed panel, please vote for Caesar's Palace, Times Square. Members like me, residents like me are very much in support of this project. And we know that this will be a boon to the city, will continue to benefit Broadway and really help the city fully come back. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Naj, I live in one zero zero three one. I'm a member of Laborers Local Seventy Nine. I've lived and worked in Manhattan my whole life. Um, and I do also love Broadway, I go every year on my birthday. And I'm excited for a casino in Times Square, I think it'll fit into the area. It'll reuse an existing building, um, it'll bring new visitors. I'm not about making Times Square more exclusive, I think Times Square is for everyone. Uh, we should be welcoming new, new audiences here. And growing up, you know, New York is always changing, I've seen new stores open up, that didn't discourage me from going to Broadway. If I stood in the rush line at ten AM in the morning on a Sunday, I was going to Broadway. I'm not going to see a casino and suddenly just drop my tickets and go gamble all my money. People who love Broadway are going to go to Broadway and new diverse audiences will be introduced to Broadway. Um, and, and I, you know, I appreciate everyone's opinion, I just want to say, all workers are part of the community, not just one group of workers. And um, they're, all their voices should be listened to. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Jasmine Santiago, I live in the zip code of a hundred and twenty-five. Um, I work, I'm a legal person, I work as a paralegal and a personal injury firm. And so my opinion on the casino opening is I'm ecstatic that it's opening. Um, I know that there's a casino in Queens in New York and a lot of people have to travel over there. I feel like bringing more people into the area of Broadway for many other reasons would definitely generate more revenue. Also, if um, everybody looks online at Caesar's Palace, Times Square's plan, they mentioned many different aspects of what is it that they're going to offer? For an example, like helping homelessness on the train and investing into that. As a woman that travels through the city by myself, the homelessness in the city alone and on the train too, has been very scary. Um, also, I think that it provides a lot of job security because as I heard in other opposing arguments that um, you know, construction is going to build, but then there's not going to be more jobs, like construction building creates more jobs. And I don't feel like it'll take away from other, other departments or other things. Um, Broadway is known for its Broadway shows, but I've also seen it be dead during the pandemic. And I feel like there needs to be other avenues generating revenue to the community. Um, and that's what I got to say. Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Hello, everybody, and thank you for having us. My name is Tafadar and I'm a member of Laborers Local Seventy Nine. I'm a union construction worker, I work as an organizer for my local, but I came up as a graduate of our apprenticeship program. Now, a little bit about me, I'm a first generation immigrant, I was born in Bangladesh in a little village and I had the opportunity to immigrate here because my father was a worker. And growing up, I grew up in a low-income community in the South Bronx where opportunities are very scarce. There is not that much opportunity for There is not that much opportunity for mobility. But for me, luckily in life, I found my way to my union. And it gave me an opportunity to work with my own two hands and build a life for myself. Through our apprenticeship program, I learned how to mix mortar and build scaffolds and do demolition, take buildings down, put buildings up. And by doing that work, it allowed me to save the money that put my family into a home that I own today. I never thought that I could become a homeowner at the age of twenty-five. And I know a lot of people can relate if you come from a background like I do. So the opportunities that union, construction, apprenticeship programs give us, these are things that we need to be creating for more residents of our city to uplift people. And that's how we deal with issues of public safety and economic mobility by creating more union jobs. You know, I, I live debt-free right now. I'm able to support my mother. I'm able to, I just moved in with my wife. I got married. I built a life. My union gave me these opportunities and projects like Caesar's, that's what fuels the growth that creates these opportunities for us. And while we talk about opportunity here, we need to talk about opportunity costs. What is the opportunity cost of not going forward with projects like this? That's one less job to feed a family, to pay a mortgage, to pay rent. Somebody mentioned four years of construction. That's four years that someone's going to be able to keep food in their kids' mouths and keep a roof over their heads. So as a member of the union that cleaned up and ground zero on nine eleven twenty-four years ago, I'm here to say render unto Caesar's what is Caesar's. Build this casino proposal. Thank you.
My name is Patricia White. I, oh, thank you. I live in zip code one zero 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 three. And I am the president of Theatrical Wardrobe Union seven, six, four of the IATSC. You've heard a lot of my members testify already and a lot of people from some of the other Broadway unions. We're probably not the loudest, the best spoken. We're not the richest and we're not being paid. We're not. That was kind of insulting, I have to say. We're not being paid to be here today. But what we do do is come to this neighborhood every day. Many of us vote in this neighborhood every day. And I want you to understand that when Reverend Sharpton asks you not to deal with emotion, he's really asking you to ignore what's special and fragile about this neighborhood that can't be found anywhere else. They can see the inherent excitement of Times Square. The lights, the people. A casino threatens to overwhelm this unique neighborhood character. There are plenty of empty lots in the city. There'll be jobs there. Go there. In closing, I just want to say, I could say a lot more. I have twenty seconds. You don't have to have anti-gambling programs if you don't have any gambling. So there you go.
Uh, my name is Mike Helstrom. I'm International Vice President, Eastern Regional Manager. I'm a proud New Yorker. I'm a proud member of Local seventy-nine. I represent the Mason Tenders District Council, sixteen thousand construction workers of which Local seventy-nine is a member of, with eight thousand of those members being residents of the five boroughs of New York City. When we talk about casino development, it's happened, this discussion is happening all over the city. This Caesar proposal is the best well-thought proposal that's been put before any community of people in New York City. It is the only shovel-ready project. And when we say shovel-ready in the construction industry, that means, as my brother said just a few seconds ago, that our members are going to go to work immediately. There is going to be very little approvals that Caesar's will need once they make it through this process and get up to Albany where this decision really should be made. This decision should be made on an Albany level. And I know that the state had set up this process so that each community can be heard. But I will tell you that this proposal is the best proposal. We are ready to build this casino. We are ready to go to work and thousands, thousands of construction workers will be able to put food on their table as we revitalize Times Square and we make the entertainment capital of the world, the entertainment capital of the world. The lights go down on Broadway, but the lights go up for Caesar's. I ask you to vote yes. And keep in mind, as other unions vote, we vote as well. We will make sure that we are heard. We are make sure that our voice is being heard. Thank you.
Excuse me, folks. We are going to give everybody two minutes. We are not going to shout down and boo people speaking on both sides, please. Please, excuse me. No, no, no. Excuse me. Excuse me. That's what we're going to do. We're giving everybody the two minutes. All right, let's keep going. So, all right, sir. All right. All right, keep, let's keep going.
Thank you for your service. My name is Edward Pierce. I'm the president of IATSC Local USA eight twenty-nine, United Scenic Artists. We are the union that represents over five thousand designers and scenic artists. We work on Broadway. We are against the proposed casino in Times Square. I have worked in this neighborhood for thirty years on dozens of new plays and musicals. In fact, my first Broadway show was in this unique and special theater. I'm honored to be on the creative team of the Broadway musical Wicked, where we just celebrated eight thousand five hundred performances over the last twenty-three years. Our union members support building trades and hotel workers. Of course we do. But those jobs will materialize wherever this casino is built. Our jobs are on Broadway and we don't have the option of moving our theaters. Please preserve our crown jewel of New York City, Broadway. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, at fifty through sixty, sorry, fifty through sixty, when I come around, please to line up. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Elliot Green. My zip code is one zero zero.
Just step a little closer to the mic so we can.
Sorry. Thanks. So I get a restart. Good afternoon. My name is Elliot Green. I'm the chief operating officer of the Schubert Organization, the owner, operator and steward of seventeen of the forty-one Broadway theaters and eleven of the sixteen theaters, which are in proximity to this proposed casino. I appreciate the opportunity to address you on this crucial matter. You have no doubt heard a litany of reasons to disapprove this existential threat to the Broadway industry and Hell's Kitchen neighborhood. I do not intend to reiterate the negative impacts of increased vehicular traffic congestion, chaos, chaos rather, as we've seen, and crime on the Broadway industry, our landmarked theaters and to our neighbors, partners and visitors. I do however, want to impart additional significant data regarding industry employment that will hopefully contribute to your decision to disapprove this license. There are sixteen Broadway theaters located on forty-fourth and forty-fifth streets between Sixth and Ninth Avenues. Twelve of those are located between Broadway and Eighth Avenue. They are adjacent to or steps away from this proposed casino. The sixteen theaters employ approximately nineteen hundred union theater managers, stage managers, stagehands, ticket sellers, ticket takers, ushers, porters, cleaners, engineers, security people, wardrobe people and actors and musicians, among others. In a typical week, those nineteen hundred union members earn, based on the various collective bargaining agreements, more than three point eight million dollars, including contributions to their pension and welfare funds. That totals in excess of two hundred million dollars per year, including incremental amounts that are in excess of the contractual minimums. Please do not allow their workplaces, our historic theaters, to be jeopardized by this unwanted and unneeded threat. Please let the downstate casino license go elsewhere. There are good locations for a casino in New York.
Thank you. Give me a couple extra seconds because we're going to wrap the.
My name is Leah Oaken and I am the Live Events Business Representative for the Theatrical Wardrobe Union Local seven sixty-four of the IATSC. They say it takes a village to raise a child and I would like to introduce you to my village. I was lucky enough to spend my childhood in and out of these theaters. It takes a village to bring Broadway to life. The people who do this work are creative, are dedicated and passionate. Wardrobe workers who make wicked glamorous and Chicago saucy guardians who look out for Broadway's youngest stars. Stagehands who can take about everything in this building and put it back together better than it was. Front of house staff who connect audiences from across the world with this industry and this city. Designers, our dreamers, creating worlds previously unknown. Company managers who will, let's just say, there is no job description long enough to explain what a company manager does. General managers and producers who put these shows together courageously from nothing. It takes all of them and more to make Broadway a real community that this proposal threatens. Broadway is a huge part of New York City's identity. It's economic driver. Building a casino here would compromise that and make New York City like every other place. Vote no on this proposal. Make sure that the bright lights shine for generations in this big city. If a casino is built in Times Square, I fear the bright lights will be dimmed and we will lose our way in the dark. Vote no.
Robert Taborzy, one, one, two, two, five. Hello, I'm a representative of Launa Local seventy-nine, speaking in support of the Caesar Palace Times Square proposal. Having lived in Hell's Kitchen and working in Midtown, I have always appreciated all the Times Square offers within walking distance. In my opinion, the Caesar's project will be a great addition to our city's main entertainment district. And I believe the Coalition for a Better Times Square is committed to positively impacting the neighborhood and the entire city. First, more foot traffic will create new job opportunities by generating billions in revenue to the surrounding theaters, restaurants, hotels and shops around Broadway, especially since Caesar's reward programs applies to many local businesses. The development team has also made commitments to over a hundred million dollars in direct investment in public space improvements, after-school programs, community health programs, public bathrooms, sanitation and safety for the neighborhood. Additionally, labor stands to gain thousands of new, good-paying union careers that wouldn't exist without the license. This is also a conversion project, which means it can be built the most sustainably and efficiently to reduce its environmental impact. I have met with the team behind Caesar's Palace Times Square multiple times over the last four years and they understand the importance of labor and community. The project will create union careers, increase revenue for local businesses and further the appeal of Times Square. Please vote in favor of this project. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Una Adams and I'm the Director of Organizing for Labor's Local seventy-nine. My zip code is one, one, two, one, five. I'm also a longtime New York City resident and a mom of a kid who loves to go to Broadway shows. I'm here in firm support of this proposal for Caesar's Times Square, not only because of the construction, union jobs that it will create, but because we have been advocating for affordable housing across the city. And I think we all understand the deep need for that. Every other proposed site would take away from a possible site for affordable housing. I'm, our members need affordable housing and I'm hoping that my child can grow up living in New York City in affordable housing, which can be built on one of those other sites. This is a commercial district. It is the most appropriate site to have a casino. I'm also, I'm also excited by the idea of having a safer Times Square. You know, I'm not much of a helicopter mom, but my daughter loves to go to Broadway shows and I make her text me when she gets to the train station at night after going to see a show. I would love to have more security here so that all of the kids who are growing up in New York City could comfortably go and enjoy the culture which our city offers. I urge you again to vote yes for this proposal.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Blair Townsend. My zip code is one zero zero two, four, and I have lived and worked in Manhattan for over a decade. I walk to and from Times Square every day after work and I'm often working in the area until late at night. As such, I vehemently oppose the building of a casino in Times Square. Times Square and Broadway in particular, as we've heard today, has come a long way in the last few decades in terms of improving safety and building community, which is what we're talking about today. And I'm very concerned that the inclusion of a casino in the middle of that community will transform it into an inhospitable, unsafe environment that will be detrimental to the success of the many Broadway shows that make Times Square so vibrant. A casino would not only cause crime and congestion, but would attempt to capitalize on the hard work that these shows have done, developing those audiences. Audiences they would aim to keep inside their doors rather than out in Times Square, supporting local businesses and shows. I believe that a casino in Times Square is a bad bet and that it should be pursued anywhere but Broadway. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Will Wagner. I work in the Bronx, I, sorry, I live in the Bronx and I work five blocks away. I'm in one zero zero one, nine. I didn't know exactly what I was going to say today. But then I heard the remarks from Mark Holliday, the chairman and CEO of SL Green, where he, among other, many other inaccurate and mischaracterizations of the plan, said that it would have a monumental and lasting benefit for the area. One needs only to ask, whose benefit would be monumental and lasting? Ours, the community, where this casino is proposed to be built, or his pocketbook? I didn't know much about Mark Holliday, so I Googled him. And this is one of the first things I found from Crane's profile from two thousand and five. He ran a football betting book at his junior high school, figuring out how fast to set the odds so he'd come out ahead every week. It seems that very little has changed since Holliday was in junior high because he continues to pit people against each other, pit people, working people against each other in the interest of his own organization to create false conflict, oppose people who believe in the same thing, which is a revitalized and a safe Times Square area. There are existing initiatives in place to make Times Square a livable, walkable, safe area. Why should we need to put that decision in the hands of a few billionaires and other wealthy people who believe that they can best represent our interests? And I'll have, I have thirty-seven more seconds. So I'm going to say, there are, I can think of thousands of movies about New York City with the title, New York, with New York in the title that are represented as an amazing place. I, I'm not from New York, but I moved here because of the dream that represents. I can think of one movie about Las Vegas, which is what these people want to turn New York City into, Leaving Las Vegas, about a man who goes to Las Vegas and drinks himself to death. Let's not drink ourselves to death. I suggest you all vote no on this proposal.
We're at, which number? Sorry?
My name is Jamie DeRoy. I've lived in New York City for the last sixty-some years. And I live in one, one, oh, oh, one, nine. I see every single play on Broadway and most of the off-Broadway shows, so I am in this area constantly. The traffic here is so bad already. The foot traffic, the car traffic. And you want to put a casino at the corner of the busiest street in Manhattan for theater? I came here Sunday night for a eight o'clock, six o'clock show on a Sunday, which is not a normal time for a Broadway show. It took forever between the people, the, the, the characters in, in, in Times Square and getting, just making the turn is ridiculous. I don't understand. I mean, you want to put a casino? I worked at Caesar's. I performed there years ago. I, you can put it anywhere and build up those areas. We don't need this built up. I, I'm involved in several Times Square restaurants. It's hard enough to make a living in some of these restaurants. It's hard enough to make a living on Broadway. I don't think we need a casino. I've seen reports where actors are late for their half hour because they can't walk through the crowds. I watch people come into the theater late because they have not been able to get through the traffic. I, I just beg you, vote no on this casino. It is not the place for it, not Times Square.
All right, thank you.
Hi, my name is Lori Goodman. I am a native New Yorker. I, my zip code now is one zero zero three, six. I have lived in this neighborhood, and I mean this neighborhood, Hell's Kitchen, Times Square, Hell's Kitchen. I have heard a lot of talk about the safety of this neighborhood. I have heard a lot of talk about the safety of this neighborhood. But what I have seen, being here over 35 years, having raised my children here, is that when they talk about safety, they're talking here. Everything gets pushed, like the traffic when they close the 7th Avenue to cars. All that pollution, all that traffic went to 9th Avenue. All of the same, the crime, everything that they keep saying how safe this is going to be. I don't know about 8th Avenue. I don't know about 9th Avenue. I raised my children here. I hope my grandchildren can come visit here and have this be safe. I am so against this casino. A casino can be anywhere. My neighborhood cannot. This is Broadway. This is Hell's Kitchen. We want it to remain safe. We want it to be a community. It is a neighborhood. It is not just a commercial district. People live here. They raise their families here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have your number, Liz, 56, right up to the mic.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is David Stone. I was born in Brooklyn, third generation, and I've lived on the west side of Manhattan and voted and paid a lot of taxes here for the past 37 years. I'm also a Broadway producer of many plays and musicals, most notably of Wicked, onstage around the world and on screen around the world. I remember very, very, very well what Times Square looked like and felt like in the 1970s and 1980s. The transformation of this neighborhood and the collaboration between the city, the residents of this neighborhood, and the Broadway community has been one of the greatest urban planning success stories in this country's history. However, this neighborhood is now at a breaking point, and if it is pushed any further, it will break. This proposed casino would be, simply put, the end of this neighborhood and the end of the story of Broadway, which, as I'm sure we would all agree, is the cultural capital of the city, the country, if not the world. In the past 50 years, the Broadway community has come back again and again from a city bankruptcy, a drug epidemic, the AIDS crisis, an unspeakable terrorist attack, a financial crisis, and of course, most recently, an 18-month pandemic shutdown. It is bewildering to me why anyone would think that it is a good idea to voluntarily destroy an industry so vital to the city's economic impact and to its very culture. And it breaks my heart to think that for so many decades, the hard work of so many people, the Broadway industry, as well as the many other affiliated industries and the amazing residents of this neighborhood, it breaks my heart to think that all of this could be gone because of a few greedy people who are used to buying anything and anyone that they want. Please, please vote this down. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kevin McEnany, 301 West 45th Street, which is one block where they're going to build this atrocity, the casino, which is already there. I live and work in this neighborhood. I've been a member of over 35 years. I am a union member, a member of IOTC and APAM, the Association of Theatrical Press Agents and Managers. I can still smell BS, and that's what these people are giving. These proposed owners cannot be trusted. Today, they finally obeyed the rules. The first one, they spoke over 30 minutes. At 40 minutes, they were told, wrap it up. They didn't do it. Everything that comes out of their mouth the first time is never the truth. Today, they behave, but you don't know about tomorrow. They took their 10 minutes over and over again. They cannot be trusted. Their website of supporters, almost one-half, don't even live in the neighborhood. Cross out, look, take the addresses and see. Over half of their supporters, it should be those that live in the neighborhood. They have closed establishments on this list. They have like a restaurant, but then they have the corporation that owns it also has a thing. They don't have the supporters. They don't have the supporters from the neighborhood. The majority don't even live here. Now, their website, you can't trust. Their words, they said it would help the area, but for at least four and a half to five years, their own words, they will displace thousands of people who work in the building because they're going to do the renovation for the hotel. And The Lion King is closing, so for about five years, over thousands and thousands of people will not be employed and working in this industry. They are not helping the neighborhood, no matter what they say. Say no.
Thank you. We're at time. Thank you. All right, can we have numbers 60 through 70? Please make their way around.
Hi, my name is Amy, and I live on 46th Street, and I own a small business on 41st Street. So to say that this neighborhood is my life and my business, it is my everything. I am vehemently opposed to this casino. The congestion right now for me just to get from my house to my office is a chore every day. Adding the casino will make the congestion worse, will make the crime worse. I also, in my small business, I administer many of the 100,000 jobs on Broadway. Every single one of those people is living paycheck to paycheck, busting their butts to do this job and work. The casino in Times Square will take those jobs away, and I don't have it in me to look them in the eyes and say, I don't have a job for you anymore, which is what will happen if there's a casino in Times Square. Please vote it down. The construction jobs can happen anywhere. Of course, we support them, but Broadway can only happen here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Leslie Sloan, a 23-year resident of Chelsea, ZIP code 10001. I also own an event planning business whose office is three blocks away, ZIP code 10036. Among the many reasons I am strongly opposed to a casino in Times Square is the most obvious reason. This is the one casino proposal whose existence threatens another industry, the Broadway industry, an industry that is a huge part of the economic engine of our incredible city. I work with the Broadway community as an event planner. It's not even the most important point of what I have to say, that the events Broadway holds to celebrate its shows' milestones offer economic support to the restaurants and event spaces in this neighborhood. But getting to work with the Broadway community, I see behind the curtain. I am wowed by the hard work that these people do to create theater, both onstage and in offices all around this neighborhood. We keep talking about jobs. How many New Yorkers are employed by Broadway? Those are jobs that happen only right here in these few blocks. Broadway as an industry is getting squeezed in the same way as other businesses. Tariffs on hard goods, ticketgoers with less expendable income, and international tourism rates dropping. Why would we, why would you, the people with the power to make this decision, do anything at all to cannibalize the Broadway industry? Why, when you have the opportunity to reward this casino to a neighborhood that could be so well-served by visitors? Vote to put it in a place that would mean, why would you put it, vote to put it in a place that would mean it would compete with another industry that attracts more tourists than any other attraction our city has to offer? Every proposed casino developer will tell you how their project will help the neighborhood, jobs, supporting surrounding businesses, infrastructure. It's a huge opportunity for New York City. We can bring people who are poised to spend money to places they don't already go. Why would we waste that opportunity? Why would we do anything that works against the Broadway community, whose jobs are here and only here?
Thank you. We're at time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jessica Owens. I live in ZIP code 10026. I work in the Broadway industry. I've worked in the area therefore for over 10 years. Coming here, I was proposed to wax poetic about my love of the neighborhood and the community, a community which I know Caesar's doesn't believe exists because they think it's just a place they can drop to cash register. But after hearing a lot of the folks, things that people have said, I feel the need to just solely address them point by point, and I apologize if this is non sequitur. First thing lumber I would like to say is 1917, which is the year that this beautiful building that we're sat in began operations. And for the majority of those over 100 years, they have consistently held union jobs. That is true of the majority of every single Broadway theaters. And I'm slightly flabbergasted to understand how four years of like maybe 3,000 union jobs, of course, which as Amy just said, we would like to have in the city and we fully support, could possibly compete with tens of thousands for 100 years, because we've been here for 100 years, and we're going to be here for another 100 years, and those are going to be 100 years of union jobs and families who get to be raised based on that pay. I would also like to say, second, as some of my colleagues also said, the concept that we're not here when it's late and dangerous is truly just incorrect. When do you think, when do you think a stagehand whose show goes down at 10:45, when do you think they're leaving the area? We even have a full bowling league that happens, starting at 11:30 PM on a Tuesday. My final thing, as I know I'm running out of time and I can't not say anything about this, is the concept that this is an Albany and not a community decision to be made is one of the most abhorrent things I have ever heard. And while I just, I want to even extrapolate about that, but I can't because it's just true. And you heard it yourself, lights up on a casino means lights down on Broadway. So we have all seen what y'all are going to vote for, and you're going to make a bilateral decision, and everyone knows which one you're going to make. So I vote that you say no to the casino. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Kohler. I'm the Political Director for the Mason Tenders District Council, and I'm here today to voice my support for the casino. I respect everyone's opinion. Clearly, this is a very passionate issue. So this morning, we were greeted by marquees that said, no crime, no chaos, no casino. In my mind, they might as well have read, no jobs, no revenue, no community benefit. Or maybe they could have read, no public restrooms, no enhanced security, no childcare for Broadway workers. Because these are the things that the opponents are denying New York City, its residents, and its visitors. I think a casino in Times Square really is the only proposal that makes sense. When I was a kid, I would come to Broadway, Times Square area, not to go to Broadway shows, but to go to one of the many different nightclubs that were here. In fact, there was a place called Bond's International Casino, not a casino, a former men's clothing store, where The Clash performed some of its most legendary concerts. That was on 44th and 45th Broadway. I think that other venues, Roseland, Birdland, have always existed with Broadway. I don't really see the existential threat that casino is going to cannibalize theatergoers from Broadway. And to the gentleman who was saying it's only 3,000 construction jobs, well, that's 3,000 construction jobs that support 3,000 families' middle-class lives. And the casino in Times Square will only produce those jobs if the casino project is voted for. The other sites will hopefully eventually be developed as a launch needed housing. Those two will be union jobs, and we can't just dismiss 3,000 jobs. And maybe there's a way to put The Lion King in another venue while the construction is happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. All right, let's have order, folks. Go ahead, please.
Hi, I'm Jacob Porter. I've worked in this industry, Broadway industry, for over 15 years, ZIP code 10036. I just want to know, what are we talking about here? In the entire world, there is only one Broadway, only here, in this area. You come to New York as a tourist, you do three things. See the Statue of Liberty, eat at Katz's, and you go to Broadway. That's what you do. This casino can go anywhere, but this is the only proposal that threatens an entire industry, not just one show, not just one block, an entire ecosystem of artists, workers, and audiences that make New York, New York. So what are we talking about here? I'm about to become a father. I've lived through addiction, and there is no world in which I would feel safe as a parent, as a New Yorker, as someone who knows what's at stake, bringing my daughter to see a Broadway show, the most beautiful gift that I can give her, with a casino planted next door. Broadway should be a place of inspiration and not temptation. It is absurd to think that the casino industry is somehow good-hearted and well-intentioned. You are talking about Caesar like he's Christ. I haven't seen a Broadway theater with this many paid actors in my life. And I'll tell you this, and I will tell you this. I went downstairs multiple times today to use the restroom and saw a ton of "vote yes" signs right where they belong, in the trash. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. 63? All right, all right, let's keep going.
Good afternoon. My name is Charles Flaitman. I am Executive Vice President of the Schubert Organization, and I live at ZIP code 10025. I have worked in the theater and in tourism within a 10-block radius of this very spot for over 50 years. Today, of course, is the anniversary of 9/11, a day that nobody who was here will ever forget. And when the city needed to show our resilience, that we were strong and we were ready to come back for all the world to see, the city asked Broadway to lead the way, and we did. Only two days after that horrific attack, it was Broadway that led the city back to life. Imagine asking the Times Square Casino to lead the way back in that type of environment. Broadway matters to New York. Broadway matters to New York State, and Broadway matters to the world. It happens here and here alone. It is a true gem that exists around the world right here. Please do not devalue it. Please respect what it is and what it means for the world. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Sam Dallas, and I am a General Manager for Broadway Shows. My ZIP code is 10036. I could stand up here and repeat the points you have all heard for all of this morning, you will hear this afternoon, and last week, but instead, I am going to sing. Start spreading the news, a casino would be in the way. It wants to be a part of it, of old Broadway. No way! All right, that's it. That's all you get. I love a casino more than anybody else. You will find me at Dragon Link or Willy Wonka, but I don't want to go to one across the street from where I live and where I work. On Broadway, if you have to buy the applause, your show is probably a flop, and that's no different than a casino. If you have to promise millions of dollars of incentives to a community, or in today's instance, white tickets to free food truck outside, you probably are not a positive addition to the area. It's been fascinating watching this entire process unfold for the last several months, and you know, this casino trying to come to an area that I see doesn't really want it. It reminds me of going to college for the first time, and the nervousness about being placed with a new roommate, and my mom always telling me to play nice with others, but to remember, if you don't have a weird roommate, you are the weird roommate. Well, this casino is the weird roommate and needs to find another home. Thank you.
All right, let's keep going. Next, please. Yep.
Hi, my name is Erica Schwartz. I'm a proud producer and presenter. When I last spoke to members of this committee, I talked about the pride I felt as a mother and a producer, and the pride I felt in bringing my daughters to Broadway, and how the concern that I constantly hear from other mom friends about what a casino would do to Times Square. I'm here to say that I still feel that pride, and you'll hear many of us talk about the pride of working on Broadway and the Broadway community. I've never actually heard someone talk about the pride of their time at a casino or the casino community that they're so proud of. I do want to address those of you who work in construction, who are excited about the job opportunities. I'm excited for you, too. We've actually built many theaters in the 20 years that I've worked in this industry. We love working with you and bringing jobs to you. That job will exist wherever the casino is built. It doesn't need to be built here. You will have a job when a casino is built.
So dressed this way.
Somewhere in New York City. Sorry. So, to the members of the committee, I'm excited about you building a casino. Don't build it here. We don't want it here. We don't need it here. As I said the last time I spoke to you, as a producer of the recently closed Broadway Show Parade, we ask people, where do you stand? I hope you stand with the Broadway community that we are proud of, because I stand with Broadway. New York needs to stand with Broadway. The people who love New York love Broadway. Please support us and vote no.
So before you begin, we're at number 70 in this queue. At, when we get to 70, we're going to pause. We're going to take a 15-minute break up here, okay? And then when we resume, we'll keep going. Go ahead.
Hi, guys. My name is Jen. Both my work address and my home address fall in the 100... Both my work address and my home address fall in the 10036 zip code. I thought when I accidentally stepped in the line to speak that I would talk about how having Live Nation book a casino at my front door would affect, you know, my job as someone who works in live music. But I've listened today and I've heard everything everyone has said and I've heard who was saying it and I look a little bit different than everyone that spoke before me. I'm younger, no offense to everybody, but I'm younger and this is who lives in Hell's Kitchen. I am in the face of thousands of people that live in the 4th floor walk-up in the pre-war building, that noticed when the bodega finally got that one letter lit fixed on the sign and, you know, and, and, you know, like it. We notice it's been broken for four years and we see it. I love Times Square. I tell people I live here and they always ask why? Why? It's, it's known as lame, it's known as crowded, and it is, they're not wrong, but I love it and, you know, navigating Times Square, selfie sex, 6:00 AM weirdness, you know, when I'm walking to yoga or, you know, that, that Saturday when it's nice out for the first time and everyone from New Jersey is here and you're just, you're dodging, you know, strollers, like, I can navigate it like an art form. And a casino, I'm not sure I could. As someone who lives here, I don't think I can do that every day. And I, I love living here and I want to keep loving living here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Picorillo. Definitely not a paid actor. I am the area standards director for the New York City District Council of Carpenters and I am paid by the 17,000 union carpenters across the five boroughs. I'm here today to voice our strong support for Caesar's Palace Times Square Casino proposal led by S.L. Green and Caesars. This will be a union-built opportunity for working New Yorkers that'll create over 3,000 construction jobs, 3,800 permanent union positions, with average compensation exceeding $120,000 annually, including benefits and tips. These aren't just jobs, we're talking about careers. S.L. Green and Caesars have shown a constant commitment to organized labor. They understand that union labor means quality, safety, and fairness. Their plan reflects the values we fight for every day. Dignity, opportunity, and respect for working families. This proposal also includes a $250 million, million in community benefits, supporting public safety, childcare, and childcare, I'm sorry. It's also a, it's, it's a plan that uplifts not just Times Square, but the entire city. We urge the CAC to support this transformative project. Let's build a union, let's build it right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Oh, nervous. Hello to all of you and thank you to our interpreters for being here this afternoon. My name is Emily Burquist and I live in 10024 and I work in 10036. Raise your hand if you've been to a casino. Based on this response, it's clear that casinos don't need Times Square to exist and Times Square does not need a casino. They are available for anyone who may want them. Raise your hand if you've been to a Broadway or off-Broadway show in Midtown. Something that I think that is easy to forget is that there are nonprofit theaters in Midtown too, dozens of them, organizations who give to the community with no expectation of profit, who do not have the resources to compete against the allure of a casino when it comes to the people who live and visit here. It's easy to dismiss the entirety of theater and performing arts industry as just the flashy lights of Broadway, but it is so, so much more. We cannot support a proposal that undermines not only the livelihood, but also the community and cultural impact of thousands of people, many of whom do not work on Broadway. They work for nonprofit companies that support taking risks, caring for and generating community, hiring artists and crew and staff of all backgrounds. This community needs the theater industry at all levels, not just Broadway, and the theater industry needs this community to continue to support and embrace all of the work that they do. We do not need a casino. Please say no.
Thank you. Next.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Thank you to the committee for taking the time. My name is Michael Phillips. I'm the president of Jamestown, which is the owner of One Times Square. We've owned and operated businesses in Times Square and Hell's Kitchen for over 30 years. I've heard a lot of the arguments here today and I think lots of them have merit, but what I'm struck with is it's not, it's not this or that, it's a yes and. We need all business in New York. And when you look at the damage that, that occurred in the last five years with over 400 businesses closing in the direct region of Times Square and food and beverage businesses under stress throughout the city, I look at the other applications throughout the city and I say, for Times Square, which we believe in, I'm quite passionate that we need the revenue, we need the security, and we need the business in the community. We hear about the jobs, direct jobs, we don't hear about indirect jobs. One great thing about this proposal is that it is very light on food and beverage and very light on other forms of entertainment, which is in fact, as designed, pushing the people down to the streets and the community. I don't think it's appropriate to villainize the customers who go to casinos, because in many cases, they look like all of us. They also are families, they are also dual-income with no kids, they're LGBTQ, they are a variety of different complexions and, and walks of life. If you look at the, the food and beverage and entertainment revenue of Las Vegas, it's over 35% entertainment and food. And so, of the total revenue. So I really think it's important that we, as a community, look across the city. We have incredible needs in Times Square. Our visitor counts are down by over half. We need to get our businesses on the ground floor and long-term leases where they're not today. We have pop-ups and 3.0 of Times Square is everybody's risk. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name is Sheri White and I'm proud to be here today in support of Caesar's Palace Times Square, speaking on behalf of One Times Square, the historical home of the New Year's Eve Ball. As the stewards of One Times Square, we have the honor and privilege to produce the Times Square New Year's Eve Ball drop event with the city, the state, and the Times Square Alliance. And to be part of this incredible neighborhood, which is truly the crossroads of the world and the gateway to New York City. I also live in this neighborhood at the 10019 area code. Times Square is at a moment where bold thinking is needed and New York State's decision on the next casino license aligns perfectly with that. Caesar's Palace Times Square is the right choice to make that neighborhood into its next chapter. Times Square is already the world entertainment district, attracting millions of visitors each year. Maintaining that energy and appeal requires new investments and creativity, which Caesar's Palace Times Square delivers. After years of listening and working with local stakeholders, they've created a proposal that doesn't just enhance tourism, it supports local businesses, invests in sanitation and beautification, it improves public safety and prioritizes community programs. It includes $81 million in security investment designed by the former NYPD Commissioner Bill Bratton, who spoke earlier. At One Times Square, we've been firsthand the different, different meaningful investments can make, like our own $550 million investment we're making now. Caesar's Palace is transformative and we think it's a great addition to the neighborhood. It's not just a casino, it's an opportunity to ensure Times Square continues to thrive for generations to come. For those reasons, we urge you to support the casino for Times Square. Thank you very much for the time.
Hey, hey, hey.
I, I do it 10019.
Let's address the committee, please. We're going to, and we're at time, we're at time here. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for your time. Anthony Medeo, 10014. First, I'd like to thank you for giving everybody the opportunity on both sides of the spectrum to speak. I represent the New York City District Council of Carpenters. I am also the president of Local Union 157, which is home to 7,000, 7,000 members that can cover Manhattan and the Bronx. Before I speak on behalf of the project, I just wanted to say that it is, today is 9/11 and I've heard a couple of references up there, but this was not a single trade or a single union. When those towers went down, all trades, all people were in there clearing up, cleaning up. The building tradespeople are still there to this day, suffering the consequences of going down there for that cleanup and that should not be forgotten or not, never be lost in translation. It wasn't just one trade. So, with that being said, I speak, I speak on behalf of the Caesar, I speak on Caesars and S.L. Green Project. Now, it's going to, it's going to bring thousands in job, union jobs in this, to this area. If you look around this area right now, currently there are jobs going on that are paying less than area standards and it's a breath of fresh air to finally have somebody come in that's going to pay a livable wage, the people that are going to work in the projects. It's going to bring $7 billion in tax revenue, $26 billion in local economic activity. More than 200 organizations, including our union, support this because it guarantees good-paying jobs, supports local businesses and interests in undeserved communities. And I will say that to the Broadway people that are here, I understand your opinions and I respect it fully. As someone who's been to New York their whole life, I love coming to Broadway, but one thing this neighborhood needs, it needs to be cleaned up, it needs to be safe for us to go. And I do truly believe that the casino will drive more revenue and one thing, Broadway will always go and Broadway will always survive. Thank you, everybody. Have a nice day.
All right, thanks. So we're going to take a 15, okay? We'll resume in 15 minutes. Thank you.
All right, if we can bring everybody to order, please, so we can continue. If we could bring everybody to order, please. Everybody take their seats so we can continue with the public testimony. Anybody between the number of 70 and 80 that has not spoken should make their way into line and also 80 to 90 should make their way into line. So again, if you were between 70 and 80 and did not speak for whatever reason, please make your way into the line. There was also a request to repeat the email address that is also accepting public comment on this project. And that is, and I'll say it slower this time, caesars times sqpubliccomment@nystec.com. I'll say it again. Okay, let's keep going. So this is number 70.
Hello, hi. My name is Vian Cox, and I have lived, thank you, I have lived in Hell's Kitchen for 42 years, and I have been lucky enough to be on Broadway for 40 of those 42 years on and off, and a lot of off-Broadway in this community. Sadly, I cannot help but be emotional because that's what I do. I was in a show on 43rd Street when 9/11 happened. We opened back up three days later, and the audience breathed together, and we cried together, and we left the theater feeling bigger than what we had been made to feel that day, three days prior. That is what the theater does. It brings people together for a shared experience, for something of the mind, and something of the heart, and something of the soul. I don't know about gambling, but I do know that a casino is about every man for himself. And I am afraid. I am afraid for my livelihood. I am a union member. I am a middle-class income worker in Times Square, and I live here. I am afraid for my fellow artists. I am afraid to see our lives and our light that we have offered the world, and we have defined Times Square for 125 years.
Thank you. We're at time. Thank you.
My name's Ben Simpson, and I stand here not just as someone who works on Broadway, but as someone who has planted roots here. Last month, I purchased my first apartment right in 10036. This neighborhood is now my home, and it's my livelihood. We already have a jackpot in Times Square. It's called the Theater District. The proposal for a casino in Times Square threatens everything that makes this community thrive. Broadway already is the engine that brings millions of visitors here every year. People don't come to Times Square to sit behind slot machines. They come for the magic of live performance, artistry, restaurants, and the workers who make this neighborhood shine. A casino would not uplift our community. It would overshadow it, create congestion, and turn Times Square into something unrecognizable. I'm proud to have made a life here to contribute to this neighborhood's culture and its future. A casino is not progress. It's a gamble with our livelihoods, our art, and our home. Times Square is Broadway, and let's keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Martha Smith, and I'm between homes right now, but my zip will be 10040, and I am against the casino. I'm the Secretary Treasurer for Local 764 IATSC, and 85% of my members live in the Five Boroughs and work in Times Square, and I have worked in this neighborhood for 30 years. I'm actually here to look for some vision from this leadership and ask you, like, the casino can be anywhere, but we right now have something nowhere in the world has. We have Broadway. The other districts in this city are getting so homogeneous, but we still have something special. We are innovative. We look to the future, and I'm asking you all to look to the future too. The people who live and work here do not want some old-fashioned idea, fast becoming obsolete due to online gambling, to take away our uniqueness. No one says, "Similar to an I-95 Connecticut exit, New York," three times fast. It might be hard, but please help us say, "Unique, New York," loud and proud. Or, if that's too much of a tongue twister, just say "No" to the casino. Or, and also, believe me, you don't need to worry about my folks being paid to be here. We just know how to mobilize. We are here because we care about this community, this neighborhood, and keeping New York special. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ariz Rodriguez, and I am proud to member of the Hotel Gaming Trace Council, and I strongly support. I strongly support the Caesar Palace Times Square proposal because it will be, create incredible opportunity for the community and for this city. The project, we will create thousands of some of the best hospitality jobs in the world through the Caesar Hotel and Casino, while it also helping workers in New York and New Yorkers by generating more than 1 million new hotel estate per year. That's right. 1 million new hotel per year is a huge win for the economy and jobs. My union job changed my life in basement, in any basement like Caesar has the improvement to the life in many New Yorkers and their families. Change also committed, and change in Caesar also committed to make the commit and change in Caesar also committed to make the the making the life better for the working.
All right. Thank you. We're at time. Thank you. We're at time.
Chris Brockmeyer, I'm 10019. I work for the Broadway League, and I work with our 13 of our unions to provide healthcare and retirement security to the many workers on Broadway. So any threat or risk to our industry is a threat and risk to the healthcare and to the retirement security of the thousands of people that work on Broadway. We have 140,000 people that we represent on our health plans across the country and another 140,000 people in the retirement world. I've worked in this neighborhood since 1993, the early days of the restoration of Times Square. It has made remarkable progress over the past 35 years. Why there's even a discussion about gambling on a casino when this neighborhood is and has been in recovery for a very long time. We've saved ourselves through COVID. We saved ourselves through 2001, 9/11. And the community will continue to thrive without a Broadway casino. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Cohen. I'm a proud member of hairstylist and makeup artist IATSE Local 798. Yeah, my husband is a member of both Musicians Local 802 and Stagehands Local 1. Collectively, our careers working in the Times Square area combined nearly 80 years. I vehemently oppose the construction of a casino in Times Square. When the, sorry, I'm not a public speaker. When the pandemic struck, all of Broadway was laid off for 18 months. It was a very difficult time for the theatrical community, and there was very real concern that our industry would not make it. My husband and I were both extremely fortunate that our productions came back, the ones we were working on. And many shows were not so lucky. Broadway is still challenged in the aftermath of the pandemic. Audiences are coming back, but now we face a permanent scourge in the form of a casino that would leech audiences away from the theaters and into a space that is designed to keep people spending their money within its walls, not outside in the community. Not only would Broadway attendance suffer greatly, but local restaurants and shops would also lose patronage. A casino can go anywhere. There's only one Broadway. Let's not destroy it. No Times Square Casino!
Thank you. Could I have numbers 81 through 90, please? Cue over on the side, please. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Wendy Davidson, and my zip code is 1003. I am an IATSE Local 1 Stagehand. But I'm also an SDC member. I've worked on Broadway for over 25 years. And if I'm not working, I attend a lot of Broadway shows, like tonight I'm going to go see Oh Mary. Broadway is a very special place, as well as the economic driver of New York City. It brings in billions. Broadway is a cultural beacon, not just in New York City, but the world. To have a casino would Las Vegasize the area and harm the legacy of Broadway. On a personal note, I was in business with a family member who had a gambling addiction. And it was horrifically, it destroyed our family connection, and his gambling drove our business out. So I hope that a casino can go anywhere, and I hope you will vote no to have it here in Times Square, so we can keep our Broadway Broadway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sam Sayed Esq. Donnie, 10040, proud New Yorker for 20 years and Actors Equity member for 17 years. As a teenager, I may have greeted you with Buongiorno, Mecheo Mosalo at my summer job as a singing gondolieri at the Venetian Resort and Casino in my original hometown of Las Vegas, Nevada, where my immigrant father raised a family of four as an upstanding professional poker player. For 20 years, I have worked at the intersection of theater and casinos, employed as an actor on touring and New York stages, as well as on the broadcast-producing team of the World Series of Poker in casinos around the world, like the Empire Casino in Leicester Square, one of three casinos in the heart of London's still thriving West End Theater District. When I returned home from this summer's poker broadcasts at a Caesars Entertainment property, I went straight to a Schubert property to see my friend in a Broadway show. I opened my playbill to find a flyer begging me to save Broadway. Its fear tactics were, in my independently informed opinion, baseless to the point of suspicion. And I felt compelled and obligated as an entertainment professional from my unique vantage point to refute them with one exception. Yes, a casino will mean more people crammed in Times Square. Good. It takes quite the poker face to say that more hotel rooms and increased foot traffic in Times Square is bad for Broadway attendance numbers in an industry where 80% of my friends' shows fail to turn a profit. By the main bluffs, the main bluffs of the Save Broadway flyer that resort casinos are inescapable, black holes orbited by crime that choke neighboring businesses out of existence are far from my lived experience. In short, for my entire professional life, I have known that the two most vibrant, prosperous, and most secure places on earth to be employed are Times Square and Las Vegas Boulevard. This New York theater professional and child of Las Vegas gives a resounding yes on bringing more feet to the streets, more butts in the seats, Broadway League and theater owners.
Thank you. We're at time. Thank you.
Hello, members of the committee. My name is Matt Goldman. I'm the Executive Director of the Town Hall Foundation, Town Hall Theater, 1,500 seats here on 43rd and 6. Thank you. I'm also a fourth-generation Manhattanite, and I'm one of the co-founders of Blue Man Group that had a Off-Broadway show here in Manhattan for 33 years. And I've had a show in Las Vegas for over 20 years. And I can tell you firsthand that more tourism, more gaming, folks doing gaming brings more people to the restaurants, brings more people to theater. It is definitely more is more. Now, you all have heard plenty of arguments on one side of the the discussion and the other, and everyone's got a legitimate point to be made. What I would like to stress is that this is not the time to take the Times Square bid out of the running. There are eight legitimate bids here in New York City. Three are going to get the licenses. I implore the committee to let this get to the state level. Let it be compared in an even fair playing field. To take Times Square out at this point in the process, it just doesn't seem like it would be fair to the City of New York, to the Times Square neighborhood, and to the process in general. So I think it's going to be a great thing. Town Hall supports it. We know it's going to bring more ticket buyers to our theater, and we think it's going to bring more ticket buyers and people to restaurants.
Thank you. We're at time. Folks, really with the booing, come on. We're not going to boo. You don't want to be booed when you're speaking. Let's be respectful, please. Let's go. Sorry.
I'm Sherri Phillips. I work in 10019. I am an accountant. I am not a public speaker. Broadway is the world-renowned cultural icon of New York City. Arts are the connective tissue of our civilization. Please don't risk the thousands of jobs already here for casino jobs that will go wherever a casino goes. Please don't gamble with the treasure that is Broadway, this unique experience that can be found nowhere else. For a casino that can go anywhere, please vote no on this casino in Times Square. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Diana. I live at, well, I live on 50th Street, 10019. I'm a member of Union 306. I was at Scandinavian House a couple of weeks ago, and I spoke. And I noticed that after 30 minutes, the suits left, as they did today, which I consider disrespectful, that they aren't even interested in knowing how we feel. The traffic has become unbearable in Hell's Kitchen. Unbearable to the point where I would like to issue an invitation. I live in a studio. I have a loft bed. I am inviting anybody to spend 24 hours in my little studio to hear the noise from 4:00 to 6:00 in the morning, see the trucks, the big semi-trailers with license plates from Pennsylvania, New Jersey, from everywhere. I've been to the police department. They've tried to get them to move. In the summer, it's the air conditioning. In the winter, they're running the heating. It's fumes, fumes, fumes. So the invitation is open. Carol Boken, my representative, knows where I live. And I would like to end by saying Napoleon Bonaparte said, "All politicians are cut from the same cloth." I would love to have that proved wrong someday. Thank you very much.
My name is Kenneth Cox, and I serve as Chief of Strategic Philanthropy at Encore Community Services, a nonprofit that has supported older adults in this neighborhood for nearly five decades. I'm here today because the stakes are urgent. The proposed casino in Times Square poses a direct threat to the financial stability, cognitive health, and social well-being of older New Yorkers, many of whom, yes, yes, proud of that, many of whom rely on institutions like Encore to stay connected, nourished, and safe. Casinos routinely target older adults with predatory marketing. Free meals, free play offers, time to coincide with social security payments. AARP has documented how these tactics exploit older patrons, the older patrons' vulnerabilities, especially those facing isolation, grief, declining health, or cognitive changes that impair judgment. Encore is one of the city's largest and longest-standing older adult centers. Our most popular program, bingo. The prizes are modest, a stick of deodorant, a can of soup, but the room is packed. Now imagine the lure of a venue promising cash winnings. The risk is not theoretical. If older adults are drawn away from community centers like ours, city-funded services could suffer, and so would the people who depend on them. We urge the committee to reject the casino proposal and instead invest in the proven model of neighborhood-based growth, one that keeps older New Yorkers connected, stable, and thriving. Please vote no.
Thank you.
Hello, and thank you. My name is Steve Fanning. I live over in Manhattan Plaza, 136. I've been in this area since 1977, and I'm an Equity member since 1971. And I'd like you to vote no to allowing Caesars in this neighborhood. This neighborhood has changed greatly in the last 40 years that I've been here. We don't need a casino. You could put a casino over at Union, at Coney Island, the Bronx, the Freedom Plaza. There are other places to go. And I think that the theatrical community really needs to re regrab this community and change it in a way that it is geared more towards Broadway. In other words, let's see some of these big videos signs with our artists of New York City, of designers, of costume people. And please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Robbie Fionn. I've been an Actors Equity member since 1970, and I've lived in Hell's Kitchen, 10036, since 1977. And boy, have I seen a lot of changes here. But I can tell you one thing. If you do a quick search on the internet, you'll see listed as a fact that casinos bring crime, prostitution, suck the money out of a community, and prey on the vulnerable. We don't need that in Times Square. Times Square is the Theater District. Broadway is sacred ground. It always has been. It's where all of us have our hearts, where creativity comes forward. A casino, they say they're not going to take people out of our restaurants. Then why are they having four restaurants in the casino? They should be coming to our streets. They say, people say, "The casino is good for jobs." Those jobs will be good anywhere this casino is built. It does not have to be in Times Square. Please vote no. Protect the Times Square. Protect Broadway. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could have numbers 91 through 100 make their way over. No, no, I didn't say you're not going to speak. I'm just cueing the next group. Okay.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Marshall. I'm a resident of Brooklyn. My zip code is 11216. I apologize. Hope you all can hear me now. Yes. Good afternoon. My name is Marshall. I'm a resident of Brooklyn. My zip code is 11216. And first of all, I want to acknowledge anyone who's actually lost a loved one during this terrible attack on our great city and our nation here during the attack on 9/11. My heart goes out to all of you. First of all, I just want to start off by saying, New York City is the financial capital of the world. And since that being, that is the case, bringing a casino to Times Square, New York City, is an opportunity to strengthen its economy and create jobs and solidify its status as a global destination. Times Square already serves as one of the most visited locations in the world, attracting millions of tourists every year. Adding a casino will not only bring and enhance it, but appeal to so much and provide jobs and opportunities for everyone. I just want to also start by saying, when it comes to tourism, a casino would actually encourage visitors to extend their stays, book more nights in hotels, and spend more time in restaurants, and including theaters. Times Square is already appealing in both international travelers and convention guests who expect major cities to have actual casinos and gaming opportunities here. Having said that, I'm actually a lover of theater and all things art. I do think that both worlds can coexist. I don't think this is the end-all-to-be-all. And for all those who are concerned about crime, if you are concerned about crime, the way that you address that is by bringing opportunities. And you can address that by bringing actual jobs. Thank you so much for your time.
Hi, I'm Jeannie 1001, 10036. This casino project is all about one thing, greed. Jobs may be created, however, there were already good jobs at 1515 Broadway, and many were lost because SL Green forced out a large tenant. This makes new jobs no better than scabs, but maybe the mindset is purposefully, "Jobs for me and not for thee." The incentives being proposed are weak Band-Aids for problems that don't exist yet, and a few that do, but could be fixed or at least improved by politicians if they actually gave a damn. The Backroom deal that was presented to Manhattan Plaza originally proved Caesars, SL Green, and Roc Nation don't actually care about the Times Square and Hell's Kitchen communities. Now they're promising to give money to organizations in the community, but there are no exact details on who's going to get it and how it's going to be divided. If there are any contracts, they will not be adhered to like the so-called affordable housing that was planned with Barclays. In regards to Barclays, I'm sorry, in regards to Barclays, people who already had homes were forced out. No affordable housing was built, and there's a hole in the ground. The state has yet to collect on those fines. Mr. Carter seems to be in the same money-hungry mindset that he was when he was younger. I guess some things never change. I guess some things never change. I'm alarmed that Mr. Carter's associates were on Forty-third Street during the petition signing process on West Forty-third Street and telling those against the project that it didn't matter because it was a done deal. Sadly, if true, it wouldn't surprise me. I am tired of politicians and developers promising things that just don't happen and trying to turn us into cities that already exist while we lose our character and everything that makes New York, New York. Nothing good is going to improve this project.
Good afternoon. My name is Christina Datz Romero, a proud resident of the Lower East Side for forty-five years. And I'm here today, I'm the Executive Director of the Lower East Side Ecology Center, and I'm here today to share our support for the Caesar Palace Times Square project. We support this project because of its considerations in regards to environmental impacts and sustainability. From an adaptive reuse of an existing building to choosing a location in an area that is accessible by public transportation and not infringing on possible public open space, this project demonstrates thoughtfulness from an environmental standpoint. Moreover, the Ecology Center is looking forward to collaborate with Caesar Palace Times Square to bring further environmental benefits to the community. We will add street trees to the Hell's Kitchen neighborhood and engage the community in the care of these trees to provide opportunities for local residents to engage in stewardship of their shared, open, green spaces. Street trees contribute to cleaner air by removing small harmful particles from the air we all breathe. Their shade cools the neighborhood on hot summer days, which saves electricity and allows people to be more comfortable when they are outside. Additionally, street trees absorb stormwater, which otherwise overwhelms our sewage infrastructure during heavy rainfall. And lastly, trees provide habitat for local wildlife, such as birds, and offer a connection to nature in this densely developed neighborhood. The Ecology Center will also work to increase awareness about environmental issues by providing convenient trap-off locations for food scraps, which we turn into natural fertilizer, compost. This compost will be used to amend street tree beds in the neighborhood, creating a circular, sustainable system.
Thank you. We're at time.
Hello, my name is Antonio, and I also work at the Lower East Side Ecology Center, and I live on 10002, zip code. And I want to share why I support the proposed casino in Times Square. Unlike other proposals that require building large garages and relying heavily on visitors driving to the site, this location makes the most sense because of its unmatched access to public transportation. The site sits directly above the busiest transit hub in New York City, nearly every major subway line, as well as Penn Station, Grand Central, Port Authority, and multiple bus connections with Port Authority, just steps away. This makes it easier for most users to arrive by public transportation rather than placing ad strain on the neighborhoods with limited transit access. So overall, this project encourages sustainable transportation, and it is the most logical choice to ensure people rely on public transit system rather than adding more cars to already congested roads. That's why we're supporting this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I've been waiting a long time to talk to you guys. I, oh, I'm sorry. I've been waiting a long time to talk to you guys. I live 136. I'm a voter. I'm a constituent in this area. And I've lived in this area for ten years. I'm a native New Yorker. So I know about New York. I know about Times Square. I was here in the seventies and eighties. I know how terrible it was. Okay, since the congestion pricing, the traffic has been so much better. I live right on Forty-third Street, across the street from, what is that, Henry Miller Theater? Okay, so when, before that, when the tour buses come in, we can't even get out of our door. Okay, the congestion is so bad. So if the casinos come in, they're talking about they're going to have the transportation. Where are they going to put it? Where are they going to put the transportation? The buses are a block long, damn near. You put two buses in a block, that's a block and a half. Okay, they're cutting off for the crosswalk. I mean, listen, I'm all for entertainment. That's why I live down here. You know, I love this city, born and raised, and I love it. But there comes a point when you overdo things, and this isn't overdue, okay? You know. I got thirty-seven minutes, y'all. What I'm saying is, like I said, and I'm going to reiterate, I love this city, always did. I couldn't wait up. Like, I'm going to be able to work, live in Times Square area, Fabregas it, and it was fine, you know? I mean, I've seen, as other people have said, seen this city and this state go through tremendous changes, Sandy, nine eleven, bombings, all kind of crap. You know, the pandemic. I remember coming to Times Square, and you could yell, and you'd hear echoes like you were in the valley.
Thank you. We're at time. Before we can, before we continue, we can go up to one twenty. So if we can have numbers one oh one to one twenty, come over here. We have enough space to queue for that many, so. Go ahead.
Hello, thank you for your time. Sean McMahon, one zero zero two six. Been working in the entertainment industry for a long time, and it's not just about the entertainment industry. And just on another note, something I wasn't going to speak about, but I see a fellow migrant here at the microphone, reading a script, you know, okay, that's great. She wanted to say something, but, you know, I don't think it's right to be using these people to get, to give a message. You know, they do need work, but they need work that's going to give them some kind of dignity and a decent living wage in New York City. Broadway has proven to do that, and the restaurants and all the other industry that exist already in this area. You know, there's the companies that have been, we, you know, my own union included negotiates with the employers, whether it's Schubert, JuJanson, Unlanders, all of them. But they negotiate with all the different labor groups. Everyone's out for their own, obviously. You know, they're trying to get the best contract they can. So are we. But everybody in the industry is happy with what they got. Yes, we can always get more, and we work for more. Everyone works hard for what they get, but they get a decent, they have a decent living from what they have. I don't know about the casino industry. Like people said, it can go, it can go many different places. That's, that's the first thing. Now, I've lost my train of thought. Anyway, but, you know, I just, it's not right using these people to get our point across. And secondly, sorry, I've totally lost my train of thought. But anyway, it can go anywhere. We, I hope you will just listen to what the people are saying and actually take note that we don't have to be divided. There are many, many places it can go. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chantel Barnett. I reside in area code, I reside in area code one zero four five seven, but I work in area code one zero zero one eight. I am a mom, and as working in a city commuting here every day, I do not feel safe at all. There's plenty of crime within Times Square, and I am in support of this project because I feel it will bring in more police officers. We'll have more CCTV coverage, less crime. I believe it will also bring in jobs for people like me that reside in underserved communities. And I don't see people like me in jobs in Broadway. I could not afford to go to a Broadway show until recently. About eighty percent of the people that I know in my underserved community have never been to a Broadway show because we cannot afford the Broadway shows. So I believe with this new project, it will bring in and generate the jobs for people like me who are low income, who are underserved. And it will just create more safety where my daughter, when she asks, "Can I go to Times Square with my friends?" I can say yes without a problem because I know she will be well protected, unlike now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon to the CAC and the Gaming Facility Location Board. My name is Camille Merriman of zip code one one two one two. And as a former manager for a New York State agency, A Pledge for Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated, Team Rock, the National Action Network, a special effects makeup artist, and a volunteer for the New York City Wine and Food Festival, we cannot sit by and watch the light dim from the heart of our city. I've spoken with local businesses and union members, and we are all excited at the prospect of a project of this, of a prospect, this project this significant in rebounding our struggling industries in this post-pandemic era. What sets our proposal apart from other applications is a multimillion-dollar donation for a civil rights museum to commemorate the fighting spirit of unity that this city is known for globally. It just makes sense to pour back into New York what we know and love. That is why we are asking you to vote yes for Caesar's Palace Times Square, and hopefully we'll see you at breaking ground.
Thank you.
I'd also like to add, as a direct survivor of nine eleven at Ground Zero, the acknowledgement of the applicants of the significance of this day was out of respect, as well as one of our company heads, Ms. Desiree Perez, is still here in attendance, listening to all of your commentary. So they have not left. As well as the theater district is a choice. The light does not only belong to those who have decided to dig their heels in it because the inclusion of this project threatens their predetermined aesthetic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Marisa Redanti. I live in Manhattan Plaza 10036. The S.L. Green Plan, which after much thought and real, real soul-searching, I have supported for three years, is the best plan because operationally, it is the group, the only group listening to the community. This is evidenced by how they crafted their commitments, like the trees. That came from a community leader saying, "Our trees are like our park." And immediately, S.L. Green said, "We're calling the ecological person, the woman, I forgot her name, and we're going to give you all new trees." Not just, it's not a bribe, it's listening, okay? And there were some missteps on the funding. Oh, yes, I'm glad they fixed that about Manhattan Plaza. That was a mistake, but it's fixed. The benefits include a robust security plan, added sanitation, theater tickets to the underserved for Chantel's daughter, job fairs, tree restoration, childcare, micro-investment opportunities, never before have I known about that, motorcycle EMT services, so that when there's ambulances that can't get through, there'll be a motorcycle that's not on the bike path that's going to help people because they have EMT stuff on their backpacks. Job fairs, oh, where am I? Hello. Of course, jobs, a traffic mitigation plan. They will not be engaging bus tours, no buses, okay? They will, they took away the parking lot. They actually looked at the traffic plan, the only applicant that has done so. And a huge amount of direct funding to the community. They're using an existing building away from residential clusters, and the list goes on. And in my view, it's an incredible amount of benefits. Now sadly, and I say this to all of you up there, this community, all of us, have been lacking in any factual information from neutral voices so that every day something new comes out, and nobody understands what the truth-
Thank you. I'm sorry. We're at time.
Greetings, everyone. I'm a firm believer in solutions. And prohibition does not work, never has and never will, because only constant life has changed and the ability to adapt to it. The Sixteenth Amendment to the Constitution put a tax on your personal income, which led to groundwork for the Eighteenth Amendment prohibition. Once you open the casino, it will generate tax revenue, which will reduce the taxation on your personal income to less than ten percent of what is today, and plus provide tax revenue for resources to improve the quality of life in the neighborhoods you live in. I sat on the community planning board for twelve years, also on the school board, and I see how tax revenue is generating where it goes. This is all we talk. It's nothing but business to maintain equality alive. So put the casino there, because people are going to spend money. People want to gamble. People want to get intoxicated. And people definitely go on a funny game. And once you make it illegal, the price goes up and the quality goes down. So when you put the scene there, people are going to spend that money. Because I remember all the after-hours spots, whatever else you had out here, generating throughout the city of New York back in the sixties and early seventies. So we do not want to go back to that. We want to generate this tax revenue and get rid of infraction and corrupt law enforcement, and also reduce tax on personal income.
Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Emerson. I'm a resident of Chelsea 10011, and I'm here to voice my support for the Caesar's Palace Times Square project. Although I have lived in Manhattan for most of my adult life, I grew up in New Orleans. I know not being a native New Yorker may devalue what I have to say to some people in this room. I think my experience is relevant. I have seen firsthand the positive impact Caesars has had on the downtown through Harrah's. It is a safe, vibrant attraction that draws people to the French Quarter and supports surrounding restaurants and businesses, many of which I would never have discovered without the casino there. That experience has kept me coming back again and again, not just as a customer of Caesars, but as a supporter of the community. It helped grow. And I'm saying this as someone who has never gambled. I want to take the subway to a Broadway show and feel safe when I step off. I want to walk around after that show and know that there's security and energy on the streets. Caesars has proven its ability to deliver this kind of transformation, and they can do it again. As a resident of the west side of Manhattan, I urge you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. And just before you start, again, I would invite up to one twenty to make their way around, okay? Go ahead. Thank you.
My name is Carl Clay, and I'm the Director of the Black Spectrum Theater. I love theater, and I love what's been said about all the theaters in New York City. I've spent the rest, I've spent all of my life in the theater, but I want to point out that this is not a yes versus a no issue. This is an and and an and. Remember the key word here, which is, New York is the entertainment capital of the world. And that definition in a 21st century context must include a broader definition of entertainment. I love the theater, but it's not exclusive just to the theater. Also, remember another key word, show, business. If you don't take care of the business, there will be no show. The reality is, is that for Broadway theaters, in order to thrive, they're going to have to deal with the issues of crime and all these other things. I've read the Caesar Plan, and it's one of the best constructed plans that I've ever read. They deal with every angle that has to be dealt with in order to make for a better Times Square. Caesar's Palace has demonstrated a clear commitment to supporting the arts and live performance. They've earned the endorsement of Actors Equity Local 802 and the musicians on Broadway. It will benefit childcare, student debt assistance, medical debt and health, and a monthly jobs fair for workers. It has also recognized the efforts and the support of diverse performances that are produced by African-American theaters within New York City that maybe Broadway has sometimes overlooked. They've partnered with Wendell Pierce, the stage and screen acting, will form the New York Coalition of Legacy Theaters Fund to provide direct support to historic theaters of color, as well as provide-
Thank you. We're at time. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Danny Whitman. I'm the Executive Director of Broadway Cares Equity Fights AIDS. And I also live in Manhattan Plaza in 10036. Here are the top seven reasons, if I can get to them all, a Times Square casino is a horrible idea for Broadway and our residents. Number one, last year Broadway added fifteen billion with a B to the economy, but Broadway runs on tight margins. Change the equation and shows close. This is the only casino proposal that risks cannibalizing an existing, thriving industry. Number two, casinos are designed to keep people inside. You've heard it all day. They're shows, they're hotels. You've heard it all day, their shows, their hotels, their restaurants, their slot machines. If you go out to dinner on a Broadway show, they lose. Three, traffic is choking Times Square. A casino means thousands more cars, Ubers, taxis, and buses clogging the streets. Number four, the project ranks, this project ranks sixth out of eight in proposals for construction and permanent jobs. Six out of eight, Broadway employs 100,000 New Yorkers. Why put those at risk? Number five, other cities believe the same promises of providing employment and improved business to local restaurants and hotels. Boston, Pittsburgh, New Orleans, look it up. Those casinos failed and communities paid the price. Number six, nonprofits are off, were offered millions. Most, including Broadway Cares, said no. You know how hard it is to turn down millions of dollars in this economy? Don't be fooled by the few that took the money in exchange for an endorsement. Number seven, finally, my neighborhood, which I love, almost out of time, like the Tonys, which I love as much and is so vulnerable, elderly, there are more nonprofits, and Section Eight housing supporting hundreds of thousands of our most vulnerable.
Thank you, we're at, we're at time. Thank you, let's keep going. We're at 102. Go ahead. All right, all right, all right.
All right. That is going to be a tough act to follow. Uh, my name is Guy Croll. I live in Manhattan Plaza, 10036. I'm a lifelong New Yorker. I'm a product of the New York City Board of Education. Okay. Positive, positive stories that people have told us. Union jobs, creating jobs. No matter where a casino is built in the city of New York, it's going to be built by union labor, so take that off the table, okay? No matter where they build it in the city, they're going to hire a union label to run it. That's off the table. Let's talk about the owners. Uh, Roc Nation Jay-Z, very successful business person. S.L. Green, successful landlord. Caesar's Casino, if you've ever been to Caesars Casino, I could sit in there in my pajamas and, and gamble. They don't care. If I have a dollar in my pocket, they wanted it in theirs. They prey upon the people that don't have money. New York City Lottery, education, what did that do? Who gambles the most? People who don't have it, because they prey upon these people. Tourist attraction. Atlantic City, when I was young, was a seaside tourist attraction where families would go. You had the beautiful boardwalk. You, you had just a wonderful place. Casinos promise to bring in new life, money, the neighbors, the schools, everything. What happened to Atlantic City? If you've been down there lately, you know it is a barren wasteland. And if you're in a casino, they're not letting you out. They make sure that you can't get out, and they do everything in their power to keep you inside, okay? It's not going to bring money into this neighborhood. Second of all, it's right in the middle of New York. We already have an attraction here. We have several attractions here, okay? Gambling is a vice, which really has to be put someplace where it can be controlled. Anybody can blend in in Times Square and not be seen. So, I mean, I know this is.
Thank you, we're at time. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Ryan, and I've been, and I've been proud to call Chelsea, zip code 10010, my home for the past seven years. I have been here and listened to a very vocal minority who has a big stage. I have no doubt they sincerely believe it, but we have to look at the broadest community. We have to help the most undeserved. Those most in need and in the absence of this project, I do not see how we help these people. The small businesses, the restaurants, the hotels, the retailers, the residents. Tourism is dropping, visas are impossible, we need stimulus. Don't deprive this community of their opportunity. Do you want to be the person who voted against growth and development? This project is for the community. It is a public and private partnership by locals. Don't be intimidated by the minority with a big stage who are scared and want to live small. This is a very exciting possibility. Support Caesar's Palace Times Square.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, please. All right.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Lowery, 10036, and I want to say thank you to the Community Advisory Board, because community is the word I want to emphasize. Broadway has a thriving, wonderful, giving, um, and very diverse community. And whenever, uh, New York has needed healing, Broadway has been there. When HIV popped up, so did Broadway Cares Equity Fights AIDS. As, as soon as the, we were able to open up from the pandemic, audiences flocked to Broadway's for that kind of healing that Vian Cox talked about. It's a communal experience you don't get in a casino unless it's with your blackjack dealer or roulette wheel. Broadway is special, and it takes, if you're as old as I, and you'll remember those Broadway commercials of I Love New York with the chorus line dancers and all of the many performers. That's because that logo of I Heart New York, Broadway is that heart. Uh, it takes years to make a Broadway show. It, it is not fast money. Art is not fast money. A casino, once it's opened, is fast money, and that's why people like Caesar's Palace like it. Fine. We do, we, we take time to make art here, and, you know, it is worth it. Look at the Hollywood movies that have come from Broadway shows. Broadway feeds Hollywood, just as it feeds us. Wicked being the latest example. So please, Broadway is the goose that lays the golden egg. Don't smother the goose. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Artith Holmgren. I live in 10036, and I'm a resident of Manhattan Plaza for 23 years. I'm also American, a member of the American Federation of Musicians since 1978. I oppose the construction of Caesar Palace Times Square. As a musician, I have performed in many casinos nationally and have witnessed how casinos attract prostitution, increase crime in the surrounding neighborhood, and ruin local businesses. Times Square serves as a social hub for our high school students in this neighborhood. Public Elementary School 212, the LaSalle Academy, and the Success Academy are located near Times Square, and those kids will be exposed to the undesirable clientele of the casino, as well as the temptations to enter the casino. Fifty-seven percent of Manhattan Plaza residents are senior citizens living on limited income. A neighborhood casino would create an incentive for them to take the risks in the hopes of winning potentially leading them to financial ruin. Additionally, unattainable street congestion is already documented, and our sidewalks are dangerous due to the presence of cyclists and scooters. There is simply no more room on the sidewalks or on the streets. To my elected representatives, please vote against the construction of Caesar Palace in Times Square and any casino in zip code 10036.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Uh, I'd like to thank everybody on, on the board here on the commission for being here. I really appreciate that you're listening to us. Thank you very much. Um, my name is John Kelly. Uh, I live in Midtown. My zip code is 10019. I'm a stagehand and a musician, and a proud member of both Local Number One and Local 802. I speak today as a resident of the area and as a member of the Broadway community. I worked for 35 years on Broadway, just retired recently. When I started working here, and 30 years ago, there used to be two beat cups on every block, and you could walk out of your stage door and see a cop and be there. If, uh, if Commissioner Bratton was still here, I would tell him how disingenuous I think it is for him to say that a casino and its security force will make the area safer and response times better. Um, what will make the area safer is a mayor and an NYPD commissioner and leadership that will restore beat cups to the neighborhood. And, and NYPD being there. Now, just like the promise that gambling was going to revitalize Atlantic City in the seventies, it didn't. And state lotteries were going to increase funding for education. It didn't. It actually lowered some of the public money. The idea that a Times Square casino will greatly improve social services is a smokescreen. Um, despite the fact that I am certainly all for new projects and opportunities for our other union brothers, especially in construction, I stand by them and for them and with them. Uh, a casino in Times Square is not the answer. I implore you, please vote no.
Hello, my name is Noah Sasse, zip code 123. I'm not going to stand here and pretend I've lived in New York my whole life. I've lived in Lincoln Square for two years, and I commute to Times Square every day. You don't have to live in New York your whole life, though, to know what Times Square is and what it isn't. And that's why I believe a casino belongs here.
Yep.
Because if a casino is coming to the city, let's be honest, Times Square is the only place that it makes sense. Put it everywhere, anywhere else, and you're displacing what could be future affordable housing. Put it anywhere else, and you're chasing short term gains that will eventually erode other communities. But Times Square, it's already a commercial hub. It's already a 24/7 entertainment district. It's built for it. So let's make the common sense choice. Let's put the casino where it belongs, where it fits right in, and where it doesn't touch the homes of everyday New Yorkers, and where it can actually work for the city instead of against it.
Hey, 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 hey. Thank you. Have, hey, let's, hey, folks, let's come to order. We're not going to do that. Come on, folks, over here. Come on. Let's keep going.
Hello, my name's Sean Murray, 10001. Obviously, I can't compete with that great speech beforehand or repeat the same things. I'm here to support the casino and S.L. Green. I, I've been in construction business for 30 years in Manhattan. Um, S.L. Green is a fantastic operator. The building that they have here is, is ready to go, as different than a lot of the other proposals, which would take years. So I'm just here to support S.L. Green and this project in this facility, and appreciate the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. At number.
Hi, so my name is Matt. I recently just moved from Manhattan into Brooklyn, 11211, and I am in support of the casino because of all the, uh, the jobs and opportunities it'll create for the union and the blue collar workers, being that I'm in the construction industry. And I also think it's an exciting new venture that the city doesn't have. Uh, the increased foot traffic, I'm not sure how that would be a bad thing for local businesses. Um, and casinos are usually pretty safe and secure, because, uh, given their, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Large sums of money that they're dealing with. So I think, uh, the, the surrounding area could benefit from the increased security measures.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Greg Lannos. I'm a New York City resident. I'm the supporter of the Caesar's Palace Times Square Casino. The, I'm sorry about that. The immediate positive impact of the thousands of jobs that the construction of the casino will create is a positive impact, including the jobs it's going to create to operate the casino. There will be a positive investment in security infrastructure within Times Square, which benefits all local and visitors. I know the casino will be mutually beneficial for the entire Times Square area. More visitors means more shopping, more eating, and more people seeing Broadway shows. Thank you.
Thank you. We're at number, what? Sorry, can I get a number, number check? Which one we're on? 115.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Michelle Medalia, and I live and work in New York City, zip code 10018. My family and I love the theater. My family and I love casinos. I have a little bit of a unique take on this whole thing. I actually grew up going to casinos with my family. Um, we would go with their, I'd go with my parents, their friends, other family members. We would go as groups. It wasn't the only thing that we went for, but we did enjoy going to casinos. My father taught me how to play craps before I learned algebra in school. Not a bad thing, I did very well in math, but, um, you know, there was just something about it that it was fun. There was, there was collaboration. It just, you know, there was just so much to do, and, and, and actually watching the game. You know, being at the table, kind of as a female. I was at the table before I knew being at the table as a female was a thing. Um, we had a good time, and even those people in the group that didn't play, there was so much for them to do. Even watching is really fun, and we learned a lot. For me, I learned the importance of strategy. I learned how to control reactions. And most importantly, I learned to always keep my eyes on my money. The opposite, I learned to value it and control it. A casino in Times Square, I understand. I feel.
Thank you, we're at time. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Liz Keefe, and I've been living in the 10036 zip code for 37 years. And for 25 years, my husband and I ran an off-off Broadway theater company right on the corner of 46th and 7th Avenue. And I also want to mention that I am a proud resident of Manhattan Plaza, and many of us in that community have helped shape and contribute to the Broadway area that it is today. Um, I just want to say that people don't come to Times Square or New York City for a casino. They come here for Broadway and the arts. It is a beacon on the hill, and we have to keep that very unique, special flavor that we have here. I'd also like to point out that I am a former Local Six member. I worked for that union for 33 years, so I am very pro-union. I just think that a union, uh, I mean, excuse me, a casino in any other place other than Hell's Kitchen will still create union jobs. So please give it to a neighborhood that actually needs an economic boost. What I and many other residents of my community in Manhattan Plaza are chiefly concerned with is quality of life, meaning we want less congestion, less noise, and the ability to walk on the sidewalk without it being mobbed by the thousands of people that a casino will bring in. Putting a casino in what is perhaps the most congested area of Manhattan is a ludicrous idea. The millions of dollars that they have promised this neighborhood cannot take away the congestion. Even with congestion pricing, the street infrastructure is still, can barely accommodate the current pedestrian, bike, and car traffic. And so we, the people that actually live here, will bear the brunt of that chaos that it will create. And let's not forget that the Port Authority project has not even, um.
Thank you, we're at time.
Thank you.
So if we could have numbers 120 to 135, please make their way around to queue to speak. And you can go ahead.
Hello, everyone. My name is Julio Peterson. I'm a native New Yorker. I'm currently serve as the Vice President of Real Estate for the Schubert Organization. I have, I have over 35 years of experience in economic and real estate development in New York City, including working for the New York City Economic Development Corporation and the New York City Housing Partnership, where I oversaw commercial projects and affordable housing developments in the poorest neighborhoods in New York, including Harlem, Bed-Stuy, the South Bronx, all around the city. I'm in opposition to this casino in Times Square. The proposed, the proposed casino is merely an effort by the developer to address their concern regarding their high vacancy rates to some of their office properties in the area. The economic benefits to the city as it relates to the proposed casino in Times Square should be highly weighed against the economic benefits of those other proposed casinos in New York City. The casino doesn't provide any affordable housing in the area or nor any other physical improvements to benefit the surrounding community. In addition, some of the other proposals provide more construction, permanent jobs for hardworking New Yorkers. The patrons of casino will solely be expending monies within the casino. The patrons of casino will solely be expending monies within the casino, building and dollars will not circulate throughout the district or New York City in general. Caesars and the development team has made numerous financial promises and gestures to buy the support of constituent groups and organizations in the neighborhood. As we have seen in the past, developers have made promises to communities and failed to deliver on them. Case in point, the Barclay Center Development Project, with all due respect to Jay-Z, where the developer and Jay-Z were partners, and they promised affordable housing on properties adjacent to the arena, and the affordable housing has yet to be built, leading the community to question the sincerity of the development team. In conclusion, there have been significant findings that Caesars Palace in Las Vegas, known as the main hub for prostitution for over 25 years, is referenced by numerous Las Vegas law enforcement officials. The casino...
Thank you. We're at time. Thank you.
You gonna bring it over?
Yeah.
Might be stuck down.
Hello, my name is Helen Toth. I have lived and worked in Hell's Kitchen since 1978, zip code 10019. I'm a member of IATSE Theatrical Local 764 and 829. So you see, I know how hard... Sorry. So I know firsthand that growth is necessary to a successful, thriving community in which to live and work. I certainly can attest that I am not opposed to either. However, from where I sit, I can tell you that allowing a casino to be built in this neighborhood will provide neither positive growth nor positive change. I know a casino will negatively impact services from FDNY, NYPD, EMS, sanitation, all paid for with our tax dollars. I'm sure casino will get tax breaks, and that fiscal impact will further impact those already stressed services that'll trickle down and be passed along to the public and the residents here. This already is a tough and expensive neighborhood to manage. We cannot afford more stress or compromise on those expenses. Today is 9/11, a significant day in the history of this city. How many of you have been present in the bull's eye known as the crossroads of America and have tried to navigate getting through it during a terrorist attack, a blackout, a riot, a demonstration, a jet landing in the Hudson River, or New Year's Eve? I have. And if you have, you know the chaos I'm referring to. Adding to the volume of people that a casino will bring here is grossly out of touch with the reality of this location. We cannot afford seen or unseen crimes to research.
Thank you. We're at time.
Hi, my name is Tiara Bluestone. I live in 10011. How... I have a quick question. I know you guys are tired, but how does a free white food truck not help the community? How do hundreds of millions in new tax revenue funding New York City schools, housing, and transit not help the city? We're talking about a smarter use of space that's already zoned for commercial entertainment, energizing the local economy, creating union jobs, and opening doors for local artists and musicians. Why should just a few Broadway performers own the spotlight when there are millions of equally talented artists waiting for their chance to perform? When the first theater opened on Broadway... Shut up! When the first theater opened on Broadway, it didn't shut the door behind it. More theaters came, and together, they made Broadway what it is today. Let's do the same now. Let's build something that supports all the creative people who make New York, New York. I fully support the Times Square Casino. Thank you.
Let's keep going.
Thank you. My name is Marcus Jackson. I'm the Manager of Advocacy, Community, and Government Relations at Encore Community Services, one of the leading organizations servicing older adults in this 10036 community. And I and my organization says no to the Times Square Casino. I had escorted a group of older adults to participate in today's hearing, but the venue was too cold and the wait was too long, so I'm gonna just go off for them. I was at Scandinavia Hall, and I mentioned then, and I'm mentioning it now. I don't know what community resources that SL Green, Roc Nation, and Caesars Palace reached out to, but as the community organizer for Encore Community Services, I did not get reached out to, and Encore did not get reached out to. And as far as I'm concerned, none of our community-based organization partners got reached out to for this community, 10036, and the people that live here. I don't even know if the older adults know that this is going on. So that's a whole nother thing. And I'd be remiss to mention that Roc Nation promised to build low-income housing before when the Barclay Center was being built, and we have yet to see that housing. So why would I believe that they're gonna promise and deliver on their promises now? I just don't see it happening. And lastly, for any city or state-elected official considering a congressional run, I strongly recommend you listen in to your constituents in this meeting because we're telling you exactly what we don't want. And honestly, if you think you're gonna have a future in politics, you should be considering what your constituents right now is telling you, what they want in their community. That's my time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Folks, let's come to order. Let's keep going.
That was hard to follow. My name is Raven Graves. I work at Encore Community Services in 10036 and 10019. I stand here today, not just as an advocate, but as a neighbor. In Midtown Times Square and the Theater District, our older adults, our members, aunties, grandmas, fathers, and grandfathers have built lives rooted in resilience, routine, and community. A casino threatens all of that. It's not just flashing lights of promises of entertainment. It's depression maxed as distraction. It's social isolation deepened by addiction. It's alcohol and gambling marketed to those on fixed incomes. And yes, it's eviction when rent money becomes roulette chips. We must ask ourselves, if this were our own mother and our own grandfather, would we want temptation and risk planted at their doorstep? The older adults in our building are spoken. They feel unseen, unheard, and at risk. Let's not trade their safety for profit. Let's choose dignity over danger. Let's protect the soul of our community. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is Matthew McMorro. I live in 11215. But I'm here today as a proud member of the Board of Directors of Callan Lord Community Health Center, 10011. Callan Lord has been providing a high-quality, affirming health care to LGBTQ New Yorkers since the days of Stonewall. We now serve more than 22,000 patients every year, most of whom are people of color and the majority of whom are covered by Medicaid. For many of our patients, we are their only option for care. We fill a vital role in New York State's healthcare system, especially those who too often are overlooked or left behind. Today, I wanted to speak about the critical need for expanded healthcare access in Hell's Kitchen, a neighborhood where many of our community live, work, and socialize. Despite operating these three centers across the city, Callan Lord currently has no footprint in Hell's Kitchen. This is a major gap, especially at a time when HIV rates and sexually transmitted diseases are at a 30-year-high, disproportionately affecting Black and Latino, gay, and bisexual men and transgender women. That's why the $5 million investment from Caesars Palace Times Square is so transformative. It will allow us to build a 20,000-square-foot sexual health and wellness center in the heart of Hell's Kitchen. We'll be able to provide same-day HIV and STI testing with lab results in an hour, expand access to PrEP and PEP, and open a full-service pharmacy so people can get tested, diagnosed, and treated all in one visit. Now, as somebody who has worked in city and state government for over a decade, I can tell you that partnerships like this make a difference. They're essential. Government funding, especially federal funding, is rapidly shrinking, while demand for healthcare is rapidly rising. Caesars' commitment isn't just about entertainment, it's about public health and community investment. I urge you to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nicole Witt. I live in zip code 10022. I live in Midtown. I work in Midtown. Because of my job and my spouse's job, I'll likely be here for the rest of forever. So what's important to me is a project like Caesars Palace in Times Square, because I think it's gonna bring a lot of jobs, it's gonna bring a lot of livelihood to Times Square. I think it's important for our city as a whole. And quite frankly, I can't even understand where else it would go. It's an existing office building in a commercial district. Like, it's the only place that really makes sense to me, that's really logical. So I fully support the project. I think it's gonna bring a lot of good to the city. And as someone who's gonna be here for the foreseeable future, I think it's an important project that everyone should vote yes for.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Frank Gallagher. I have worked for Theatrical Wardrobe Union Local 764 in Hell's Kitchen and Times Square area for 23 years. I oppose this building of this casino. First, I want to say to the person who implied that the people who are speaking against the casino are being paid to be here. We've seen this from our current president, where you accuse the other side of doing exactly what you do. So that's not new. And I would also like to point out that there were plenty of IATSE members who were downtown on 9/11, helping to clean up for weeks after the tragedy. So it's not just one group of people that have that. To people who say the casino will generate more tourism, have you been in Times Square on the weekends or at night? It's like, there's no more room for more tourism. I don't think tourism has been a problem in Times Square at all. Also, why do we think Times Square needs to be all things to all people? Like, Times Square is about Broadway, theaters, restaurant. It's not about gambling and casinos. They could go someplace else. And I also have to laugh when we're told that this should not be discussed here amongst the community board and the residents and workers of this district, that this should be decided by Albany between realtors and politicians. I don't understand that. Anyway, I say no to the casino in Times Square. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Hello, my name is Ahad Shahid, and I'm the Communications Director for United Scenic Artists, Local USA 829, IATSE. I'm here today to speak out against the proposed Times Square Casino because of the very real economic harm that it would do to Broadway theaters, the designers who bring productions to life, and the local businesses that make this neighborhood thrive. Casinos by design are meant to keep visitors inside its doors, and the audiences drawn to the casino would spend less time in Broadway theaters, restaurants, shops, and directly divert money away from the very businesses and workers who make the theater district vibrant: designers, assistants, actors, carpenters, stagehands, and more. All of them rely on thriving shows and consistent audiences, which would be put at risk, along with thousands of jobs that surround Broadway, 100,000. A casino in Times Square would pull visitors away, threatening decades of investment into this community and the livelihood of workers who dedicate their lives to the arts. We've seen firsthand the recovery of the theater district after the pandemic. It's been hard fought and hard won, and this project would undermine that progress, when this project could easily go somewhere else. I urge you all to stand with the creative workers, the theaters, and the businesses that sustain the neighborhood. Please vote no on Times Square Casino. To protect the economic, cultural, and artistic heart of New York City. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alice Connerton. I live in 10014, and I'm an Equity Member. SL Green is not just asking people to gamble in their casinos, they're asking all of us to gamble. They're asking us to gamble that they will, in fact, give all money that they promised to various programs, to various communities. They're asking us to gamble that the streets won't get more congested. They're asking us to gamble that crime will go down instead of up. And when you gamble, the house always wins. Please vote no!
Great. Good afternoon, my name is Amber Nicosia. I have worked in Times Square and I've also served on the local community board. The main purpose of the casino is to revitalize the economy of the city and the state. And the Times Square project, of all the proposals, will be repurposing an existing building in a tourist and entertainment zone that will have the least impact on the residents that live in the community. We reached out, we had concerns, we spoke to SL Green and Roc, and they listened to us, and they amended the proposal to be able to accommodate more programs and services for our community: for homeless and mental health outreach, youth, art and music programs, daycare, after-school, sanitation, security, even a civil rights museum. So at a time when the government funding to this community is shrinking and these necessities are being lost, this project would generate billions for our local economy, guarantee a quarter of a billion dollars in a community investment, and a portion of the casino profits would flow through Hudson Guild every year. This one business could not only do more to revitalize Times Square, but it would serve the needs of tens of thousands of residents on the West Side. This proposal is an investment in Times Square, Midtown South, Hell's Kitchen, and Chelsea. Please support your constituents. Vote for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's have order, folks.
A good evening. My name is Sid Solomon, and I'm opposed to the Times Square Casino. I live in 10025 for more than five years and 1,400 performances I appeared in the play That Goes Wrong, a long-running off-Broadway show on 50th Street between 8th and 9th Avenues. Next week, I will become a 15-year member of Actors Equity Association. I am also on staff at United Scenic Artists, Local USA 829 of the IATSE. We represent more than 5,000 workers, including designers, assistant designers, and scenic artists working on Broadway. Simply put, the business model of a casino is well-known. It is well-established. It is universal. It is to keep people inside. You gamble in the casino. You eat in the casino. You shop in the casino. You are entertained in the casino. No matter where the downstate casinos go, and they are coming, they should create good-paying union jobs, both for the people who build them and who work there. And I am so thrilled to be in a room filled with union members, and I am certain that we all agree that those downstate casinos must be union casinos. However, a Times Square casino will endanger thousands of existing good-paying union jobs. The last thing I'll say is this, and I mean this sincerely: be mindful of your own legacies and those of the people that you represent. Some truly terrible decisions have been made in this city. The tearing down of Penn Station, the Cross Bronx Expressway, locks on a cinnamon raisin bagel. In five, or 10, or 15 years, you do not want to be able to draw a straight line from you and the people you represent to the demise of Broadway. I cannot imagine a more ignoble legacy to leave as leaders of this city. Finally, thank you for your time and for your patience. Thank you to our incredible interpreters. Thank you to the house staff and the ushers here. Thank you to all of the workers who have shown up. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sandy Phillips, and I live in zip code 10044. I'm a business representative for United Scenic Artists, Local USA 829, that's a local of IATSE. We represent the scenic, costume, lighting, sound, and projection designers who design the magic of Broadway shows, as well as the scenic artists who paint them and bring those designs to life. I'm also a scenic artist myself, and I came here to New York with the dream of painting Broadway shows, and it's been the highlight of my career to get to work on Broadway. And I can tell you, as both a scenic artist, member of our union, and as a union representative, I've seen firsthand how many livelihoods depend on Broadway's success. For that reason, I want to be clear: I strongly oppose building a casino in Times Square. For that reason, I want to be clear, I strongly oppose building a casino in Times Square. Over a hundred thousand workers in New York, like myself and the artisan crafts people we represent depend on Broadway's success. Their livelihoods are tied directly to the audiences who fill our theaters and to the businesses that surround them. A casino would threaten that ecosystem. Broadway is an engine of cultural and economic vitality for the entire city. The area has rebounded strongly after the pandemic and the last thing we need is a casino project that would undermine that fragile economy. I urge you to protect Broadway's future by voting no on a Times Square Casino. Thank you.
Thank you. Just before you begin, if we could have one thirty six to, uh, one, one forty, sorry. Okay, sorry. One forty to one fifty five can come around to the other side to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Lori Farren and I work as a part of the Broadway industry and also am a lifelong theater lover. Um, I have lived in New York City for 17 years and I work here in the one zero zero three six zip code. I am strongly against a casino, which would be detrimental and devastating to the Broadway industry. I urge you to vote no. A casino can go any place. I know there's a lot of other locations being considered, but Broadway can only live here. And this would destroy our very beautiful ecosystem here. And I work very many late nights. Um, it's often very many late nights and, um, as someone that goes to the theater a lot. Um, when we're leaving the theater, there are hordes and hordes of crowds and just having a casino here would just add to the chaos of having even more people on the streets. And it would just make the area very, very unsafe. So I urge you again, please to vote no. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Henry Tavares. My zip code is one zero four seven three. I am the business represent, uh, I vote yes for the casino. I'm a, I'm a proud represent, uh, business representative for local one thirty seven. The, the women and the men behind the signs throughout Times Square is who I represent. We installed all the LED screens, the New Year's ball, um, the static billboards, the Coca-Cola sign. The Broadway billboards that are on the roof for the Broadway shows. I've been in the business for over 15 years, 12 years in Times Square. Um, erecting signs, um, over the past couple of years. I just, I just got this job as a business representative, but over the past couple of years, I always drove the trucks and I always worked on the signs throughout Times Square. I've noticed a lot of, uh, chaos. Um, I've seen multiple incidents of crimes, gang related, usually at night though. And I think that bringing this casino in, it will bring a, a more of a presence and, and it's going to make the city a little safer. Safer than what it is now. Uh, the other thing I would like to state is not only the jobs, it's everybody. It's an influx of income. It's an influx of taxes. It's going to benefit the community, uh, and it's going to benefit the town. And one more time, I do vote yes for this project and.
Folks.
Oh, wait, one more thing. We're worrying about traffic. I actually parked my car in Queens and I took the train over here because I am not going to be pumping brakes for 45 minutes. All right. Thank you, guys. Have a great one.
Thank you. That's, come on, we're, we're going to keep going.
Hey, Nick Mayo, live one zero zero two four, uh, paycheck comes from one zero zero three six. I'm a member of Actors Equity and I've worked in Times Square for almost 20 years. I'm a big Broadway full out no to this casino in Times Square. An eight show a week, never call out no to this proposal. That being said. This is a time of great division. It's a time of them and us, and I'm always curious. We're all feeling the pain at any moment around family breakfast tables and college reunions of this division, this pain of them and us. We're experiencing it here today. So it always keeps me curious, where do we align? You know what I love? I love a casino. I love creating new jobs. I love money. I love commerce. And I even love disruptive city planning when it's a good for all. That's not this situation. So let's go back a little bit. I'm from a Broadway family and I'm from a casino family. I'm talking about the casino family that's picked up at the airport and taken to the hotel and has all the things and fly to the Grand Canyon and land at the Grand Canyon. They want to keep you there and anyone who says otherwise is disingenuous. The goal is get you there, spend your money. So why would we think that Caesar, Caesar, um, you know, like would do something different here in Times Square? This, this rhetoric, and I was lucky enough to be here earlier this morning when they presented their 30 minute plan. On how it's not all the things that everyone in casino management knows it to be. We're not going to keep them inside. We want to encourage a greater, that's not the case. How did Vegas deal with Broadway? How did Broadway deal with Vegas? I saw those shows. I saw people go, you know, I, I would love for the melding of two worlds. My family, this Broadway family would have loved for nothing more. I can sit at the casino and see Broadway. But you go and see it and it never works. There's danger that this brings, there's peril that it brings, and I'm happy to say no.
We're at time.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Cardillo. I work at one zero zero three six. I'm here today as a member of the Broadway community, as someone who has worked in Times Square for 14 years. And as a mother of a nine year old who loves this neighborhood as much as I do. We come to Times Square for the magic of live theater, to be inspired, to connect, to feel part of something bigger. It is a place where stories come alive and dreams feel possible. A casino threatens all of that. A casino doesn't complement this district. It competes with it. It's a business model, as everyone has said, is based on keeping people inside. Inside its hotel, its restaurants and its private theater. That means fewer visitors to the local shops, restaurants and world-class Broadway theaters that make this neighborhood. A global cultural icon. A casino in Times Square forces our favorite restaurants, stores and theaters to close. That means people lose jobs and their livelihoods. You do not want to be responsible for that. I know and you know, Times Square is already bursting at the seams. The developers say their so-called improvements will make the area less congested. But tell me, where has a hundred and 50,000 square foot casino and nearly a thousand hotel rooms? Ever made a neighborhood less congested? What troubled me most is the developer's approach. Their so-called community support comes with strings attached. If they truly cared and if this project truly benefited this neighborhood, they wouldn't need to buy endorsements. You are the guardians of the city's future. Vote no.
We're at time. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. When people think of the heart of New York City, Times Square is one of the finest places that comes to mind. Bright lights, big energy and forgettable experiences. And right at the center of that excitement is Caesar's Palace Times Square. It's bringing something truly special to the neighborhood. This isn't just a casino. It's a world-class destination that blends luxury, entertainment and hospitality. Caesar's Palace Times Square offers visitors the chance to enjoy the fine dining, live shows and nightlife under one roof. While also contributing to the city's economic and creating thousands of jobs for New Yorkers. Beyond entertainment, Caesar's has a long tradition of community partnerships and responsible gaming. The new location is designed to be more than a venue. It is a gathering place that enhances Times Square, giving local and tourists another reason to come, stay and enjoy. The most exciting is the ripple effect. Our vibrant Caesar's Palace Times Square doesn't just benefit the building itself. It boosts nearby restaurants, theaters, shops and hotels, keeping the energy of New York alive 24/7. In short, Caesar's Palace Times Square celebrates the best of what the city is all about. Ambition, excitement, the possibilities, and it's just not a place to visit. It's an experience that shines as bright as the lights around it. Thank you very much. I'm Yvette Maddox. I'm from one one two three three.
Thank you. Hey, 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 folks, we're going to come to order. This is a public hearing. We're hearing from both sides. It is not appropriate to boo someone you don't agree with after they speak. It is not appropriate.
Thank you, call. My name is John Connolly. I'm a member of local three I B W. I just celebrated my 40th anniversary on March 1st. Um, I live near area code one zero zero one one. During the course of my career, I've been on several different projects in the Times Square area. And when it first, uh, when I first knew about Times Square, it was a hellhole. The redevelopment of Times Square brought back, uh, office buildings, restaurant shops. And brought back the influx of people that do attend Broadway shows. Now, as a member of local three at the, at the twilight of my career. It is my opportunity to pass along what I know about this business and how it brings up people from the lower class. Uh, in our industry, uh, excuse me, in, in society, and it's a pathway to middle class. Our apprenticeship programs throughout all the building trades, bring people in, teach them a trade without having to have the expense of a college education. And it makes them productive members of society. This project will also provide plenty of opportunities in the entertainment, hospitality, restaurant. And people that work in the casinos itself proper, and I think it's a, it's a must. Uh, it's a win-win situation for the city. And it'll also believe in my honest opinion, it will bring, uh, people to go see Broadway shows. So thank you very much for your time.
Hi, my name is Dale. I've lived in this area in one zero zero one one. Thank you.
Thanks.
For, mm, 50 years. I raised my son here. He goes to college in Times Square at Tuero. I have heard people say that this casino is a bad idea because. It would hurt people who are addicted to gambling and people who use prostitution, who are addicted to sex. We have programs all over the city to help addiction. I, I don't think that's a, a valid reason not to have the casino that's going to bring money in for us. And safety in terms of police. It doesn't make any sense to me. So I am definitely for the casino. I think it would be great. And I don't want to repeat anything that other people said, so I will stop now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, or should I say good evening? For those of you who don't know me, God bless you, but I'm Ruby Rims and I'm one of New York's oldest drag queens. Ah, save your hands, you're in for later. Um, I'm here just to speak my opinion, which we're all entitled to in this world. I live at, the way I live at Manhattan Plaza at one oh oh three six. And here just to state my opinion. I believe that Caesar's Casino will be, should be permitted. Some people, some, it will bring, as you've heard, it will bring lots of jobs in New York City. I know people say it's going to cause a lot of traffic. I'm sorry, but it's Times Square. Let's be real. There's always going to be traffic. I've heard many people say, I'm sorry, uh. I've heard many people say it will affect the vulnerable. Well, the state makes billions of dollars from the, from lottery. If you want to gamble, you're going to gamble. I've heard throughout the years, many people say. I'm sorry, I've heard many people, many say there should be more jails. There should be more hospitals. There should be more schools. There should be more mental institutions to help people that are on the street. But there's always that five word sentence, but not in my neighborhood. Then where? Last but not least. I've heard a lot of people say here today.
I'm sorry, we're at time, we're at time. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dennis Hickey, uh, president of a company that calls Times Square home. We build the large format LED displays that you see in Times Square and throughout this neighborhood. And yes, I'm in full support of Caesar Palace Times Square. I'm a New Yorker, born and raised in a family culture that loves New York, its people, its promise. And of course, the Yankees and Broadway shows. I too have two daughters that were born right here in Manhattan. I've been working in Times Square for most of my childhood, more than 25 years. I lived through nine 11 and have sadness and sympathy for all those impacted for that, uh, 24 years ago. I've had the pleasure of working with S L Green on multiple projects over the years. And together we were the first to create massive video experiences at so many locations in, in and around Times Square. We both were part of the incredible transformation of this area, starting in the late nineties. That resulted in all the impressive signage and large video displays that you see on TV, movies and pop-up culture. More than any other place in the United States. We opened up our headquarters in 1500 Broadway and we stare at 1515 Broadway. Caesar Palace Times Square is a clear choice for gaming and entertainment destination here in New York. The casino and hotel development will blend seamlessly into the help, uh, and enhance the identity and the character of the neighborhood. As a well-established entertainment district, Times Square is the perfect location for the infrastructure needed to handle this destination. Unlike other proposals, Caesar Palace Times Square will not displace critical housing opportunities for our city. Or be jammed within existing and vibrant residential neighborhoods. The team behind Caesar Palace Times Square has spent the last four years meeting with the community and incorporating the feedback they received in a comprehensive proposal. This will increase and enhance the Broadway shows. This will bring more people to the Broadway shows, which will increase the price of Broadway shows, which will give more money to the actors in Broadway shows. This is all what it's about. I don't understand the business differences on this because it is a business, but we all work in business. You gotta make more money. So again, I endorse this Caesar Palace.
Uh, before our next speaker, one fifty five through one seventy should make their way around to speak.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for, uh, allowing us this opportunity. My name is Patrick Dooley. Um, I live, uh, in one zero zero two three. Uh, my office is directly across the street here from the Broadhurst. I work for AMA Electric Signs and we maintain a lot of the digital displays that you see in Times Square. I have been working in Times Square personally for 37 years and I have seen the evolution of it. I am also a huge supporter of Broadway. I had, it took every opportunity to have each of my four daughters, uh, attend Broadway shows. We've literally attended, uh, well over 50 Broadway shows and, um. It is something that I don't think that the Broadway community should be afraid of. I don't think, I think the Broadway community has withstood world wars. Uh, depression, it has, um, it has, uh, the, the sixties and the seventies when these neighborhoods were, uh, less than grand. Broadway stood true and it maintained its, uh, character and its infrastructure. And it should be applauded for being a critical part to allowing Times Square to grow as it has. The time for diversity within Times Square into other markets is now. If we don't grow, we die. So let's take the opportunity to open ourselves up. Let's embrace this Times Square Casino project. Let's look at it for what it is, and it gives opportunity for people that are going to come to New York City, maybe for the casino. But when they do come for the casino, they may see a Broadway show and they may become a Broadway actor or actress or stagehand. and they may become a Broadway actor or actress or stagehand or a lighting, whatever it is. It's available to them, and we applaud them, and we support the casino. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Desneys Colby. I'm a native Manhattanite, born and raised in Lower East Side. I work in the Broadway community at Broadway Cares Equity Fights AIDS, and I live and raise a child in zip code a thousand and one. I am against the Times Square Casino. A casino would harm not just the Broadway community, but the vulnerable communities just steps away from the proposed Caesar's doors. Casinos profit when people lose. Their industry thrives on targeting those who can least afford to lose. When the news rolled in of multimillion-dollar donation offers to organizations serving vulnerable people, it felt predatory. Those offers were in generosity. They were calculated investments, hoping to secure endorsements and customers for life. As a marketer, I know ads just don't show up randomly. Developers are deliberately targeting communities most likely to experience struggles with poverty, addiction, and systemic neglect. Overwhelmingly, those communities are made up of people of color, like myself. I've spoken to white neighbors and colleagues who've never saw these ads, while my feed was full of them. That's not random, that's exploitation. The campaign for the spin and sink model feeds on false hope and despair simultaneously. Now that is commitment. Their tactic speaks volumes. If this is how my people are exploited before its existence, imagine the impact once they're here. A business built on desperation will not do right for those who are the vital backbones of Times Square. I do not want another museum. That is a Band-Aid. I want real systemic change. Saying yes means we are complicit in exploiting at-risk populations, our friends and neighbors who make up this community. That is not a business I trust nor want representing the area, this borough, or what it means to be a New Yorker. Please say no to Times Square Casino.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, good, good evening. Uh, my name is Pat Mullen, 10038. Uh, thank you for having me here today. For the record, I am in, uh, I am in support of the Caesar's Palace Casino here. Throughout the course of my time in New York City, I've worked in Times Square for some thirty-one years. I can tell you that I've been there since Mayor, uh, since, uh, Mr. Bratton was the chief commissioner. I can tell you that when I first came into Times Square, the area was in very bad condition. The conversation at that time was that Disney was coming in and corporate America was taking over. I believe the Durst Organization at that time was the real estate company of choice. Those things were met with stiff, stiff opposition. It moved forward and absolutely changed that entire area. I was originally at two twenty West Forty-second Street. That building went under a major renovation. Preservationist groups jumped in. They decided to move buildings intact down the street, one of the most incredible engineering feats I've ever seen. I wound up moving to five seventy-seventh Avenue in the fifteenth floor. I had a bird's eye view for the next twenty years of the change that took place in this, in this area. It is a tremendous area. Broadway is absolutely the number one thing in New York, in Times Square. I'm not against it. I think when you look at what the opportunity is here, gambling is coming to New York. And it is gonna come, and there is gonna be money made off of it. There is gonna be revenues involved. I think right now, the most important thing that we can possibly do is come up with the requirements for people to be in Broadway, to be part of Times Square. What does that partnership look like? The city, the residents, the owners, the real estate landlords, working in conjunction with each other to bring on change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. As operations lead for a very large thirty-two BJ Union cleaning contracts are here in the greatest city in the world, I've seen firsthand how life-changing a stable union job can be.
Hold up, hold on just a second. Try it. Okay, there you go.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No, it's okay. When someone floats the idea of opening a new casino, to me, it's not just about the games, it's about hope. Hope for a shot at a better life for hundreds of hard-working people, hope for a shot at fair wages, hope for a shot at health benefits, and more importantly, hope for the dignity of providing for their families. Our company, my team, takes a great deal of pride in what we do. We keep buildings clean, healthy, and safe every day. And with the promise of this casino, we are not only talking about more revenue, we're talking about a world of opportunity. Opportunity for single parents, for immigrants, for everyday New Yorkers who want a fair chance. I support the Caesar's Palace Times Square proposal and SL Green, not just for this amazing city, but for the wonderful people who make it work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rena Saltzman. I am the Secretary Treasurer of ATP AMIOTZI Local 18032. I represent hundreds of people who work on these streets. I personally worked on Forty-Fourth Street for years. Many of the people who came here to testify, and I've been here for a long time, don't work here every day. They have no idea what it's like to work in this neighborhood. Sixteen theaters in these two blocks. We do eight shows a week on slightly different schedules. We do work calls and rehearsals during the day. I'm gonna speak about something a little different, having worked in a, in a theater next to a construction site where the jackhammering almost forced us to shut down the show, lose, almost losing hundreds of thousands of dollars. That jackhammering caused, if you look up, you will see the lights above you hanging. They were shaking so hard that the stage manager threatened to stop the show. Jackhammering, construction, four years of it in this neighborhood? I cannot even imagine. One of the speakers said this should be decided on a state level. I completely disagree. This is absolutely local. Our members and our neighbors deserve better from our leaders. Voting for this casino in our neighborhood is irresponsible leadership. We are not against a casino in New York City. I am a proud union leader. I want good union jobs everywhere, but a casino can go elsewhere and provide those good union jobs. We stand against a casino in our home. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't need two minutes to say why this is a horrible idea. I live in Manhattan Plaza. There is that hotel resort slum that they're wanting to build on Eleventh and Forty-first, and then there's this blight, and I'm right in the middle of it. I can see one or the other probably from my apartment. I can certainly see, by looking out my window, this monstrosity that they want to build. It's, simply put, it's so simple. There is no infrastructure for this. There's no room for it. And anybody who's talking about this, if they don't live in this neighborhood, their opinion is worthless. Because we're the ones who deal with the congestion. We're the ones who, they talk about, uh, oh, nine eleven so piously. Their emergency vehicles wouldn't be able to get down the street. Now, I watch from my bird's eye view in my apartment, Ninth Avenue, and I see an emergency vehicle or an ambulance, and they're in traffic ten, fifteen, twenty minutes. I can count minutes. Can you imagine being in that vehicle, trying to get down the street? What do you think two casinos will do? It's so obvious that it's a horrible idea, and somebody else said it, and I agree with them. We look to our elected officials to represent us, not people they bus in to say something. These chills, basically, so many of them were here today. No, these are people who, like me, who live in this neighborhood. It will kill the neighborhood. So it's a bad idea, and I look to see how my elected representative's vote, and I'm watching all of you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Phoebe. Um, I am a hairstylist in Local, uh, seven ninety-eight. I work on Broadway. Um, I will come out and say I am not a public speaker. Like I said, I work backstage. To the guy before who said that we were in the business of money and that we're all just trying to make money, that is a lie. You are in the business of greed. There is a difference between good money and bad money, and this is bad money. All that glitters is not gold. I think the thing that I keep hearing from people is that the problem is infrastructure. There's no space for it. There's no space to increase the amount of people or the money that you think will come. There's just not the space or the infrastructure. Our roads aren't big enough. They don't have enough parking. And even if you think it'll be an increase for, um, public transportation to the guy who was like, I parked in Queens and then took the train here, that's exactly the point, is it's just so congested, like you said it. There's no way to make sure people will take the trains or the buses. They will start taking Ubers and Lifts, and we already have too many of those on the streets. There's no room for them. The community, if you're trying to help, should be invested in the actual community and the things that are already here. Don't try to bring something new. There are groups like the Encore that have been speaking a lot that help our community for Broadway. They haven't been reached out to, as they said. They also have not had, um, any support or trying to work with them. And I think that that's, if you're trying to really convince the community that it's a good thing, then they should be the people that you're reaching out to. Caesar's Palace is a global corporation. It is global. It can go anywhere. It has worked everywhere. It does not need to be on Broadway. Broadway is the only place in the world called Broadway, and it is right here in Times Square in New York City.
Thank you.
No.
Thank you. Before you begin, uh, if we could have one seventy to one ninety make their way around to queue to speak. Thank you. Go ahead.
First, thank you to this, this board for your respectful, uh, attention. Much appreciated. Um, I'm Maureen Moore, 10024, and I became a New York City residence, uh, resident in nineteen seventy-three when I was cast in my first Broadway show. It was intimidatingly dangerous and deeply troubling to go to work in the Times Square District in the seventies, eighties, and early nineties. Then in nineteen ninety-four, Disney announced it was coming to Forty-second Street. The doors opened to the glorious renovated New Amsterdam Theater and turning the decaying, crime-ridden, and desperately heartbreaking Times Square District into a family-friendly jewel box, the center of New York City. So let's ask ourselves, does a casino in Times Square fit into the now family-friendly atmosphere of the district? If so, then why is the vast majority of the local and neighboring residents opposing it? If Caesar contends that a Times Square casino will help sell tickets for Broadway shows, then why are Broadway theater owners and the Broadway League of Producers opposing it? After all, it is called show business. Why do the New York City members of the League of Resident Theaters, Roundabout Theater, and Lincoln Center, not even in Times Square, oppose it? Why do the esteemed and beloved organizations Broadway Cares, Equity Fights AIDS, and the Entertainment Fund oppose it? Why does the International Alliance of Theatrical Stage Employees oppose it? Why does Disney oppose it? And why do local nonprofits oppose it? Among many others, we know the answer. I too oppose it. So, change is good, but not when it threatens.
Thank you. We're at time. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Meredith Sweeney. I'm the Deputy General Manager at Hudson Theater, right down the road on Forty-Fourth Street. I'm also a fifteen-year member of the Actors Equity Association, and I wholeheartedly oppose building a casino in Times Square. It is plain to see that a casino will create a total change to the dynamic of Times Square with negative effects to local businesses, tourists, residents, and our beloved theaters. The legend that is Times Square, the dream of Broadway, the very reason that people travel from all around the world to be here, will change, and not for the better. Casinos aim to manipulate clientele, to keep them inside the walls while controlling the climate outside their walls, ensuring the casino becomes the main event and not the countless local neighborhood restaurants and the forty-one Broadway theaters. This will not enrich our neighborhood. It will distract from what makes it so special. The culture of the area will shift. Crime will increase, and businesses and theaters will be at risk of losing patrons, employees, and even closing their doors altogether, not to mention the years of disruption and congestion caused by the construction project of this magnitude. Our city, your city, needs to be nurturing its culture, its artists, and protecting the theater district, not approving millions of dollars to gamble on its future. I understand how the claim that casinos can help the economy may be tempting, but at what cost? And I know and support the appeal for union construction jobs, but why does it have to be in Times Square? A flashy casino can be built anywhere, but there is and will forever only be one place for Broadway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Van Gelli Castelores. I'm the Vice President of IATZI Wardrobe Union Local seven six four. Uh, my home zip code is one hundred twenty-two. I work right across the street at the new musical Queen of Versailles. Get yourself a ticket. Um, I offer you a poem. In Times Square's glow, where the marquees shine, where Broadway's heart beats loud and fine. They plan to build what store, Dory's play, a casino to chase the soul away. We are the workers, strong and proud, voices rising clear and loud. We build, we serve, we light the stage, our labor inked on every page. Broadway thrives on craft and song, not chips and dice in what feels wrong. A gamble here within the light that draws the world each day and night. Our union stands for jobs that last, not fleeting wins or futures past. We aim for, we fight for art, for fair, for true, not corporate greed dressed up as new. We keep the cards, so keep the cards, the noise, the spin, out where they don't drown what's within. We won't stand by where cultures sold. Broadway stands firm. We won't be rolled. Vote no for the casino in Times Square.
Thank you.
How you doing? Uh, my name is Avro Gonzalez. I'm a laborer from Local seventy-nine. I'm also an organizer and represent over ten thousand members here in New York City who come from all walks of life. Um, you know, Caesar's Times Square Casino is an opportunity, and not just for my members, but for any future members that could get on these jobs, and not just construction jobs, like anybody from cleaning to the gaming floors or anything. And these are jobs that create generational wealth. These are jobs that we desperately need it. And these, one thing I love about the casino and specifically in Times Square, it will not take away from housing. And that's something that we desperately need right now. Another thing, the safety that it will create. I'm a long-time New Yorker. I come to Times Square all the time. I work in Times Square all the time. And one thing I've seen is, yes, it's not the greatest part to be right now at night. And adding more security, security to it will definitely be a factor of more tourism, more people coming out, more people coming out to shows. One thing I heard, the motorcycle and the ambulance, that's the smartest thing I've ever heard because we already have traffic. That's something that we desperately need right now, a new innovative way of how to get around this city, right? Another thing, responsible gaming. I myself am, am a gambler. I go to casinos, and I love their responsible game, uh, gaming policies, right? I've seen them on the tables, time after time, ask a person, hey, you sure? This is something I experienced firsthand, because not ever, like I've seen, like we heard here, not everybody has the opportunity to say no, right? And for them to be able to have, grab somebody and say, hey, are you sure? I commend them. Thank you. I commend them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I join others in thanking the panel for your time and patience. None of us are paid actors, at least not very good ones, although I hope Dick was really good when he was on the floor of the Assembly. But I'm Mark Green, the former public advocate, and I represented, of course, Times Square when I was in office, along with the rest of the city. And a happy confession, yes, I'm the brother of Steve Green, at first compelled by birth, and now enthusiastically. I favor the Caesar's bid because of our economy and his biography. First, while every bidding location will gain some jobs, only one bid will enhance this, our city's unique stature as a world-class attraction. In my view, this bid is not a zero-sum idea, as those who earnestly argue for the status quo. It's win-win, as a prior speaker said. The whole is greater here than the sum of its parts. Finally, since so many people chided suits who were behind this, a personal observation. Forty years ago, Steve and I shared a one-room office at 58th and Lex. From then, from that, he went on to found what became the largest commercial property firm in New York. That's a good thing. Also, allow me, he went on to become a champion squash player in the 1980s. I mentioned that because he was not content just to coast on his personal wealth. He built Screeet Squash in Harlem, go to 114th Street, where there's a large building where hundreds of students, minority students, five-
Thank you. We're at time. We're at time. Thank you. We are at time. Thanks.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Rachel Reiner, and I work in 10019. I'm here as a professional in the theater industry for the last 28 years, and I urge you to vote no on a casino in Times Square. Broadway is the crown jewel of Manhattan, and a casino can go anywhere, but Broadway can only be here. The community aspect that has been mentioned a lot today is one of the very best aspects of this industry, and that is what casinos destroy, communities. Broadway has given so much to this city, and the city should recognize that and help Broadway thrive instead of harming it. But even more than being here as a theater professional, I'm here today as a mother. And S.L. Green lied about a lot of things in the presentation earlier today, but what was particularly egregious to me personally was that they said that there were no schools nearby. And P.S. 212 Midtown West is two blocks away, and my son recently graduated from there after spending six years walking around 47th Street and 48th Street. And not enough is being said about the impact that the casino will have on the schools and the children in this area. I know a lot of parents at P.S. 212 that are terrified about the casino being in the neighborhood with their kids. And Broadway has worked so hard, particularly over the years, to become such a family-friendly environment. I personally have brought my son to many Broadway shows, and I absolutely would not feel comfortable bringing him to a place where there is a casino. So casinos would be a horrible detriment to the Times Square area, and I strongly urge you to vote no, please.
Thank you. So just, just before we begin, the next speaker, it is approaching seven o'clock. We do have a hard stop in this space at eight. We've gotten to about half of the people who have registered to speak. We're going to try to get through as many people as possible, but at this juncture, I would encourage everyone to make, if people have said what you need to say, just to echo their sentiments or their comments, and try to keep it as brief so we can move through as many people as possible. Okay?
I'll try to do one minute. So I'm James Von Klempner. I'm a 15-year resident of zip code 10018, and I've worked in 10036 for 25 years. I'm an architect. I've designed buildings all over New York City, courthouses, Foley Square, NYU academic buildings, and banks. I choose to live in New York, and I think many of us do, because of the vitality and the diversity of industries and activities that we find in this city. I feel that saying a casino would hurt the theaters is a false binary. Others have said that. There is room for both. Now, I've also worked for all of the major real estate developers in New York. S.L. Green deservedly has the highest reputation, and I have worked with them, as caring about and effectively managing public space from Grand Central Terminal area to Madison Square. Mark Holliday understands that successful operations of his business relies on a healthy city. Look at his estate around Grand Central Terminal. The transformation of East Midtown, which he and his partners and others have brought about with the city, has made the dingy spot in front of Grand Central into one of the best places for all New Yorkers to come, well-lit, well-kept, et cetera. Please vote yes for this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, hey, hey.
Good evening. My name is Beatrice Higero. My zip code is 10044. With Caesar's Palace Times Square, Midtown Manhattan will embrace a new era of opportunity for well-paying jobs and a growth in our hospitality sector that will leave no one out. I'm the owner of Neji Restaurants, the first and only West African grocer on with a strong commitment to food access. Our restaurants and hotels, eateries, large and small, will have a chance to recover from the 40% decline that our industry is experiencing across all five boroughs. Caesar's Palace Times Square will expand opportunity, our opportunity to offer plant-forward meals to neighbors near and far, sharing our gains with those who are less fortunate. We know that New York City volunteers, many above 60, years young, welcome more chances to care for neighbors in need. Caesar's Palace has committed to supporting Neji and other food access partners to ensure that the upsides are truly circulating. A vote for this project is a vote to expand food access programs. A vote for this project is a vote to empower seniors who are the driving volunteer force. A vote for this project is a vote to celebrate the resilience of our neighbors who are better positioned to bounce back with the help of Caesar's Palace Times Square.
Thank you.
Thank you. If we could have numbers 190 to 210 make their way around, please.
Hi, I'm Mimi. I'm Mimi Sherwin, 10036 in Manhattan Plaza. I'm reading from somebody else who was too sick to come today. I hope that's okay. His name is Michael Davis. From 1981 to 1989, he was a writer and editor for Gaming and Wagering Business, a magazine that covered the legal gambling industry, notably casinos. Casino gambling had opened in Atlantic City in 1978, and the part of the job was to tout it as something great. Casino developers had promised paradise, but they could not avoid covering what was going on behind the glittery gambling facade, continued poverty, crime, drugs, and prostitution in Atlantic City, exactly what plagued 42nd Street in the years before the revitalization of the theater district. As a native New Yorker, a proud member of the performing arts community, and someone with knowledge of the casino industry, I ask, does Times Square want to go back to its darkest days? Obviously not. I can tell you that a Times Square casino is a bad bet. You don't have to take my word for it. On September 7th, the New York Post published excerpts from a May report by No Times Square Casino, which revealed that more than 70% of voters feel that a casino would worsen the area, increase crime, worsen quality of life, and worsen traffic congestion and make streets dirtier. New Yorkers are right. Vote no to a Times Square casino. Now, this from me. It is very true that a casino will bring thousands of jobs and considerable tax revenue to New York City, but those jobs and taxes will come to New York whether the casino is built, wherever the casino is built. So you have to find an appropriate place for a casino, and that is not Times Square. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Lucas McMahon. Thank you for your attention today. I'm a producer of many Broadway and Off-Broadway shows in this area, currently including Omari, Six, and The Play That Goes Wrong. I have worked in Times Square for 13 years. I will be brief and direct. The casino would be a disaster for this area and for our industry, which contributes more than $15 billion a year to the New York economy. A casino's business model is designed to keep people inside. If the casino is not supposed to be competitive with our business, why are they promoting the idea of shows and restaurants inside of a casino? Because the entire purpose of a casino is to keep people inside so that they continue to gamble. The casino has made countless promises with strings attached that they do not intend to keep. But Broadway has kept its promise for the last 100 years to bring jobs, entertainment, and economic stimulus to this area. We provide over 100,000 jobs to people in this area. Broadway has been here to bring New York back from some of its darkest hours. Don't abandon us now. Do not let a casino destroy New York's greatest cultural institution. Vote no for the casino in Times Square. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dylan. I live in Manhattan in zip code 10040. I'm a proud CUNY graduate, and I'm a card-carrying member of IATSE Local 1 Stagehands. I have gambled at the tables in Vegas, and while I'm largely indifferent to the existence of casinos in New York City, I'm opposed to the construction of the Times Square casino. There isn't anything that I can add that hasn't been said already. Casinos are exploitative. They're designed to keep people inside. It will increase traffic congestion. I believe any economic impact to the community will fall embarrassingly short of projections, and I simply don't believe it's a good fit for Times Square specifically. Instead, I would like to draw attention to two things said previously. During the proposal, one of the speakers accused IATSE of pressuring Stagehand to sign a petition against the proposal using false zip codes. Representatives of the various Stagehand union locals were not afforded the opportunity to deny or otherwise reply to the statement. This is a serious accusation of fraud, and I demand an immediate release of evidence. Otherwise, I'll be forced to assume it's a smear against the union behind live entertainment. I would also like to address the conflict of interest from a previous commenter. Matt Goldman, founder of the Blue Man Group, was found by both the National Labor Relations Board and a D.C. appellate court in 2006, to have both refused to recognize and negotiate in good faith with their Vegas Stagehands after they voted to unionize with IATSE. Apparently, he didn't learn anything after being legally compelled to recognize union elections, as his blue school continues to interfere with UAW Local 2110 and their efforts to organize the teachers. He is anti-union, anti-labor, and anything he has to say regarding the influence on my industry and my unions should be discarded completely. I encourage your board and lawmakers to more heavily weigh the opinions of the residents as opposed to venture capitalists and billionaires who don't even live in this time zone. Rome burned while Nero fiddled, and Times Square will burn while Caesar fiddles. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Greg Noble. I live in 10023, and I work in 10036. Thank you for hearing us all today and giving us an opportunity to speak against S.L. Green's lies. As a Broadway producer, I spent my life working to bring audiences from all over the world to Times Square for the magic of live theater. This neighborhood is the beating heart of Broadway, of New York's cultural identity, and now we're being asked to hand that heart over to a casino. Let's be clear. A casino isn't about community. It's about siphoning money out of people's pockets and funneling it into corporate profit. Times Square is already fragile as we recover from the pandemic. Do we really want to replace theaters, restaurants, and family-friendly landmarks with slot machines and empty promises? I've seen what casinos can do to neighborhoods. They drain them, they don't, and they don't sustain them. Broadway is our crown jewel, a living, breathing ecosystem of artists, stagehands, ushers, actors, musicians, and audiences. We don't need Caesars in Times Square. We need to protect the theater, the artistry, and the community that makes New York City anywhere, like unlike anywhere else on earth. Take this casino elsewhere, and please vote no. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Asia. I live and work in zip code 10001, and I absolutely love this city. I stand here today in strong support of the Caesar's Palace Times Square project, because I believe it represents an unprecedented opportunity to invest in our city, our community, and our future. This project is bigger than one company. It's about the community. The Times Square Casino cares about New York at large, bringing community investments and quality of life improvements to locals and the Broadway community and future generations to come. The Times Square Casino is the only option that allows us to coexist, investing in New York and supporting each and every one of us along the way, especially our Broadway community. From their launch of the New York Coalition of Legacy Theaters of Color Fund in partnership with Wendell Pierce, to supporting the NYC theaters that serve communities of color, this project is actively working to uplift and empower artists, proving their commitment before a bid is even won. As a creative professional who cares about Black and Brown representation across all sectors, including art, the direct investment into Black theaters will bolster these productions and bring more awareness to New York's legacy theaters of color. This project is committing over $250 million in direct community investments over the next 10 years. This means that more than just jobs and entertainment. It means real, lasting benefits that touch every single part of our city, not just Broadway, but including it. We're talking about $90 million dedicated to public safety, security, and sanitation, making Times Square one of the safest, cleanest commercial districts in the world. For me, supporting this project is simple. It's about safety. It's about jobs. It's about culture. And most importantly, it's about community. Caesar's Palace Times Square is ready to invest in us the New York way, and I believe you should say yes.
Hi. My name is Rich Jaffney. I work at 49th and Broadway in 10019. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. When I was younger, I used to love going to casinos. Why did I stop going? Because the house always wins. This is a very well-known fact, and it doesn't take very long to figure out. Why would we want to introduce a cash register for Caesar's and S.L. Green in the most congested area of Manhattan? There are other options. The idea that the casino will help drive economic impact for this neighborhood is a joke. Casinos do all they can to keep you inside their four walls, spending all of your hard-earned dollars inside the casino. They pump in oxygen and keep the sun laid out, so you don't know if it's 2:00 p.m. or 2:00 a.m. Casinos prey upon the most vulnerable in our city. If you have ever walked through a casino at 7:00 a.m., it's a pretty depressing scene. Broadway has made Times Square the crossroads of the world. I'm concerned about anything that could even potentially have a negative impact on the Broadway industry after being shut down during COVID. Why risk it? There are other options. Finally, given the fact that construction jobs will exist no matter where the casino gets built, makes it clear that S.L. Green is buying support of the speakers you have heard today. I want those jobs to be created, just not in Times Square. Please vote no to the casino in Times Square.
Thank you. Just before you begin, I'm sorry, we can have 211 to 230 make their way around. Okay, thank you.
My name is Alice Gilbert, and I'm a member of Theatrical Wardrobe Union Local 764. I've been working in the Times Square area for 50 years. I have done shows here for many, many, for a long time, many long-running shows in all kinds of theaters. The theater has all, the area has always been a home for small plays, big plays, musicals. And I really believe that a large casino is going to just crush the, the opportunity to do as many things as we do, and will take audiences and divert them from the Broadway theater. And I urge you to vote no in this area.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Erica Martin, and I'm a resident of Hell's Kitchen 10036 in Riverbank. Broadway is important to me. Jelly's Last Jam- Jelly's Last Jam was the very first play I saw as an eight-year-old child, and it opened my eyes to the magic of theater. Broadway is essential, but so are the residents of this community, like me and my own two children, who are now five and eight years old. I work here. I live here, and my children attend PS51. Yes, you are right. Most casinos are designed to keep people inside, but Caesars is specifically and intentionally designed not to do that. It is meant to flow with the neighborhood, encouraging visitors to see Broadway shows, eat in our restaurants, and shop in our stores. That means Broadway benefits, not competes. My niece had a principal role in Gypsy, which was right next door at the Majestic Theater with Audra McDonald and is a part of the Broadway world. And I know that theatergoers will still go. No one's going to say, "I want to see a play with Audra McDonald. Now go to the casino instead." They might go to the casino afterwards. I grew up in Queens, near the casino there, and I saw jobs, safer streets, and higher home values, many owned by families of color. We need that here in Times Square, which has struggled since COVID. Jobs and security tied to this project can restore safety and dignity. This isn't just about entertainment. It's also about sanitation. There's a big sanitation issue in the neighborhood, and so I would love to see this project benefit sanitation, jobs, and opportunities for families like mine and for our entire community. So I strongly support and urge you to support Caesars. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been sitting here for five hours, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Larry Kelly. Well, it's until five years ago. I got the Monica Miracle Larry. I'm that miraculous COVID survivor that spent 51 days in a coma and 128 days in a hospital. I had a massive brain hemorrhage that covered my entire brain. They declared me brain-dead. I was in sepsis for three weeks. I was seized for three weeks. And I'm here before you to speak on behalf of this casino in Times Square. I'm not here to speak as Miracle Larry. Prior to COVID, I was in the theater, made my living in a theater. Post-COVID, I was a principal in Harlem in high school. When I first heard, but I'm an avid casino patron. And when I first heard about three casinos coming into New York, I was thrilled. When I heard about it coming to Times Square, I thought it was the stupidest lady I ever heard. Times Square has its own lifeblood. Times Square is known worldwide as the theater mecca of our society. It thrives on hotels. It thrives on restaurants. A casino, much like COVID, will eat the neighborhood. A casino has one thing in mind, and that is to make as much money as possible. They may own this theater one day. That's my biggest fear, and that's why I sat here for five hours. This is a terrible idea of a casino in Times Square. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sebastian Silvestri. I'm in the restaurant industry. I'm here today because I wanted to give you my perspective about this casino in Times Square. I spent 12 years in Las Vegas. I raised a family there. I have two beautiful girls. They went to school there. I started as a restaurant manager in Las Vegas. I got promoted to GM, directors, executive director, vice president. Vegas has been very good to me. Vegas gave me an opportunity that I would have never had anywhere. I grew up in a small village in the south of France. My dad was a builder. My mom was a schoolteacher. The opportunity Las Vegas and those big casinos gave me is incredible. I've been in New York for six years. I'm the CEO of a restaurant group, who employ over 1,000 people here in New York. And I can tell you, a casino in Times Square would be extraordinary. Extraordinary, but not for us, for everyone. The opportunity, the number of jobs, and the opportunity for everyone in New York City will be above and beyond what everybody imagined. I think we're getting a lot of resistance here from Broadway, but I strongly believe that they're the one that will benefit the most from it. Every business around it, every restaurants, every theater, the extra tourism to the city, the extra taxes to the city, the impact that it will have for everyone will be above and beyond what everybody imagined. I opened a casino in Singapore, in Macau, operated a large casino in Las Vegas. I can't wait for Caesars and S.L. Green to open here, and I'm all in favor of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ava. I work in Midtown, and I live in Hell's Kitchen. Undeniably, theater has been the foundation of Broadway, of Times Square. Your roots are strong. Your voices are strong. And you've continued to stay strong throughout all of these years and all of the change, but apparently, Times Square is due for a new change, a change that can deliver real measurable benefits, that can strengthen safety, the employment, and economic development. I'm in support of Times Square Casino as this is an investment to the future of Times Square, the future of New York City, and just making it stronger for everyone who lives, works, and visits here. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is James Jorash. I'm in 10016. I have some background in the casino. I'd like to be a speaker. A long time ago, worked for the Top 10 in Las Vegas in financial planning analysis and was a numbers guy. So I'd like to talk just a little bit about voices. And I know we've heard today from some people who have said, "Well, if you don't live in this area, that doesn't count." I think that's not true, and I think that when you look at the casino project, it will have waves and extend out way beyond the territory here. And if you look at where the money is coming from, where the revenue is coming from, $3 billion a year in casino revenue for one casino in Times Square, that's going to come largely locally and probably on the order of 80% coming locally. And that means there's an awful lot of people in the Five Boroughs that are going to be spending a substantial amount of money, I mean, $2.4 billion per year in the casino. I think they have a voice, and I think to tell this audience that they are meaningless is disrespectful, because this is an issue, and this is a problem to be thought through by all of New York City. And I think to say that those voices don't count is not a good solution. Also, I do bring the perspective here of I am an inventor on more than 785 patents right now. I am the most prolific inventor in all of New York City. And I'm hearing a lot of problems today, but this is New York City. And I think we do also need to embrace the fact that we can solve some of these too. I heard about, okay, the motorcycle that is for the hospitals is great, but I think that if we can work together, if we listen to each other, and we try to solve problems, and we collaborate, we can do amazing things even beyond this. Broadway and the casinos and the entire city can be better off if we can bring everyone together and listen and collaborate. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great. Thanks. Hi, my name is Rachel Sussman. I work in zip code 10036. I live in zip code 11206. I have a sidekick here today because that's the only way I could be here, and it was very important for me to be here. I strongly oppose building a casino in Times Square. I work as a Broadway producer on the up-and-coming Broadway show Liberation this fall at the Jones Theater and on several shows in the past few seasons. It was always my dream to work on Broadway. And Broadway is limited to a specific geographical area. A casino is not. A casino can go anywhere in New York City. Broadway is here in Times Square, and it is the premier place for live theater in the entire world. I also think that we run the risk in this moment. Our ecosystem is still very fragile. We are in a happy moment of perhaps a renaissance for Broadway, and we cannot risk it with the loss of audiences or the loss of jobs. So I very strongly oppose a casino in Times Square. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
I say let's do Times Square because it's going to bring business in New York right now. We're in an economy that, with the president, that you never know what's going to happen next. So let's give it a chance. Let's see what it's going to do. Let's see what Roc Nation and them are going to do with this project because I'm shocked that Roc Nation said they want to be a part of it, but I'm glad that they did. So yeah, give it a shot. I say vote yes.
Yep, 265 to 300. To, it's not going to have time to do all those. Okay, can we have 265 to 300? I think this is going to have to be the last batch for this hearing, given the time restraints.
Hi, my name is Ashley. I work for ATG Entertainment, a block from here, 10036, and I strongly oppose a casino in Times Square. As a young professional coming into this field, my job here is built on the dreams I had growing up. I came to New York City for Broadway. I came to see a show. I came for the community, the marquees, the culture, all of it. And then I went to college a few hours upstate. I was right next to a casino out in Binghamton. And my friends and I would pile in the car on our weekends, and we would drive down here. We would come see a show. We never once went to one of those casinos. We had the opportunity. Broadway was Broadway. It stood on its own. It held its own, and it was the reason that we all got together every weekend. Please, no casino in Times Square.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I took the place of a colleague, Gabrielle Prieto, who's a survivor of human trafficking. But I am Jane Biggleson. I'm from zip code 10023. And I spent the last 12 years as the Director of Anti-Human Trafficking Initiatives at a youth shelter around the corner. And I'm now at the National Organization for Women, also doing gender-based violence. The one thing I know from doing this work for the last 15 years is that the pimps and the traffickers hang out where young people who are vulnerable gather, including youth shelters, and you have the biggest one in New York City in this area and in Times Square and in Port Authorities. And human trafficking takes place at casinos. I've gotten calls from all hours of the night from out of state from people trafficked in casinos, and I've heard from countless of survivors who've been trafficked in casinos. The last thing we want to do, these pimps are at the doorstep. They are in Times Square. The last thing we want to do is place a casino in that vicinity to give them more reason to traffic our young people. And a casino can go anywhere, and also, that is from my professional opinion. I am vehemently opposed to this because of the increase of human trafficking. Personally, as a New Yorker, I was in Broadway last night, and as everyone else has said tonight, Broadway, a casino can go anywhere. I will happily go to it somewhere else, but Broadway is special. Broadway is unique. Why ruin it? But the most important thing is our young people, and why do we want to put them more in the path of pimps and traffickers? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Margaret, and I work in 10036, and I live with my family in 10024. I learned how to swim at Circus Circus in Las Vegas, and it was magical. The pool was clean, and the diving board was super bouncy, and the video games were awesome. And there was a circus in the middle of the casino. It was magical. That was 1984. Have you been to Circus Circus in the 2020s? It's a dump. Atlantic City is a dump. My band played a casino in Hollywood, Florida, and that was a dump. You know, casinos are depressing, and the area around casinos are depressed. And look, like, if casinos were a good idea, we wouldn't be arguing. There'd be a casino in every county in the state of New York. We are arguing with our union kin. A week ago, we were marching with them in the Labor Day Parade. New York is a union town. There's going to be organized labor inside the casino or outside building the casino. It doesn't need to be in Times Square. I hope to God all of us live a long, healthy life, and when it's time to take stock on if we move the needle of society or not with our lives, and then to say, "Oh, man, maybe I should have voted no. Times Square's a dump." Please consider voting no.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Shannon Koger. I'm a 30-year member of IATSE Local 764, Theatrical Wardrobe in New York. And 24 years ago today, our city was brought to its knees. In the aftermath, city leadership was asked how Americans could support the city's comeback, and they were told, "Visit New York and see a Broadway show." We spent two days filming a gigantic commercial to that effect, which was very successful. The Broadway community banded together, and it was a great asset in bringing tourism back to our city. At the time, we were honored as a gem and a cultural touchstone of the city. At the time, now we're being thrown aside for the new shiny thing without a great deal of concern to the community that helped bring our city back after a very dark time and several times after that. People come to New York to enjoy theater, dance, opera, museums, not to gamble, perhaps except on a weekend subway ride. A casino is not community building. It will seek to diminish everything around us for its own gain. This is not what we need. Please vote no.
If someone could adjust this for me, I'd be very grateful. Thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Rachel Tamarin. I work in 10036. I'm a resident of 10533, but I've worked in 10036 for the past 11 years, very proudly. As many people have said today, this is a historic and tragic day for our city and our country. 9/11 and its aftermath was a time of fear and economic uncertainty for New York City. People were afraid to go out, and tourists were afraid to visit. Broadway reopened just two days after the attacks. We were asked to reopen two days after the attacks and played an instrumental part in encouraging people to feel safe and comfortable again in this city. And as the arts always do, it created a much-needed sense of comfort and community support for New Yorkers. We continue this fight today, notably the important work that the Broadway League and local authorities have done to revitalize the Times Square District and welcome visitors back, making them feel safe to travel and spend money in the aftermath of the COVID-19 pandemic. We are committed to keeping Times Square safe and family-friendly, and we've been doing that successfully for decades. The presence of a casino would threaten the safety of Times Square and deter people from visiting the theaters. Caesars Palace and its supporters claim that the presence of a casino in Times Square will bring increased tourism and revenue to the area as a whole. But we know casinos are designed to be insular and keep people contained inside of them for as long as possible. People who are attracted by a casino won't be inspired to explore the area and support local businesses or see a Broadway show. Broadway is and has always Broadway is and has always been one of the most important cultural touchstones in our country. It's what makes New York and Times Square in particular, a destination for locals and tourists all over the world. It is unique and special. You can find casinos anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rick Moan. I live on in one zero zero one nine on West Fifty-Sixth Street and work right here on this block of West Forty-Fourth Street. I absolutely oppose the Caesar's Times Square Casino. In the nineteen eighties, Broadway theaters were landmarked by the city of New York to protect the irreplaceable theater industry from the threats created by commercial redevelopment. Landmarking worked. Broadway has survived until now. Political leaders then recognized the fragility and the value of Broadway, and I hope this committee will do so again. The casino will dilute and obstruct that that which is special about Broadway in Times Square. That does not have to happen. I urge you to vote no on the Caesar's Times Square Casino.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Sally. I work in an office two blocks from here, zip code one zero zero three six. I call Times Square my work home for the past ten-plus years because I literally spend more time here than my real home. I'm a theater goer. I frequent the forty-one Broadway theaters and those nonprofit theaters around this neighborhood. So I walk the streets, days and nights. I'm also a proud immigrant. Before moving to the United States, Times Square is the equivalent of New York City in my mind because it is the heartbeat of New York City. And I am against a Times Square casino. I brought a little friend with me. This is an illustration of a series of illustrations done by a local artist. It's called Pigeons of New York. All the neighborhoods of New York is being featured, are being featured. And this is one of them. It's Times Square. By the way, little anecdote, I love this series so much. I use this as my table number for my wedding last month. Um, let's call her Nana, this pigeon. Nana to me stands for everything about Times Square. It's curiosity, it's creativity, it's openness, it's friendliness, it's vagrant, it's resilience, it's everything but not a casino. So please join me at Nana. Say no to a Times Square casino.
Hi, everyone. My name is Morgan Brant. I live in one zero zero two five and I work here every single day on Broadway in one zero zero three six. I'll keep this short and sweet. Um, I vote no to the casino. As most have said, the casino can go literally anywhere else in the city. It does not need to be here in Times Square. There's already way too much going on out there. We do not need to add to it. Please vote no. Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. Good evening. Uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here. My name's Harvey S. Morris. I am the in-house counsel to Local Eight O Two AFM and the former recording vice president. And Local Eight O Two is very much in favor of this casino for many reasons. And we, along with our sister union, Actors Equity, are in favor of this casino. This casino is a win-win in any respect. First of all, it is an adaptive use of existing property. It's not gonna require anything to be destroyed. It's already here and it's not used. And this is not just a casino. It is an entertainment facility. One casino, one license. It took years and years for the license to come up. One license, one casino, not gonna destroy Broadway, not in a million years. And I hear fear and loathing about one casino. There's a Dave and Buster's around the corner. Did that destroy Broadway? I mean, it's one step from being a casino. Honestly, it's true. It's true. Really? Honestly, it is, if you've ever been there. So as a win-win, this is gonna revitalize the community, not destroy the community. Several several months ago, there were articles in the Post about musicians being attacked in the alleyways of the theaters that they performed at. One person was severely injured. She couldn't play her instrument anymore. We need protection. This will provide it. This will provide housing. This will provide many things. It's not just a casino. And a casino is not going to destroy Broadway. People are not in my backyard. This is going to revitalize the area, and I'm sure that it will when they get the license. Thank you. Vote yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Lisa Renee Jordan. I'm a third-generation New Yorker and I live in zip code one one two two six. I work in zip code one zero zero three six. I'm a costume designer and a proud member of the United Scenic Artists, Local Eight Two Nine, and IATSE Local Seven Six Four. I'm here to speak against the proposed casino in Times Square. I worked in the Times Square neighborhood as an artist and an educator and a maker for the last twenty years. Our industry is already under immense strain. As others have said, it's a fragile ecosystem that the proposed development does threaten. We're talking about tens of thousands of jobs on Broadway, off-Broadway theaters and not-for-profit institutions, and the myriad of local businesses that support our industries that will also be at risk. The number of small businesses, costume shops, fabric stores, sample makers in the garment district that would be affected are irreplaceable. The ripple effects would be felt well past Broadway theaters. It would also endanger many of the off and off-off-Broadway theaters and not-for-profit theater companies that we've been, we've all been employed by. Not to mention the various schools I have taught at and mentored at located within the boundaries of Times Square. JKO, uh, Town Hall. As a teaching artist, this mentorship means everything. And to potentially damage that relationship with our students is unacceptable. Everybody knows that we have multiple options for places to locate a casino within New York City. All of the construction and hospitality jobs that our union brothers and sisters have been talking about will still be there, no matter where it is built. We are makers, we are dreamers, and we are storytellers.
Thank you. We're at time.
Hello, uh, my name is Harrison Greer. I've lived in Midtown for thirty-five years uh, and bought a home here in on Forty-Ninth and Eighth Avenue nineteen years ago in order to raise a family with uh, my husband who works on in theater so that in downtime, he can come home and we can see him. Um, like many theater professionals, we live in this neighborhood. We, it is a vibrant neighborhood with real people who live here and schools and churches and all those sort of things. But people have talked about that a lot. I want you to think about, I I work in hospitality and design. I want you to think about the best choice of location and plan for this casino. As a New Yorker, I want the casino to work. I want it to help our economy. I can't see how Times Square is the best foot forward for a casino for tourists. Uh, they already are uncomfortable in the crowds when they come here. Uh, someone is not gonna come to New York for gambling. They're gonna go to gambling because they're in New York and it's if it's here. But we, Atlantic City couldn't compete with Vegas. How are we? We're not going to. It's not gonna happen. Uh, the minimal we get of people who come in just for gambling, it it's not gonna really turn the needle. We need to have this experience be good. And on Times Square, where you've got people who are just gonna wander in because they've got, oh, look, it's the casino. Oh, let's take a look. That doesn't create an environment that's, you know, conducive to people being comfortable. Um, the space, the floor footprint is too small to be grand and welcoming, the way people expect. It's just not gonna work. I think it works better in other neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greetings. My name is Mark Jennings. I live in one oh four five two. I work here every day in one hundred thirty-six, representing uh, the tenants of the Woodstock Hotel uh, and as the executive director of Project Fine. Um, I'm gonna just use my time to tell you some questions, to give you some observations and some questions I've been asking about these, this proposal. Um, and and just the the entire process. Um, what happened to the drones? We haven't heard about those in a while. Um, why do we need to get Bill Bratton for security? That tells me that there's a problem. Does Bill Bratton fix his problems in major cities when it comes to security? Does do do people who support the casino know that right on Forty-third Street, even connected to our space where we have two hundred ninety units of affordable housing, inside the Town Hall Theater, which supports the casino, is a public high school that has two hundred plus students? There are three thousand four hundred students in a hundred thirty-six, located in six public schools. I'm wondering if people know that. Uh, are there any casinos that? I'm sorry, celebrity support is not community support. And I just want to say at that last event, I was number eighty and Charlemagne the God, who I love to listen to, walked up and I don't know what his number was, but he didn't have one. And he was able to speak and support for for the casino. And that told something to me, that celebrity support is sometimes more important in this casino bid than than community support. And I'm hopeful that you will really hear from the people, as Sal Alinsky says. Thank you.
Hey, I'm Joel Bernstein. I'm an actor. Uh, I've lived in one oh oh three six since nineteen seventy-five. And I tell you the, I've been sitting here and I, the phrase that keeps going through my head is something that's become commonplace to say these days, it's complicated. It is. It is. I painted bathrooms at uh, uh, playwrights' horizons when they were getting their act together here. Um, I've, um, I was, I was an extra in a commercial for Resorts International in Atlantic City quite a while ago. And I've been on Broadway. On Broadway, I thought to myself, what, what, what's this Broadway community I keep hearing about? And the time I really noticed what it was, was uh, the Easter bonnet competition way back then. And I thought, oh, yeah, that's it. That's it. And yeah, it was, it was. I guess what I'm saying is I'm raised a family here. I've lived here. My strongest identity is as a dad, a husband. And yeah, an actor on a good day, when I've worked on Broadway, Off-Broadway, uh, theater, film and TV, the whole nine yards on a good night. It's not always a good night, but it's always a good night when I'm living with my family in Hell's Kitchen. We lived through a lot of stuff here and we will continue, no matter how this thing shakes out. We're here. We live here. We love it here. And uh, we hope for the best and we work.
Thank you. We're at time.
Awesome. Hi, everybody. I'm Laura. I live in one one two two one and I strongly oppose a casino in Times Square. I'm here to represent the young, scrappy and hungry. I moved to the city when I was eighteen years old because I dreamed of being a part of this vibrant community. And now every day I walk into work and I pass by the senior community center that has lived on that street for decades, longer than I have been alive. And after work, I go to Restaurant Row with my friends who also happen to live in Times Square, along with the thousands of other people of all ages and walks of life. They live here. This is their home. And the people who don't live here, who come from all over the world, they don't come to Times Square to drink and to party. They come here to go to the M and M store and take pictures on the red steps and go to the Broadway shows and try new restaurants. A casino in Times Square will only drive in new vice-driven individuals to scare away those families who came here to explore the rich history that Times Square has. Once you mess with the fabric of Times Square, that cannot be undone. And that is not a risk you should be willing to take. Say no to a casino in Times Square. Thank you.
My number?
Good evening. Uh, I thank you very much for uh, bringing out this public hearing on this very, very paradoxical nature. And my name is Emily Shane Miller. I was nineteen ninety, invited back, community specialist. And I have to say, this topic between theater district and casino has brought fond memories. I remember as a daughter of a film director, it was my biggest dream to be able to watch, uh, see Broadway show. At the same time, I was invited to a casino for the first time in my life, thirty-seven years ago. And I actually would be able to win two hundred sixty dollars out out of uh, uh, two quarters uh, to be able to treat my professor who treated us, uh, the La Misérable. So we went to Rainbow at the Rockefeller Center. So anyway, uh, my point is, my professor actually told me, said, Emily, do you know the byproduct of I of this Broadway theater district? I said, I don't know. He said, it's called Red Light District. I think everybody knows. So for me, building a casino in Times Square might be a very educational, demure and positive twist from my experience. So I'm not trying to tell you strongly vote for no or yes, but rather tell you the project is not uh, necessary engineered to the demise of our community.
Hi, my name is Willa. I work here on one zero zero three six across the street on Forty-Fourth. I am strongly against the casino here in Times Square. I've been lucky enough to build my career over the last twenty years on Broadway, both as a theater manager, member of IATSE Local one eight zero three two, APAM, and in the management and operations of twenty-one of the forty-one of these beautiful historic theaters. I'm beyond proud of the members of this community that have stood up here before you today uh, to voice their concerns, and I echo the same. Um, I will be short. Uh, please do not threaten the tens of thousands of union livelihoods that we live in uh, that have built and exist because of this Broadway community for this location. There are better options elsewhere. Vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, guys. Great. Hi, uh, my name is Lawrence Payone. I'm the president of IATSE Local seven five one, treasures and ticket sellers. Thank you. Uh, I know uh, Caesar's and S.L. Green have made a lot of promises, but I gotta say, my last name is spelled P.A.O.N.E. People say you say Payoni? I said, no, it's Payon. You pay and then you own. That's how you remember it. Okay? So I just urge everyone here.
So I just urge everyone here, don't let Caesar's and SL Green pay you or pay us so that they can own you and own us. Please vote no. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Jake. I'm in the two main Actors Unions, Equity and Segaftra. I live and work in this ZIP Code 10036. The two worst places I've ever been are Atlantic City and Las Vegas. Both are ugly and depressing, and I grew up in Florida, so that's saying something. Stopping for gas on my way into Las Vegas at 8:30 a.m., the first thing I saw in the convenience store was a 40-something mom type in a hairnet, slippers, and bathrobe, feverishly feeding coins into a slot machine. Clearly, she could not help it. It was heartbreaking. No homes were close enough for her to be there without driving. I imagine that if she had children, they probably got themselves to school after making plainbread sandwiches for their bag lunch. Gambling is the worst addiction of all. It can ruin more lives faster than any other. Do we really want to invite that into our community? In casinos, the house wins. Occasionally, you might win, but over time, it's no contest. The house wins. The only way it doesn't win is when it collapses because it's run by a moron who's also an inept businessman. You've heard a lot of people today who don't live in the area. They think this casino is a great idea. Any non-resident's testimony is irrelevant. They have no skin in the game, other than a hope for profit at the locals' expense. Also, I'd like to declare that unlike some of the aforementioned yay-sayers from the last public hearing, I wasn't paid to be here. I live in this neighborhood, and I have for 44 years, through lots of changes, mostly good. The casino won't be good and won't help residents. Just say no.
Hello. I'm Nancy Palmedessa. I'm the Secretary Treasurer Business Agent for Local 751, IATSE, the Treasurers and Ticket Sellers in New York. We're the nice people who sell you tickets at the box office window, and I'm here to speak in opposition to the casino. What my testimony is to you right now is not just a testimony. It's actually an invitation. It's an invitation to partner with Local 751 and our partners and management to protect the jobs of the Local 751 represented employees. That's the fundamental job of a union member. We do it with our partners and management all the time, and you now have an opportunity to participate in that. The last thing in the world that we need is a casino to come in here and serve as a wrecking ball and plunge this neighborhood that already has issues into a den of iniquity to repel customers from the box office window. Please consider the well-being of the represented employees who work under a 751 contract.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michael. I live in 10019, and I've worked in 10036 for 25 years. I'll keep this short so that you can hear the continued opposition to the casino here. I love Broadway. I actually do love Times Square as a New Yorker, and I hope that the casino keeps its promises to New York when it ends up somewhere other than Times Square. Please vote no.
Hi. My name is Kristin Caskey, and I am a producer who also is the current chair of the Broadway League. And on behalf of myself, Jason Lacks, and our entire 800-member body at the Broadway League, I want to say thank you. Thank you for allowing our voices to be heard today to vehemently oppose the Times Square Casino. The Broadway industry and our various unions, producers, workers, theater owners, we're often not on the same side of the table, but we all recognize we are a vital community that contributes billions to this city. And today, we came together because we know the economic contribution and singular experience that we provide to the city. And we know we work in tandem with local businesses, restaurants, city officials, and local residents to create a vital Times Square. And we know a Times Square Casino will destroy the brilliant lights of Broadway. So thank you. Thank you for listening to us. I'm immensely proud of our community. We came here today, and we made our position loud and clear. Thank you.
Go ahead. I'm Taylor Hawkins, and I'm a member of Local 306, but I also work for that IATSE Education and Training Department. So I do travel throughout the city, throughout the entire day. It is a headache, not because of the subway systems, which is a different topic, but to travel throughout the streets, it's a problem with tourism, not a problem, but it's obvious that it becomes congested. I did write down a lot of things, but I kind of want to bypass this and just speak on the safety topics that were mentioned. I don't see how it is possible to want safety in the city and think of a casino. For kids especially, with the schools that are in the neighborhood, it's impossible to have that kind of safety for the kids. It is important to recognize that Broadway is Broadway, and we are here for that reason. I think bringing a casino wherever it is put, you will have the jobs. I also think this is a location that will not only hurt the existing jobs, but also make it hard to enjoy the very reason that people do come here. Thank you.
Okay. No, I think we're done. Okay, so we have reached the end of the hearing. A lot of time for the hearing. So we will adjourn this public hearing for Caesar's Palace Times Square at the Community Advisory Committee. I just want to remind everybody, if folks did not get to testify today, that they can submit testimony online at the email address I gave earlier. I'm going to give it again. This counts, it's up there. There you go. This counts just as much. It will be part of the analysis at the end of the comment period. So with that, we will adjourn this hearing. Thank you all very much.